It looks like we're at nine o'clock and would like to call this meeting to order. We first have a moment of silence and Moke, if you'd like to offer that moment of silence.
Yeah. I'd like to offer the moment of silence today in memory of Deputy Robert Paul Rumfelt. His end of watch was eight seventeen twenty twenty-two, one of five members of our local sheriff's department that left home, didn't come home to his family in service of this county. So today, I just wanted to have a moment of silence and remember the sacrifices that our, you know, public servants in the sheriff's department and others make when they leave their homes every day. So today, I love you, Rob. Hoorah.
Supervisor Sabatia, could you lead us in the pledge?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that. Item four on the agenda is consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any of those today? Not seeing any. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is item five. Consent agenda items are commonly non-controversial items. However, they can be pulled for further discussion by the board or anyone from the public. So with that, I see we have one, I think it's for sure, five point one-nine. Is there any others that need to be pulled? Five point three, do you want to? You're good on that one.
I think four is when we have to pull five point seventeen to talk about it.
Five point one-seven? So five point one-seven and five point one-nine so far?
I don't know anything about the public service request to pull.
Okay. We'll just do five point one-nine for now. Any others? If there's no others, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone from the public would like to pull any consent agenda items? Let's see here. I don't see anybody on Zoom. With that, I'll bring you back to the board for action.
Can you repeat again which?
Five point one-seven?
And that's it?
Oh, I'm sorry, five point one-nine.
And that's it?
That's all I have, yeah.
Then, Mr. Chair, I move to approve five point one through five point eighteen and five point twenty through five point twenty-two. And just to add, I'm a little jealous about Corey Usted for five point twenty-two. That sounds amazing.
All right. So I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you. Let's see where we're at. Nine oh-three. Okay. Well, let's cover, no, I don't think five point one-seven can be covered in that amount or five point one-nine.
It should be fast.
You think so? Okay. So let's look at five point one-nine. Approve the Sunridge Systems Software Support Services Agreement for the FY twenty twenty-two twenty-three in an amount of fifty thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars for the support of its law enforcement software suite and authorize the chairman to sign. And if the sheriff is on? Go ahead.
And if I may, Chair, I know that I reached out to the sheriff yesterday and hopefully that is the only issue with this agenda item, but the, there was some leftover language from the boilerplate used for the agreement that still said, an agreement between, between Sunridge Systems and the city of Newark, and that needed to be changed to an agreement between Sunridge Systems Software and the county of Lake. But I believe that is the only issue that I was aware of and hopefully the only issue that the sheriff wanted to fix.
That's the only issue I'm aware of.
Okay. So with that, do you think we can move forward? All right. So I'll open it up to public input for this item if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item. Not seeing any. I'll go to the Zoom link. And I'm not seeing any there, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement with Sunridge Systems Software Support Services for the fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three in the amount of fifty thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars for the support of its law enforcement software suite and authorize the chairman to sign with the amendment as stated.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries four zero. And now we are at our nine oh-five. Lake County Animal Care and Control Pet of the Week. I'm not sure if I see anyone here, so I think we will...
I just sent an email and I'll let you know. I'll give you an update.
Okay. So we are at nine oh-six, so we can go ahead and open it up to public input. If there's anybody from the public that would like to comment on something that's not covered on the agenda, you can come up and speak for three minutes. Just know that we are not at a position, if it's not covered on the agenda for Brown Act reasons, to comment. However, if we can work with you after the meeting, that's what we'll do. And I'm not seeing anyone come up to the microphone for public input. I do see Bruno?
Yes. So I have a letter that I received from a staff member that they asked me to read this. This is from Donna Schatt from Public Services, and I'll go ahead and start reading her letter. What is a leader? A leader is someone or multiple people in charge of leading a team, using the correct skills necessary to promote growth and the ability to accomplish goals that are set in place, giving the freedom to improve independently without taking away your self-worth when things don't go according to plan. A leader builds their team up by not only congratulating them when small goals are met, but by letting them know that they have a support system to succeed even when mistakes are made. This is healthy growth. Making sure you know that your voice and opinions matter and that the door is always open to discuss any issues that may be troubling you or weighing on your mind. A leader is a boss who doesn't stand tall and look down with judgment, but puts themselves on the same playing field and is just as ready to tackle any task at hand as equals in the same football game. These two leaders have shown so much devotion and dedication to our department that I find it necessary to give them the recognition they deserve, even though I'm pretty sure that they don't like to be in the spotlight. They don't do it to be center stage, but because they possess high integrity and passion to make the community a better place. I have seen them spend countless hours making sure that, I've seen them spend countless hours making sure that everything is always done in a timely manner with professionalism and positivity and even some laughs along the way, because a happy team produces a lot more productivity. Here is a huge thank you to Director Lars Ewing and Deputy Director Katie Galvani with the Lake County Public Services Department. You both make it easy to get up in the morning and want to come to work, and I like that you greet each person individually every day with a good morning. It really makes a difference in the way that we start our day. You are both upstanding leaders, and I couldn't ask for better bosses as well as teammates to have at our office. Sheila Carr, Celia Holberg, Sarah Miller, Park Superintendent Brian Powers, Facilities Maintenance Superintendent Robert Allen, Jeff Rhine, Aiden Pearson, our museums curator, Clark McAbey, Chris Byrd, our landfill supervisor, and all of our guys and gals in the building and grounds, parks, museums, and solid waste divisions. Thank you for all you do for not only the county, but for our community as well. Your hard work does not go unnoticed. And I appreciate that that letter was sent so that we can read that. I think that's recognition that is absolutely due. I know that we all appreciate the work from all of our departments, and it's nice to get some of those details from the frontline workers to let us know how departments are really doing. So I appreciate it.
All right.
And I hope that Mr. Ewing and Director Ewing and Ms. Galvani were here to hear this too. If not, make sure to hit play.
All right. So with no other public input, we are at nine oh-nine, so I think we can cover seven point six briefly. Consideration of the following advisory board appointments, Lower Lake Water Districts, Water Works Districts, sorry, Emergency Medical Care Committee. Let's see here. We have the applicants listed in the executive summary for two vacancies for the Lower Lake Water Works District Two. Wesley Eugene Baker, Monique Colleen Fabela, Karen Bader, Julie Walker, Barbara Walborg, and Jean Yannick. And so I think, Moke, this is your district?
Yeah, I think there are two spots.
Oh, wait. Is it your, I don't know. It says district two, but I don't know.
No, it should be district one.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, Monique Colleen Fabels and my motion, that's what my motion will be. And also Wesley Baker. Those are the two that I will be motioning for.
So I'll open it up to the public briefly for both items or for Lower Lake Water Works District One? And I'm not seeing anyone, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move to add Monique Philabella and Wesley Baker to the Lower Lake Water Works District, Lower Lake Water District.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Emergency Medical Care Committee, there's one vacancy for the Community College Districts, one vacancy for California Highway Patrol, three for fire departments, and one vacancy EMT representative, and I think this is just one position, applicant Robert Zelinski.
Which I think would fit under the fire districts.
Right. And so, not sure exactly. He lives in Hidden Valley, so, Moke, I'll give this one back to you. Open it up to the public briefly, and I'm not seeing anyone with hands up in any form, so I'll give it back to the board.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I will move to appoint Robert Zelinski to the Emergency Medical Care Committee.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. All right.
And, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just for a point of order on the agenda, if possible, to take up item number seven point three after our one PM. We have a one PM timed item.
Okay.
When that item is over, if we can go ahead and take seven point three.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will go to our timed items. Six point three, consideration of Lake County Health Services Monthly Update. And Director Portney, if you can come up, and we'll give the floor to you. And staff, if you want to bring up staff as well.
Good morning, Board. Good morning, community. Good morning, fellow staff members. Before...
You can sit up here.
Oh, great. Perfect. Thanks. You want to sit up in the booth? I rise seats. What do you say? You want to sit here? Good morning, Board. Thank you for taking time to meet with us today. I have two items for you. The first item I would like to give you is an annual report from the California Association of County Veterans Affairs Office. Unspoken heroes in our community, I feel. The Veterans Service Office Director Saul and his team were actually published in a recent annual report for 2021 discussing their efforts in allowing access to over a hundred and twenty veterans who would have not gotten services before have now gotten services. Seventy-two percent of those have gotten full services that they were originally not expected to get. And so on page twenty-four in this annual report, there's a read about it, and I just wanted to provide that to you. The main reason we're here today for our public health update is to talk about syringe service programs and harm reduction. This month is a special month, and I will pass the microphone to Kim, who is our Health Programs Coordinator for SafeRx and MC-AH, to further clarify and start the presentation. So thank you. And I have documentation so we can follow along that I'll pass out while she does that.
Good morning, Board. My name is Kim Tangerman. I am the Health Programs Coordinator for Lake County Public Health. I oversee maternal, child, and adolescent health as well as the coordinator for the SafeRx program. I'd like to bring up Leila Romero to help with the presentation. She is a Health Programs Supply Specialist, I mean Support Specialist for Lake County Public I'm going to turn the mic over to her.
Yeah, she can come up.
Okay. I think there should be a slideshow that comes up. Thank you very much. That's the report. There should also be a slideshow. Good morning, Board. My name is Leila Romero from the Lake County Department of Public Health. International Overdose Awareness Day is coming up, and the second annual Lake County event is being held in Keeling Park this Saturday in Nice. And so I'm here to present some information on Lake County's statistics and the importance of harm reduction. In the state of California, Lake County is ranked number one in all drug-related overdose death rate for 2021. Preliminary numbers show that there were at least sixty-six overdose deaths this year, which is the size of an entire graduating class in some of our local schools. And so discussing and educating on this topic is more important for our community than ever before. I just wanted to begin with some foundational knowledge of substance use. Substance use exists on a spectrum that includes experimenting and recreational use as well as regular, heavy, and chaotic use. And on the continuum, substance use disorder is a range. Thank you. So substance use disorder, sometimes referred to as dependency or addiction, is a chronic condition with a clinical diagnosis. And like other medical conditions, there are predisposing factors for SUD. Family history, experiencing trauma, especially in childhood, and having other mental health disorders are all indicators for developing a substance use disorder. DSM five criteria for diagnosing SUD includes using substances even if it puts you in danger and using even if it causes or worsens physical or psychological problems. Harm reduction is a set of strategies aimed at reducing risk and negative consequences. Some examples of harm reduction outside of drug use include providing education on reproductive health and distributing condoms, or having a designated driver for a night out at the bar or for a day of wine tasting. Some of the foundational principles per the National Harm Reduction Coalition include that harm reduction accepts for better or for worse. Drug use is part of our world and aims to minimize harmful effects instead of ignoring or condemning it, which is true. Psychoactive substances have existed for thousands of years, and it's not going anywhere. It also calls for the nonjudgmental, noncoercive provision of services and resources to people who use drugs. This is what we call meeting people where they are. Oh, sorry, way to go back. I'm sorry. Harm reduction does not attempt to minimize or ignore the real and tragic harm and danger that can be associated with illicit drug use. It's about recognizing the risk of using drugs, but also that there are ways to make it safer. Examples of safer use include not using alone, carrying naloxone, and using fentanyl test One of the questions posed was what are the benefits of syringe services programs? Syringe services programs are community-based prevention programs and are the standard of harm reduction in substance use. They are effective for preventing and addressing HIV and hepatitis C outbreaks. And the state of Indiana has credited SSPs with saving taxpayers one hundred and twenty million dollars. According to the CDC, nearly thirty years of research has shown that comprehensive SSPs are safe, effective, cost-saving, do not increase illegal drug use or crime, and play an important role in reducing the transmission of viral hepatitis, HIV, and other infections. The main benefits of SSPs can be broken down into three categories: prevention of infectious disease, linkage to care, and public safety. SSPs are associated with a fifty percent reduction in HIV and hepatitis C incidence, and when combined with medication for addiction treatment, transmission is reduced by more than sixty-seven percent. Linkages to health services are also provided by SSPs to services such as HIV and hepatitis C, testing and treatment, and medication for addiction treatment. SSPs also save lives by educating on risk reduction and providing safer use supplies and naloxone trainings. First responders and the public are also protected by providing safe needle disposal, reducing presence of needles in the community. County Health Rankings and Roadmaps awarded the strategy of syringe service programs its highest evidence rating of scientifically supported. Strategies with this rating are most likely to make a difference and have been tested in multiple robust studies with consistently positive results. The assessment concludes there is strong evidence that syringe services programs reduce HIV infection and injection risk behavior such as needle or syringe reuse, borrowing, sharing, renting, and lending among people who inject drugs. So with these benefits of syringe services programs, what is Lake County's specific need for them? In a national assessment, Lake County was included in the top two hundred and twenty vulnerable counties at risk of an HIV or hepatitis C outbreak. For context, there are more than three thousand counties in the United States, and Lake County is in the top two hundred. So that's basically ranking sixth out of one hundred. In 2018, Lake County had the third highest chronic hepatitis C rates in the state, with nearly twice the, rates twice as high as the California average. And here, as indicated by the yellow triangles, Lake County was listed in the top ten percent vulnerability for rapid increase in both fatal opioid overdoses and HIV or hepatitis C infections in 2017. Which brings us back to today, where Lake County is ranked first in overdose death rate in all fifty-eight counties in California. Another question that was posed to us was what would happen if Lake County didn't have syringe services programs? Well, a study done by the University of Miami compared a city with and without a needle and syringe service program. The cities without syringe programs had eight times more needles and improperly disposed syringes on their walk-throughs. And in the rural community of Conewa County, West Virginia, the syringe service program was suspended indefinitely in March 2018. A rise in HIV diagnoses was seen soon after, and the county is currently in the midst of an HIV outbreak. A closer look at the graph, the orange arrow indicates the SSP closure, and you can see HIV diagnoses steadily increase. And lastly, one of the questions posed to us was what are the adverse effects of syringe services programs? The only publication that I could find is from 1995 and is obsolete. It listed possible negative outcomes of increasing number of improperly discarded used needles, promotion of more drug use, and attracting more injection drug use, all of which have been disproved with nearly thirty years of research, as mentioned earlier. I wasn't able to find any peer-reviewed studies observing adverse effects of SSPs. Thank you for your time.
I just wanted to close with some information. Last week, I received an email making me aware of four overdoses that happened on Monday. Luckily, all four were reversed with the use of Narcan. All four people thought they were consuming cocaine. So when I hear news like that, I raise six sons in this county, I find it hard to breathe. The drug supply in the county, much of which is now tainted. It doesn't matter what the drug is. They're tainting the drug. They're poisoning our community members. They think they're doing one thing, and they're not. They're being poisoned with others. The data that Leila shared today cannot be denied, it cannot be dismissed, and we can't unhear what we heard. It's our fact. It's not what we want for this county. We need to come together and we need to do bold education. We need to educate our youth on the stigma, reduce the stigma. We need to educate them on prevention. We need to have harm, the access to harm reduction everywhere. We also need to have access to care and access to this harm reduction easier to access than it is to access the drug itself. Thank you.
Is there anything else to add, Director?
Are there, are we...
Yes.
Can I wait?
Yeah. If you'd like to.
Our presentation is complete. Thank you.
Vice Chair Pyska?
I appreciate this conversation so much. We know where we rank in the state and with our other health metrics, but this was really eye-opening for me. I didn't realize that we were number one in the state for overdoses. And we cannot develop a strategy if we don't come face-to-face with the facts. And as gruesome as they are, we have to look at them. And so I appreciate this. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Sabatia?
Kim, can I bother you to put the slides back up? I know you're multitasking, and I apologize for that. But there was one slide I want to ask some questions about. I just want to read the specific words that were on there. And if you can go back maybe five or six slides. Keep going. Keep going. There was a big quote in the middle of the page. Right there. It says here, thirty years of research has shown that comprehensive SSPs are safe, effective, and cost-saving. Can you describe what comprehensive means? Because that doesn't help me to know what comes along with an SSP to actually get to the results that we're looking for.
If you go to the County Health Rankings and Roadmaps summary of syringe services programs, it describes that what makes a SSP most successful is community buy-in, community and law enforcement buy-in. And so that includes other stakeholders, other government agencies, and of course, our county leaders. And so when we say comprehensive, it means partnership. It means linkages to care.
Okay. It doesn't describe maybe other ancillary programs that may not be required, but help support the end result outcomes that everybody would be looking for, which is... is maybe a little less dependence on the drug use, a little bit more control over their lives, and not having to fall through the cracks, basically, with the addiction that they're dealing with.
So are you talking about things like medication for addiction treatment?
I'm talking about, like, I'm really happy that we're having this conversation today. Simultaneously, later on this afternoon, we're going to talk about a potential substance abuse project. Just seems that without the beds, without the capacity to offer rehab in our area, an SSP could only do so much. And so I'm just kind of curious if the studies that say comprehensive SSP, does it require those other surrounding programs to help support positive outcomes? When you don't have access or you lack access, does it not support those outcomes?
So it's basically take any, any help you can get. So if there is... Yes, exactly. So it's providing whatever service is available. And if we can make more services available, that's even better. So it's about stepping up and providing whatever help we can, whatever services we can, and then if we can expand on those, there'll be more successes. It's as comprehensive as just whatever we can get.
Obviously, the more ancillary programs attached to this issue, the better off our outcomes will probably be, because now it opens up different doors and avenues for people to get the help they actually need. Because providing a syringe is not helping them change, it's helping them with the infectious disease control more so than anything else. We've had an SSP or a syringe exchange program, I don't know when it became SCP or SSP, but kind of interchange those acronyms right there. But we've had one, I believe, since 1995 or something like that is what our resolution was from, the original one that I've seen. And we're showing higher levels of overdose, we're showing higher levels of infectious disease. I know that there's many outside forces that contribute to that, fentanyl being one of them, definitely not an issue in 1995 versus now. But trying to dive through the data to figure out the success of our current SSP program compared to what maybe we want to see in order to get the outcomes we're looking for, because I'm not seeing a direct correlation with the numbers that we're seeing versus what has been offered.
Sure, so first of all, with every interaction for getting a sterile syringe, you're getting an interaction with someone who has linkages to care. So every interaction is a new chance or a new possibility. And so we're seeing numbers rise nationally. In 2021, the number of overdoses, overdose deaths, there was a death every five minutes. And so it's not just us, it's not just Lake County, it's the entire nation that we're going to be seeing rises in substance use numbers and overdose deaths. And so it's a matter of not being able to keep up, I think, more than anything else.
Okay, and then my last question is, there was no mention of glass pipes in your presentation. We talked more specifically about...
I'm so sorry.
Sam does that. You talked more specifically about syringes. Where does that fit in with this new concept that the state is trying to say is an allowable harm reduction protocol?
So as the... Can I talk about the resolution?
I got you.
Okay.
So the question is, the state reg for glass pipes between needle exchanges? So any organization that chooses to use certain materials has to go through the state for approval and regulation, right? Understanding we do not, the county health department does not have a service provision for glass pipes, we really can't speak on that ourselves. All we know is what we do with clean needle exchange programs in the county. What I do, am, and aware of is that the glass pipe initiative, understanding the methods in which drugs are being used, are being loosened to allow certain service providers with state regulation and being monitored, are allowing them to use different types of vessels to provide for harm reduction.
Okay, and as far as data-wise, because I think the data that was presented to us was more specifically, especially some of the older data, like the last 30 years, for example, as said right there, that that's more syringe-based review of data rather than, obviously, the glass pipes are pretty new. Just kind of curious if there's any data to convey, if it helps, if it doesn't help as far as the harm reduction portion to it.
And something that I really want to make emphasis on is that word comprehensive. And comprehensive also, I believe, means holistic, right? So when we're looking at drug use, abuse, what we are trying to do is find a way to make the comprehensive program so that when people come to a site or a service provider to access care, right, we're not simply providing them a vessel and saying, be on your way, right? We're providing them a resource for harm reduction with extra materials, service connection, county resources, to be able to say, okay, for example, just a scenario, patient comes up to a van, clinic, hospital, whatever, says, I need to exchange these pipes, needles, whatever. The service provider says, okay, what's your name, da-da-da, get some information, potentially, like, just speaking loosely. But then they also package that with, you know, maybe some specific questions. How long have you been using? Do you know of the rehab or treatment facilities in our county? Have you ever accessed those? Would that be something you're interested in? Here's Narcan, do you know how to use this? This is when you use it if one of your peers, da-da-da. So it's comprehensive, it's holistic, rather than just a service provider where they come in, exchange, and go out. Try to make it comprehensive. And I think that leads to a really special and important aspect that you mentioned earlier is around opportunities for that in our county, which I'm really looking forward to.
Thank you.
All right, so I have a couple of things, and I really appreciate bringing this here to discuss and giving us the numbers to show, I guess you could say, the need for Lake County. But at the same time, we might as well just say Lucerne, because that's where it's at. And I think a program like this would be beneficial if there were a lot more oversight. When this came to us initially and was brought up, there was a situation where the current agency that conducts this in the county was doing something outside the scope of what they were allowed to do. I asked a series of questions that weren't answered, and there were no numbers or data to show either. And I know they've, apparently in the report, it says that they've given data and numbers. You know, either way, for me, one thing, that's two things. There's people that go and visit these needle exchanges and say, oh, they're great, they're doing wonderful things during that time. That's fine, however, after they leave and after the group leaves, they don't see the effects afterwards. They don't see the effects in the beginning and all week when people just go there and wait just so they can go to this program. Another thing is, it's not a very transparent program. Anytime there's questions asked, they're met with vile hostility. And there's questions asked about specific things, and there's denial about specific things. However, we don't know either way, because there's no transparency. When we ask, are you serving children? We have parents saying that you've served children because you don't check IDs, you don't check anything. There's like, we're not, and we don't have to tell you that. And so when you're doing something for people that are in need and you want to do something to help, you need to be transparent. That was my issue with the group, and it continues to be the issue with the group. I would like to see, there was a, the community has been speaking out about it for quite a long time. One of the things that frustrated me was, of course, the passing out of glass pipes or glassware without consent, without anything. And when that took place, when asked, it was just stated, I'm going to do it, I needed to do it. And I'm like, yes, I understand you need to do it, or you feel the need to do it, however, you didn't tell us, you didn't give us any, you didn't... But this group doesn't feel they have to. There's no other, whenever it's proposed to move to a different area, it's absolutely not. We're met with no and nothing else. There is, I've reached out, I have, actually, I've reached out to other town councils, and of course Clear Lake Oaks and Upper Lake have not been approached yet, but I'm sure if there was an opportunity to move to either one of those, which I just seen, you said something's happening in Keeling Park in Nice?
It's the International Overdose Awareness Day.
So it's like, so it's not an exchange, it's just like a training or...
So it's the second annual event, the last one was held in Library Park last year to, sorry, to honor the lives of people in our community who were lost to drug overdose.
Okay, see, and that's, those are important things. Well, the thing is, is that I know that the town councils, I know that some of them haven't been approached. I know, of course, Lucerne, never been approached in general. I know that they've been going to different events and trying to approach it. I've talked to Cockberry Council, they haven't been approached either. So I was told that they had voted no, but that wasn't true. So it could be because Cockberry hasn't been approached by them. I'm not sure in other areas, but I do know Clear Lake opposed the syringe exchange program in their community. I do know that Lakeport had stated they're willing to have discussions. When I brought that up to any positive board, the syringe exchange program, there's no, there's nothing. There's no compromise, there's no back and forth, it's no, I'm going to do what I want. And then when the person gets especially vile and angry, she hires a consultant to clean it up. And that frustrates me, you know, because there's still not any improvement when it comes to that. So I'd like to see, I know that the town council has brought forward a resolution to ask for specific measures and oversight. I would hope that that can be implemented. And I'd like to see if there is going to be something like this around the county, rather than just focusing in Lucerne, because I feel that this program exacerbates not just the drug use and overdose, it also contributes to people that are living homeless dumping, squatting and trying to squat into homes. Regardless, there's still needles in the parks that we have, there's still needles in the tributaries, and when you go in the hills on Robinson Road, you see them everywhere. So regardless of the syringe exchange program, it's still happening. I know one can argue, well, maybe there's, if there would be a lot more otherwise, you know, we don't know that. And we couldn't even have that discussion with the group because they won't really say it, or tell us anything, or give us data. I know they've given you data, but we still haven't seen that. So I have a lot more. I know that the SB 57 that was approached by, or brought forward by Senator Weiner, which basically was a pilot program to allow safe injection in San Francisco, and, you know, that might be something for San Francisco. But I think here, what I know about harm reduction is that it eventually gets to a point, and looking into this in Vancouver and up in Washington, or Canada, or whatever, it's come to a point where, and other areas also, and like, I think you said Indiana, was it Indiana that you mentioned?
West Virginia.
West Virginia, and then there was another Midwest area. But either war, they get to a point where they're giving free bags of cocaine because it's clean, you know, to make sure it's a safe high, I guess you could say. And I understand, I understand, however, this is happening in public places. I know that people have visited and said there wasn't any danger there, but where it was before at the senior center, there was bus stops, there was, there's elders nearby that were opposed to this. And on the streets, they state that they're in front of Behavioral Health Building, however, they're usually not. And so there's, there's a lot more, and I know the community's going to speak on this as well. I think I've covered a lot. But that's, those have been my frustrations, and yeah, so if there was another agency that was doing it in a way where they were open and communicating the way at least you are, I would be okay. I would, you know, like, say, okay, well, where are you at? What are the numbers? You're moving and kind of rotating different areas so that it's not just in one place. But what you have is people that are, they're going to just that area, and they know it's there weekly. So I'll stop and get off my soapbox on this, but...
I don't think, thank you, Supervisor Randall, and I don't take it as a soapbox. I personally take it as a passion for the community that you serve, which is greatly appreciated. What, I can't speak on any organization outside the organization that I run and we get to work for and with. But what I can say and talk about is the steps forward that we are taking that are proactive and trying to help support reducing morbidity and mortality in our county. And step one, with your support, and thank you for leaning into this, CAO and board, is the recruitment and hiring of a public health officer. We have been boots on the ground, move in, shake in, and contacting people with great success. That's going to be step one, right? Step two, which we are actively in the process of, is hiring an epidemiologist full-time that can monitor the qualitative and quantitative data of the health outcomes. Are we really number one in the state at this point in time, right? So assessing that. The other thing that I would recommend and suggest is, we put together policy and procedure around service provision in the county with partners. I can't go into someone's backyard and tell them to show me their files, right? But what I think would be really important for the county is to put together, at least for when it comes to health, right, and service provision. Is put together or amend any policy procedure we have around service provision for independent agencies coming into the county to provide maybe these types of services, so we can partner, right? I'm not trying to pigeonhole or tell anyone how to do their job differently, right? But what it does is it takes that holistic approach, that comprehensive approach that we so desire, so that's something to look into. But those three steps alone, right, are going to get us moving in the right direction. And again, as a team, we appreciate your support in helping us get here. So, so thank you.
Supervisor Sabatia?
No, I think that Director Portney, what you just stated is important. We do need to clarify the data, really understand what is affecting those numbers, because I think it's easy to place blame on a specific group without the full understanding of what those numbers are and dissecting it. One of the ways, and I know I spoke to you about it, and I'm hopeful that that is something that we can do if we continue with the SSP, which I think we need to continue, but continue in a more controlled fashion with expectations and reporting and consequences for not following the ground rules that we've set. We need them to work with us, not work on their own. But one of the things that I'd like to see is, how do you know when you find a syringe on the ground that it's from an SSP or not? And I'm hopeful that we can get to a unique type of syringe where it's not just a normal orange cap, clear stem, and that that way we can say, hey, this is a syringe that came from the SSP. We're seeing a whole large number of those, or we're not seeing any of those. That way, we don't, we can slowly throw out some of those observations that we make that don't really have a direct link to say it's because of this or it's because of that. So I think right now it's a little difficult, but when we see those numbers really going high, it's a little concerning. Is it working is the big question mark that I have in my mind, the way that we've been doing it. Because I truly believe in the original intent of the SSPs, which was for infection control. I feel that that's kind of grown a little bit bigger, because I don't believe that a glass pipe is infection control versus the idea now of harm reduction growing and saying, well, if you're not using syringes, you're harming yourself less. Well, that's not infection control anymore. That's harm, harm reduction for the individual themselves, but in my opinion, if you're still providing them a tool to do drugs, they're still harming themselves. That's like us handing out pillows if you don't want to put on a seatbelt. They're still going to hurt themselves, but that shouldn't mean that that's the okay way to go. I think our end goal should be rehabilitation and constantly trying to provide that pathway and that pathway, which is again, why I think that this needs to be linked to the later conversation that we're having today. SafeRx was brought up, and I'm kind of curious as to where are our hospitals and where are our healthcare providers here in Lake County who over-prescribed a whole lot of opioids to our community, kind of cut them off, some entirely, some dwindled down, and then we saw a huge burst. I mean, this is what happened across the nation because of the opioid crisis, a huge burst of opioid, street drugs, and overdose. To me, this is not a Lake County problem, this is not a, the current SSP problem. I think we need to ask for resources from some of the people that helped create the monster that we're trying to put back together, and I'm not quite sure what their level of... that we're trying to put back together, and I'm not quite sure what their level of contribution is when it comes to pass the Safe RX, where now their liability is taken care of, the pharmacy's liability is taken care of, but yet our street liability for our communities is still dealing with the aftermath of the opioid crisis.
So just real briefly, from the beginning, we had prescribing guidelines put into place back in 2015, and the providers from both hospitals and all clinic systems adopted the prescribing guidelines, which was a titration of prescriptions. It worked effectively, it wasn't comfortable for a lot of patients, but it was effective, and we did reduce the prescription rate in Lake County, I can only speak to Lake County. What we saw from that is the bad guys taking advantage of the fact that there was a, a supply and demand issue, and created an abundance of counterfeit opiates, and saturated our streets. It, the, the prescriptions, we get reports all the time on the prescriptions that are written, the prescriptions that are filled, the frequency of that, we can, we're partnerships, our partnership with Partnership Health Plan helps support that data, and we, the providers are doing due diligence in this county. It's the counterfeit that we're seeing, and they're good, the bad guys are good, I mean, they look just, they look better in some cases than the original pills, so it didn't change anything, it just gave an opportunity to a whole different sector to bring in stuff.
And, and I'm just gonna ask my question again, for the idea of those that are still in addiction, because bad guys are not, bad guys are always going to exist and take advantage of whatever opportunity is there, we kinda dropped some people off, knowing that there was a high suicide rate for opioid, that when you cut them off, knowing that there was a high addiction rate, and, and to me, my question is, in this whole idea of SSP and dealing with the aftermath, where is our healthcare providers, are they contributing to the solution for what we're doing, rather than solely having a conversation about any positive change or any other SSP? What is their participation in the aftermath of this? Because I'm not aware of it, but from my perspective and the public's perspective, it almost feels like they said, okay, we're, we're, we're good, we cleaned up our high level of prescription that we were doing before, what's their contribution to the past Safe RX, past and into the SSP world?
Absolutely, so the doctors, their, their playing field is the exam room, their playing field is, it's a one-on-one with a person who has suffered from pain, or, or whatever got them those prescriptions to begin with. The titration was always a plan, it wasn't a cutoff thing, there's, there was a plan of titration that wasn't very comfortable for some patients, however, a provider once supported on doing the right thing, they, they were sold a bill of goods with the opiate crisis, right? So now they're, now they're being told, oh no, you know, here, this is a better way to do it, and they're thankful that they have the support now that says, good, so we can bring them back to a reasonable amount, we can prescribe them with physical therapy, TENS units, all these other things that will help. Many, many people have benefited greatly from that, they've been able to go back to work after 10 years, they have clarity in their life, they can carry their granddaughter without worrying to drop her, some still resist that, or still have the addiction issues, and are still seeking pills or, or a high in another way. Leila spoke about the, the trauma in the county, this county has had its fair share of trauma, everything from fires, to a pandemic, to isolation, to food insecurities, all of that contributes negatively to anybody who is already in a situation. So those folks, they need the connections to resources like the syringe service program, where they're connecting with somebody, if that's the only comfortable place that they find that they can go to have communication, then harm reduction is harm reduction. I'm wearing my seatbelt, I'm wearing my helmet when I ride my bike, you know, so if that's, if that's the case, but to get back to the provider thing real quick, we need to support our providers, I don't think they wash their hands of it at all, they're in the rooms with these people crying, or in pain still, or whatever, and they're prescribing the best that they can to get these people well. So I, I look to them as kind of the heroes who took the hit for something that was created, not, not by them necessarily, I mean, they wrote the prescriptions, but they were sold a bill of goods, that this was the, the best thing that they could do for all those years, so I, I commend the providers for taking the time. A lot of them refer to behavioral health, they refer to addiction specialists, you know, I mean, the prescription list is immense, that they're trying to give these people all these resources.
And I appreciate that, I, I think what I'm looking for is like, right now, we have our healthcare providers helping us with our homeless situation, and that's what I'm looking for from our healthcare providers, is those who aren't seeing a doctor, those who have really fallen off the map and are literally in the streets to find what they need in order to self-medicate or just deal with their addiction, that's where I'm asking, where is our healthcare? Because I think that we could be better partners in serving those people that have fallen through the cracks, because they will end up at the hospital, and they will be in horrible shape when they get there, and I know that's why the hospitals are working with us for the homeless situation, because of the fact that they feel that it creates a, a better measure of their healthcare outcomes in the county if they provide that help with homelessness, and I'm looking for that partnership, if it doesn't exist, for those that have fallen through the cracks, because we know that not everybody has a primary doctor here, and then we know that there's some people that just have fallen off the cracks, because maybe they're saying no, but they're addicted and they have that, that mental health issue that they can't just go to a doctor and, and deal with, because that, that's not gonna work out for them. So I appreciate the work that's being done at the doctor's office, but I'm trying to say, outside of the doctor's office is where I'm looking for healthcare to be a partner and continue helping with that.
And that's a great point Supervisor, and, and at the C-suite level, now that you're a brand-new member of the Hope Rising Board, you'll, you'll get a glimpse of that with Dr. Knight and Colleen, they're, they're true pioneers and partners, as we continue to push forward to address health disparities holistically in the county, and I think it would be, it'd be really beneficial to the team with the Hope Rising transition, with Justin Taken stepping into the director role, to bring these questions up, because we have now identified a strategic plan for Hope Rising to be the conduit to address those very things, right? So that's a great topic that we can collectively address there.
And just, and thank you very much, looking forward to those conversations. Just for logistics, today, it's more of a overview of the SSP program as a whole, there will be a further conversation about our county current SSP, if they, if that's what they, they are called, I'm not sure what the acronym is for them, but that will be coming in the near future, correct?
Correct. Once we get the public health officer, which we're actively recruiting and having great success, the epidemiologist, and further conversations with our current service provider partners, I can say with confidence, we are on the right track, we are moving in the right direction, it's not going to be a sprint, this is totally gonna be a crawl, but we're crawling, and, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna get there, but we just wanna, we wanted to provide information, understanding 27th is Harm Reduction Month, we wanted to keep our promise to the Board in addressing the questions that were asked prior to my arrival here, and we wanna continue to keep a pulse on this and move forward for you and the county.
And so just last thing before I open it up to the public, just Supervisor Sabatier mentioned overdoses, and my, my, one of the things that I, I'm glad that happened is the waiver for partnership, before, some of our folks that are in the community did not have the opportunity to, or they could, they worked with AODS, however, sometimes that didn't work out, so now that we have that in place for that waiver, so that partnership can apply that towards recovery in the county is very beneficial. Speaking of recovery in the county, there is an SLE right, I would say about the, not even a sixteenth of a mile down the road from where they serve this, so if someone recidivizes, there's right there, there's a store that the community frequents, even children, there's a school within a thousand feet away, and so like, I think this is a different conversation, but I think there needs to be more in consideration when it comes to where we provide these types of opportunities or programs, so.
Totally agree.
I'll, I'll, I'll stop from there and allow the public to, I, I think I seen Todd or Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, you guys have been talking a long time, figuring things out here. You know, I, I appreciate the reports, but I think just some of the takeaways I have, when I, when I came on the Board, the Safe RX 2017, when I was first elected, you know, Safe RX had been going on for a couple of years, and some of those immediate questions that I asked was, if you're gonna cut people off the opioids from the Safe RX program, what's that option, what is that transition? Because you just couldn't take away those opioids and expect that not to happen, and we're kinda seeing the results of that, and I know Safe RX folks sat right here in front of me and like, oh, we're not just gonna cut them off, but that's what happened, that is what happened, and folks had to find that other opportunity, so as you say, the black market grew, and folks started pushing that through. It's a, I don't have the answers for it, but that's what I've experienced just sitting here on the Board. Also, as we were going down, I think one of the things that we really need to do is get that internal data collected, I've seen these reports from Mr. Woods since I came on there, and always talking about, we gotta tell our story, I love the data conversation as we move forward, the data, the outcomes, and what we're giving them, you know, for opportunities. The engagement, if they're coming to needle exchanges or other things, of getting that information in front of them, I know you guys have talked a little bit about it, saying, hey, here it is, you can go to the doctors, this is what the county offers, here it is, and need to engage with those folks every week, learn their names, understand what they are, and be engaged with them, because the one thing that we know, and, you know, I come from a community of, you know, Native American alcohol, you know, that is something that's sold everywhere, it, it, it just, it decimates, you know, the tribal communities across the country, now I know opioids and other things have been introduced, but you've gotta always have that handout, it's not on day one, it's every time you interact with them, hey, this is available for you, this is what's going on, and I think some of that conversation was talked about today, setting the base standards of what we as a county, no matter who's doing that work here in the county, that we have that base standards set together, and this is how we engage, because these are the most vulnerable people, and they need to know that they're not alone, they need to know that they're not shunned, yep, they might be laying around in the parks, and we all have them, it doesn't matter where we live in Lake County, we got folks that are sleeping on the streets, they're sleeping in the parks, they're having mental episodes right on the street, we, we all encounter them, some people we've grown up with all our lives, others that are, that end up, or that are planted here, and I still swear, some big cities ship them to the, I can't prove that, but I think that happens, you know, so I'll probably get in trouble for that statement, but I, I really, you know what I mean, so we gotta have those base standards and really engage in that area, I appreciate the conversations gonna happen for the youth center, because I know that for years, on the tribal side, we were having those conversations, and we finally got a youth treatment center built over in, what is it, whereby DQ over in Colusa, over, another county or two over, for some tribal youth for the state, so baseline, if you're gonna be doing that work in the county, this is what you're gonna do, open, transparent, and how the county wants you to act and move forward to take care of our constituents. Not saying we don't want it to happen, but if you're gonna do it, these are the standards, so I think this Board, working with you, we gotta get that together, because we wanna support programs that are gonna come in and reach these people, but we've gotta had standards that we can really levy to keep moving forward, not just creating situations for communities that come in here and want answers on why we're doing what we do, but we have to be there. At no point, whether it's drug addiction, mental health, people need to know that they're not alone, people need to know that we're not giving up on them, no matter how long they've been in it, and we don't, you know, we don't have the answers, they're not easier, they're on one side of this issue or the other, just, you know, if you're not, if you've never experienced it, you're just like, stop it, why can't you stop it? Well, this is a disease, it takes control of you, it mental, you know, it changes your body chemistry, you need it, so these are things that we just gotta keep building on, you know, speak from experience, whatever we're talking about here today, I speak from experience of family members who've gone through this, and, you know, I know you have, people have lost their lives, and it is just, it's really hard, and as, you know, a politician, you can put whatever paper you wanna put together, we can offer every service, but we just need to keep going at them, going at them, going at them, breaking down those walls, because no rehab's gonna work, we can build 50 rehabs here in the county, but until that person decides it's time to get rehabilitated, it ain't gonna work, you can mandate him for three years to stay in rehab from the judge, but that ain't gonna work, it's until that decision is there, and we just gotta keep doing it, so. If you guys understand, I support the program, but we also gotta answer to the rest of the constituents that have to live with it, because we're all dealing with it, and if you're not in this arena, you don't have it in your family, then you deserve to live a life too that isn't gonna affect your life dramatically while we're trying to take care of this issue. So I hear it, I hear it both sides, I don't have the answers, I don't think there is any simple answer, but there's some little things that we could do moving forward, and I really wanna track those numbers, and I'll tell you why, coming on Board as a Board member, when we were talking about that stuff, we had asked our, our current public health director and some behavioral health of, hey, do you have numbers? Because we were seeing reports from the woods of Lake County being the most prescribed, you know, opioids in the state of California, I mean, our numbers were really high, but then when we got to the other side of it, of, you know, how many overdoses, who, who's on drug, where is that data that we could use to say, listen, Lake County is that problem child, but where's the data for us to back it up, and we're going after Big Pharma and the doctors, you know, and we didn't have that, so going forward, I really wanna emphasize that we get that internal data, so we have it as we go forward, so we as a Board, let's say if we can make votes or decisions on, you know, Big Pharma, you know, they're coming down, they know they've done wrong, that's why you have all these settlements across the country, but if we don't have the data and just say, well, Robert Woods said we're number one, we gotta have that internal data to go fight with folks, and fight on behalf of our constituents, both who are dealing with this problem, and those folks that have this sickness, this disease, so, now I'm on a soapbox, I guess, but one other thing too, for the county, I do have a specific question in the, in, in your department, do we have anyone that, that is, that is hired, that's gone through it, that's recovered through an addiction process, and then been hired by the, that are working with these folks? Because the one thing that helps the most, when we're trying to help people that are dealing with this, is talking to somebody who's been through it, you can read in books, you can do all this stuff, but until you're talking directly with somebody that has been through it and been able to come out of it, that's the relationship and the conversations that need to happen. I, I really think how critical that is in this rehabilitation, or getting through to that person, because if you're gonna be someone who's never dealt with it and try to have a conversation, you're not gonna understand what they're going through, you're not gonna understand about waking up on the street, or finding your friend with a needle hanging out of their arm, and, you know, whatever, so until you're in those positions, you know, you gotta make those engagements heart-to-heart, mind-to-mind, non-judgmental, and saying, look, you can get help, because I did it. So anyway, and, I'm preaching, so anyway, I don't mean to be, but I come from a place of experience that have seen horrible things, you know, that people deal with, but I've also seen success stories, whether it's mental health drugs, or other things, where they finally said, we broke them down, you know, hey, finally, hey, take me to that rehab, hey, I need the help here, hey, I need that medication, because I know something's wrong, so anyway, that's, that's my thoughts. Setting the parameters, as was asked by Supervisor Sabatier, some type of baseline of programs are gonna be run here, collecting that data, telling our own story, and like Supervisor Sabatier said, there's another conversation later on today, let's get them early in this education process of what needs to be done, and we're having these conversations here as a Board, and putting it on paper as, you know, politicians, but it also needs to be done in the households. We, if you have children, you have these things, you gotta have those conversations. I grew up, I'll just, a prime example for me, I grew up in a family that smoked, man, you riding the car, the car, the cigarette ashtray was full, smokers, I mean, it was, it was everywhere, the whole family, they did it, every event you went to, they were smoking, like I said, and I don't smoke, you know, I, that's one thing I don't do, I don't bother cigarettes, never, hasn't interested me on that stuff, so it's an education process too, because family members are good enough to say, hey, man, don't, don't pick up this nasty habit, you know, understand what you're doing, live with those decisions, and take on that internal responsibility, and I know that's not even- decisions, and take on that internal responsibility. And I know that's not easy, but it's all of us together trying to fix it. And I see it. I, you know, travel all the way around the county. I was up in your area. I eat at Gorilla Gens Island this weekend. I love the cheese sandwiches over there. But, you know, you see it. And when I talk about it, we have it all over. And it's, you know, it's that simple conversation, the one that might get them, and having those things. So it's not easy. And we're never going to go away. But I think those baseline standard things that we're talking about are very important. And having the programs, even whether you like them or not, I really like the idea of marking those needles. So we can start to track that. Little things like that to understand. Because we all know, if you don't give them needles, here's just a story. As a business owner, every large business is, you know, to be health and safety, you get the diabetic needles or whatever you have, the needle boxes you throw away. You know, they can dispose of those needles. How many businesses have those where you have people trying to steal those boxes? You know what I mean? And that's the honest truth. They try and take them off the wall because they know they're full of needles. Yeah, they're used, but it don't matter. Usually diabetic needles are in those things. But that's an actual reality. So you got to see both sides of this when you're doing that as you move forward. So not trying to encourage more use, but the reality is, they will get it one way or the other. And we just got to have the rules and regulations and hold people accountable who are doing the work in the county. That's what I have to say.
Thank you Supervisor Simon. And, and I would agree. I think rules and regulations are just important in general. I just do want to express that the Public Health Department, I believe at this time, has only two contracts when it comes to SafeRx. That's Behavioral Health and Hope Rising. And those are the only contract MOUs that we have that express the relationship of rules, responsibilities, and outcomes and objectives. I just want to make that clear to the board. And I do, and would love to see moving forward stakeholders who choose to provide services in the county, work with the Health Department, with our Public Health Officer, with our Epidemiologist, Behavioral Health, Hope Rising, or SafeRx team, to monitor those things. So.
I know we got work to do. I know you don't have the answers today, but I just thought I heard some good conversation today as we move forward. Because we are, we're in this together. And we all, we can't do all that work. So, you know, maybe that's the conversation, coming up with more MOUs and understanding how we work together to, to really address the situation. I appreciate the conversations today. They're not easy. Because, you know, we're not talking about, well, the word widgets is always used, but it's the most vulnerable folks that we're, we're trying to just bring back into our society and our community. And it's a challenge. And, you know, unless you've experienced that with a family member and lost that battle, it's hard, it's hard to understand.
Supervisor Shabatia.
First Supervisor Simon, thank you for your statements. Powerful words. I want to question the timeline. There's a lot of when we get a PHO, when we get an epidemiologist. And I don't know what that timeline looks like, because it's a matter of when we actually find somebody that is appointed by the, the board. And I don't know what that timeline looks like. But yet, we are actively still moving forward with the current SSP. We are still getting community members coming in and providing their feedback on how that's working in their communities. Is there, is there any way to change that timeline to looking at an MOU before some of those things happen, rather than potentially waiting another six months, another nine months? Because I just, I can't, I don't have a crystal ball to tell me when we'll be able to fulfill all of those steps prior to having that conversation.
I would, I mean, I would, I would, I hope that we have a PHO by yesterday. But ideally, what I would like to see in some of the conversations that we have is sooner rather than later, right? So I would like to proposition, as far as like hiring goes, you know, it'd be ideally, no more than a three-month window. You know, we have recruiters, we have recruiters on it. And we have internal relationships that are fruitful. And so we're hoping to see that materialize. Now, the learning curve for the restructuring that we need to do as far as service provision and structuring, what this looks like, you know, could be six months, right, to get the baseline, goals, objectives, and strategic plans. These partners that come into the county don't have to sign anything, right? We highly encourage it, right? But they don't necessarily have to. So we really need to continue to identify partners that want to jump on board with the mission and vision of where we want to go as far as harm reduction and syringe exchange programs. But to answer your question in short, I would love to see a significant amount of progress in six months, right, around at least how we're moving forward with service provision and monitoring some of the things that we're doing. Again, for what we are able to monitor and support, we're ahead of the game. But there's, it sounds to me like there may be some external factors that we need to continue to establish a relationship and support to encourage the outcomes that we need. So let's shoot for six months to get together a strategic plan around what that could look like, if that's okay with you, Board.
I'm wondering if maybe it's possible to check in a little bit before that, maybe three months, let us know where we are. Just because I think that right now, there's no oversight, there's no rules and regulations to necessarily abide to as far as with the county and what our expectations are. Yes, there is state code. But I would say if it's possible, and if the board agrees to do a check in, in the next three months, just to let us know where the status is, so that we can be aware.
Sure. And I will express, our internal programs are solid. And we can give you all the reports and updates that we have on our internal SafeRx. Externally though, I just want to express, like, that, that's kind of outside of our scope and ability. Because we can't, again, we can't go into someone else's backyard and ask for receipts, right? So we can investigate and see who is providing services and try to encourage them to provide information, X, Y, and Z. But we, we're not in a position to stronghold them. But I do agree that we should look at creating policy and procedure around what it looks like to partner with incoming agencies who want to provide that care. And we do actually have templates and MOUs that we actually have out right now that we're waiting on to get back. So yes, in six months, we would like to come back and share our successes in it, both internally and hopefully externally.
You're talking about with the programs in place right now? Or, yeah, I'd like to see way sooner, but that's just me.
I'm sorry, you said three months.
Just to at least check in. I know, I know that it would be nice to have all of the positions filled in order to be a part of the conversation, in order to get all those perspectives inputted into the documents that are coming to us. But I also recognize the difficulties. So if we can get a check in in three months, just because I'd hate to push it out like that, because whether we agree with it or not, communities are impacted by it in some way, shape, or form, have been bringing it to us. And so the sooner we can try and get it on, and if we can get that check in to kind of see where it is, I think that would be good.
Supervisor Simon.
You know, one last thing, like I said, all these programs have the best intentions. And I think one of the things with the SafeRx program, as it's been implemented through the hospitals, the doctors prescribing these, is for the folks doing the right things, you know, you know, I'll just take a sample. You know, my father, he needed medication, especially the later years in his life. But once these programs were implemented in Lake County to get prescribed opioids, you know, the person doing the right thing has to talk to a psychiatrist twice a month now here in Lake County, and elders and folks that really need this medication. So they're required to talk to a psychologist, I think it was twice a month, had to go to a psychologist, spend 30 minutes with him before he could get his next prescription. So that, I think, is a good thing. I think if we're going to be doing these needle exchange programs, the SSPs, at least once a quarter, once a month, we need to have a psychologist there, a mental health, saying, you know, talking to these individuals, or something to that effect. Because the people doing the right thing, we talk about implementing different laws from government, the people doing the right thing will go through the steps and do the right way to get it because they need that medication because they're in pain. So I don't know if we do that with some of these programs, but I like that SafeRx implementation. I didn't like it because it was an extra two trips we had to make to Lakeport. But it was, you know, it was the right thing. Because now you're, you're not only just prescribing it, you're also trying to figure out, is this person in a mental position, you know, with their mental health issues to deal with that. And so anyway, I know we don't have, I know this is a lot to ask, but I just bring that out, is that is something that was implemented, and the folks doing the right thing are going to that doctor and getting those evaluations. And the folks that aren't, you know, are not doing that. So anyway, just, just an example of the, things have changed and to help with that. But those mental health evaluations are, to me, I'm like, oh, I think we're kind of, we're putting too much energy into the folks that are doing the right thing that really need this, and not enough into the folks that aren't. So.
And I couldn't agree with you more. I think the more resources that we have and the more support provided to people, it's, it's a game changer. It can be the, it can be the difference. I do know that at the current syringe exchange, they are, they have licensed LCSWs. They have educated counselors there doing some work. So, but it doesn't mean that there shouldn't be more. It's just, they do currently have that.
They have a psychologist that goes there?
Not a psychologist.
Because these are psychology associates, you have to go get your mental health checkup to get that next prescription. And so that's, you know, they're going to ask those questions, like we were saying. So I appreciate, and I'm not down on a program. I'm not doing that. Just my questions are specifically the folks dealing with this. What can we do? And that was just one thing that I know was implemented since we started the SafeRx in here, that changed for the folks that were getting these opioid prescriptions that really needed them, that were keeping them alive. You know, it needed, they needed it to survive.
And I would just like to stick to what we oversee as a department and engage with. I just don't want to get outside.
I know. We just want to get there eventually.
Okay. And, and I, and you know, in the future, we look to put together programs that are comprehensive.
Thanks for keeping me, thanks for keeping me on track. Don't passionate about it.
I just don't want to go in anybody else's backyard and speak about their programs.
Todd, you had your hand up, and then I'm going to open it up to the public. If you'd like to come and speak on this from the public, please come up to the microphone. And once Todd's finished, I'll open it up for public input. Go ahead, Todd.
Thank you. Wow. This has been an amazing conversation. And I've been trying to take notes and trying to speak. And I only have three minutes. One of the things that Supervisor Simon was talking about was, are we, are we recruiting and hiring folks with lived experience? Yes. In my department, we do. We, you've heard, you hear me talk about our peer support centers. The word peer means that we are, we are working with and hiring folks that have lived experiences. I've been involved in SafeRx pretty much since its inception. And I'm very excited to support the work that's being done. Because as this conversation has gone on for a while, so far this morning, we work very closely with SafeRx and also the work of health services. And I, and thank you Director Portney for your comments. Because we do need to work closely together and make sure we address these issues. Later on in this meeting, I, we will be talking about the Mental Health Services Act Annual Update. There is a big prevention piece in there. I heard prevention, because prevention is a huge part of this, that, that also ties into the, the harm reduction piece of this. When, and as Ms. Tangerin mentioned, you know, when, when the prescriptions, the prescriptions were sort of cut off, we at Behavioral Services saw quite an increase in the use of illicit drugs. And so these folks that need the help will find the drugs wherever they are. But that's, that's part of our charge, that we, that we help them and support them through the programs and services that we provide. And gosh, I would love to go on and on about this, because there is still so much work to be done around this. And it's funny, just yesterday, I saw an article about how the effects of COVID-19 are still creating PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorder. And these folks are still turning to drugs and what have you, to deal with it. And so, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can to serve these folks. But I could go on and on, and my time is probably up. But I just want to say, I support the work of SafeRx and everything that the Health Services Department is doing, doing great work. And I'm thankful that we do have a great working relationship. And I'll, I'll stop there.
All right. Thank you, Todd. So we'll open it up to public input. And I see two hands up in Zoom. If you would like to come up, just please make a line over here on the side. And then I'll call on you after the Zoom. I'll ask Jillian Perillo to unmute and start with the three minutes. I'm going to do the Zoom first, Kevin, and then, then I'll call on you. So go ahead, Jillian.
So, thank you. I was just at home today. I wanted specifically to see Leila's presentation. She's put an enormous amount of work into it. And, you know, basically, it was the beginnings of a program of trying to reduce the stigma around drug use, harm reduction, SSPs. And I was very excited to see her presentation with a lot of great data in it. I was extremely distressed to see that we ventured over then into the, any positive change. I don't think that was the scope of what was on the meeting today. And Anina Van Vorn is down at the California Public Health Substance Use Reduction Conference in San Diego, so is not here to, to respond to some of the allegations that were made. I do want to say that Anina has been doing this for more than 30 years and has never taken any money from the county. She has done it completely without any county money. That all the data that has been asked for has been already supplied to public health months ago. And so the data is there, and I'm sorry that you don't have it. That a couple of things that were brought up, that they've been asked to move and haven't moved is not true. The program did move at the new location, which was sort of discussed and agreed to. There are volunteers there every week, many who have been homeless, many who are recovering from a drug addiction. And they are there every week to talk to the people and to be, it was very easy to be able to relate to them. There was some discussion, I think, one of you talked about, well, we don't know if there'd be less needles if the program wasn't there. I mean, Leila gave you many examples of, that is absolutely that what happens when the programs go away, there are more needles. So, you know, I'm just sort of frustrated that this woman who's been doing this work, and I'm sure you find her angry, but I'd probably be pretty angry too, if I was doing this work for so many years with the hardest people to work with, and, you know, not, not getting any appreciation at all. I think she's a great asset to our county, and I hope that we can figure out a way to make this work. Because she is doing the work on the ground, letting people, referring people to treatment when they, they want to be retrieved, getting people off drugs, changing people's lives with the most difficult people in this county. By the way, she does have a very successful program in Lower Lake, that there'd be no issues with it all. She spends, I think it's two hours every week in Lucerne, and then the same amount of time in Lower Lake, and never had any issues at all in Lower Lake. So I hope we can be open-minded, and we can really understand what this is about. This is harm reduction. This is stopping people from killing themselves. And Mo, I think you spoke so persuasively about what it was all about. So thank you. And thank you, Kim, also, and Dr. Jonathan Portney, also for bringing this subject to us. And I hope we just can do more education, and we can have open minds, and people can understand how important this subject is. Thanks.
Thank you. And just one quick response. The open minds are there. I think the people that are wanting questions would like to see open minds about some of the discussions of how it affects their community. And most of the people that come to this are not from Lucerne. There's probably two or three. Everyone else is there for the time being, and they leave back to Santa Rosa, Lower Lake, or wherever else it is. And the people of the community are right there to tell them they don't want it. So, I mean, we can go on and back and forth, but I'll go ahead and stop. Becky Schwanger, you have your hand up if you can state your name for the record, and we'll give you three minutes, and then I'll open it up to, or then the folks in the chambers can speak.
Hi, my name's Becky Schwanger. I'm a paramedic, and I serve the area of Lucerne. And I'm also a resident of Lucerne. And since this needle program has been in our community, I've noticed And since this needle program has been in our community, I've noticed an increase in overdose, overdoses, as well as overdose deaths. There are also many overdoses that are not reported to the county, as folks that call for us or others that call for them use Narcan prior to arrival, and then they flee the scene. So there's a missed opportunity for us to speak with those folks. But I feel that this program needs to be comprehensive. So instead of opening up the doors to a back of a van, it needs to be done in a clinic in a controlled setting with professionals there, with somebody ready to provide counseling, offer the services, and actually be able to get people into those services that want to be rehabilitated. And there's been an increase in number of needles that we've found on the streets of Lucerne. I walk every day with my friend, who's also a retired fire captain, paramedic, and find numerous needles, and especially the day after the exchange program. Often we'll be walking and find an alcohol prep pad, then a cap, and then a disposable syringe that's disposed of on the ground. So I'm really curious how this is a one-to-one exchange when the prevalence of hypodermic needles is so high, and we've got a lot of kids playing at the parks, and we've had a lot of overdoses in the parks as well as needles. So I think that something else needs to be done, a different approach for this type of program. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. So come on up, Kevin, and state your name for the record, and they'll start your three minutes.
I have some stuff here I'd like to give you guys to look at. Quiet, talk, confirm. Hi, my name's Kevin Wasick. I live in Lucerne. My family's been there for 57 years, and I sit on the council for Lucerne. And this issue has been brought up to our council about five, six times. We've had it on our agenda, and it's a, it's a real problem. If you see the picture, and you'll see the picture of the, of the truck in front of that house. That house has been vandalized. They've done their drugs in the back of their yard. They had a fire back there. They live back there. They've broken into the house. They've stole the stuff out of the house. One of the persons that live on 13th Street went up to the day that they had the fire and they were back there doing their drugs, was approached, the lady that runs that thing had a knife in her hand and was gardening at the neighbor. We have film of this. I've actually gotten gas to keep an eye on the house, and I drive by and I drove down the alleyway, right there where their, their house is and where her, her place is at. Some kids come walking down the street, right in front of the needles, the stains, and they're from about here to that window over there, and they're doing the needle exchange. I'm for this program. I think it would be a good thing. But if you notice those pictures, this is after the needle change. This is what we find in Lucerne. And right in the end of June, right around 4th of July, Kelly, I went over to see her, went in her backyard, found meth in her backyard in a packet. So she said, what should we do with this? I said, let's call the sheriff. Sheriff came in and got the, got the meth. I don't object to this program, and I don't want to be soapbox, but it needs to remove a Lucerne. And how would you like to have a needle exchange in your front yard? So when you come out with your kids, you've got a big building there, and you've got all these people around this little place exchanging needles in front of your house. Kelly's asked her to move, to leave. She says, no, it's a public street. I can park here anytime I want. Her address is at the clinic, not in front of Kelly's house. It's a nuisance. We've got more people, they even sending gas in the mornings from this. We've never had this problem. So I just would like you guys to take this program and move it out of Lucerne, take it somewhere else. Because I sit on this council, and I'm trying to make Lucerne a better place to live, so we can bring in businesses and bring in people to live in Lucerne. But we have this on 13th Street every Tuesday night. It's really, really bad. So I hope you guys can get this moved off 13th Street.
Supervisor's about to.
I know the waters have been muddied in the conversation today on what the topic is, but right, I, I want to ask the chair, because it's up to the chair on how, how to move forward, but we do not have an MOU or a contract with the current syringe exchange program. We've been provided information about general syringe exchange programs, and so it's hard for me to listen about finding meth in a house, and it sounds more like a code enforcement type of conversation, and it does a follow-up to what's on our agenda today. I think that people want to have that conversation about the specific syringe exchange program, which is why I'm asking if we can check back in earlier, because I know the community wants to have that, but I'm not sure how, the, the connection of what we find on our streets in connection to the current exchange program that is in the county versus the conversation of the general idea of harm reduction and questions about harm reduction and overall things. And I know that the waters have been muddied, but I just, I feel like there, there, it's a slightly different conversation. And so I wanted to express that to the chair to see if there was any changes or not, and I'll leave it up to you.
I'll look to Anita. However, I know that's the only syringe exchange program in the county, so, but Anita should, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that the issue for people is their experience in, in terms of a program that's been highlighted in Health Services commentary today. Not the specific people who are running a program, but just the concerns for community things that they want to have considered by Health Services and by the Board of Supervisors. Not this specific type of program, but just harm reduction as a general point of reference. So references to a specific program, and that discussion can be taken up by the board another time, but concerns that have been raised by their own experiences that relate to harm reduction should be appropriate for, for comment today.
All right, thank you. Sir, next, state your name for the record, and then we'll start your three minutes.
Hello, my name is Greg Bianchini. I live in Lucerne on 13th Avenue, and today I want to talk about the, the harm that is causing to our, our town and, and our street. I'm not against this program. It's a very vital program. It's where and how it's operated. The truck is set up in the street, not in a parking lot. She is uncivil, threatening, lying, and she tells me to fuck off, and it's her turf.
We can't have the cursing.
I apologize. I apologize. Please don't allow her to set up this truck on 13th tonight, because she's going to be there tonight. Our kids should come first, no matter what. The kids and our seniors should come first over any drug user. The kids have got to come first. I understand that the, the drug users, they need help too, but the kids, we can't throw the kids underneath the bus, and the seniors, and the families that have lived on that street for generations have to deal with this exchange program now. And 13th Street, it's not a drug street. It's not safe for the kids, residents, seniors, and it is dangerous for this street. There's kids and families with, with kids with, that live on this street, and the school is close by. The school is on 17th Street. And also, you mentioned that, the last annual report, I, I went to the, the Health Department two weeks ago, and I, I requested a copy of the last annual report, and what I got was a report from 2013. I also requested the requirements, restrictions, guidelines, regulations, safety rules, and public records and, and recent data, which I, the only thing that I received was some public records. I didn't get the data that was turned in, and now I asked, called yesterday and asked again about it, and they said that they, they don't have that ready yet. But now I just heard that it was, it's been turned in, so I should be able to go get that when I leave here today. So that's where I'm going to go, to the Public Health Department and pick up that data that she was supposed to turn in, I guess about eight months ago. So, so anyways, it just something needs to be done about this, and just, she's, any positive change is just uncivil. It's not fair to the community, the good people that live in Lucerne. I know she's trying to help people, but it needs to be in, just not in the street.
All right, we got to wrap it up, Greg.
And also.
Greg, we got to wrap it up.
Okay. I do have videos. I have a few recordings of all this, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Director Portney. Excuse me, sir. What was your name?
Greg Bianchini.
Greg, Jonathan.
Greg Bianchini, thank you.
Greg, pleasure. I'm the director of the Health Department. And again, what I just want to express is, is there is no MOU between the Health Department and any syringe exchange programs in the county. So when you're asking for specific data, I would personally like to meet with you, because we need to get really specific in what you're asking for.
Yeah.
Because I, and I need to express this, I, I have zero authority over what is asked for, what is given to me from a company or a organization that I do not have a contractual agreement with. I'll work with you to try to find what we have, but I can't.
I think Ms. Grant wants to elaborate.
Well, he's.
Oh, okay.
I can't give any information about a neighbor that I don't have a contract with. But let's meet after this, and we'll try to figure something out to, that we can meet as far as data collection goes.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you my, my phone number, my contact information.
That'd be great. Let's do it. Yep.
All right. Thank you, Greg.
That should be public knowledge, though, the data. I should be able to receive that.
That should, that needs to come some, that can't come from the Health Department, though, because you don't have a, a contract with them.
Greg, you've been way past. If you can talk to him afterwards.
I get it, thanks.
Yeah. Ms. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, people have various experiences in their lives, and that informs their viewpoints, and of course, it does for all of us. So people are going to talk about syringe services and their concerns about it, but highlighting a particular program today is, is unnecessary and beyond the scope. However, the experiences they've had in their own community with regard to programs, what, what they would like to see adjusted or modified or considered, all of those things are appropriate comments.
All right. Go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question from Ms. Grant. I know you've been through all of the historical paperwork in regards to our syringe exchange program. I believe there is a resolution where the Board of Supervisors stated that a specific group was the county exchange program. There's no contract in the sense of expectations or guidelines, but there is a reporting factor that is in the resolution, that data will be provided annually, and that's also, I believe, state code. So does that provide us the avenues to sharing the data from a agency that we do not have a contract with but have that resolution?
It may. It, it certainly gives some type of nexus. What I would suggest to your board, if you will, to allow me to go back and look at the resolution and explain to you under the law what I see as the legal avenues you have with regard to your working relationship with, with any comparable type of program in the county. I can certainly do that by your next board meeting, if that's acceptable to you. But I wouldn't want to guess today.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Grant. Ma'am?
My name is Roberta Wright, and I'm a resident on 13th Avenue in Lucerne. And one thing about the needles, just kind of reiterating what other people already said, but I walk the streets also most mornings, and the needles I find are Wednesday morning almost always. And I pick them up and bag them and try and find a safe place to throw them away, and it's concerning. And also, I used to have my friends' kids come and stay with me, and now I, their mom doesn't want them coming over anymore at all. But they used to ride bikes in the neighborhood. They don't do that anymore. And I've had direct experience with what goes on with addiction, and I've lost people in my family. And I'm not against the program. I'm just against the location in the middle of our street. It's not even on the side of the street. It's in the middle of our street. They're parked in the middle of our street. They set up chairs in the middle of our street, and they draw a whole lot of bad news. And it's, these people are just disposing, I mean, there's, like, why don't they have to bring their needles back before they get a new needle? They aren't doing any of this stuff. They're just throwing them in the streets. It's, it's, I don't know. You know, and I, I think this money is going to her, and I heard someone say that she's not getting any money, but she does get money because a young girl that I know two streets over just got a job with her. She said it's the best paying job she's had ever for, you know, she's young, but it's her best paying job. I'm like, so there is money being given to these people from somebody, I don't know who. And the other thing is, anybody that I know that's tried to pull over and stop and talk to her has, has received hostility. Nobody has been treated with respect that has any questions. If you start to question her, she approaches you with hostility. And it's just, it's unacceptable what she's doing. And I, I really think that money for, you know, a psychologist or, I, I think the, the program is good, and it could be utilized in a much better way if they're getting some kind of counseling and, and it's being done inside Behavioral Health or inside the Health Department or inside some other county building, but not in the middle of 13th Street. It's just ridiculous. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kurt McKelvey. On the third Thursdays of every month, I chair the Lucerne Area Town Hall meetings there in Lucerne. And the SEP program has come up as a regular topic in the last six months or so. The things that are reported to us, and I'll try to keep the, the statement in a harm reduction context here. Essentially, what we're seeing is evidence of, or people in the community telling us that, that they're not seeing a reduction in harm, they're actually seeing an increase in certain activities. The SEP program, as it's described by, you know, the State Department of Public Health, County Department of Public Health, on paper, it's, it's absolutely great. It, it's definitely something that, that is needed in the community. There are overdose deaths, there are opioid use in, in the community that, that needs to be addressed, and there needs to be services provided for that. What we're seeing, though, as a whole, is the agency that's delivering that program having, having no oversight, no regulation, nobody to answer to, and no reason to answer to anybody, and, which flies in the face of state guidelines. The California Department, State Department of Public Health states that SEP programs should have a, a process in which they take positive and negative feedback and document it, and then make a good faith effort to augment their programs to address those issues. We're not seeing that at all here. What we're seeing instead is hostility being returned in, in part by the SEP provider, and essentially, at, at one of our recent meetings, I pointed out that they don't have a complaint process. There's no listed website. The only thing that I could find online was a, a private Facebook page, or a private Facebook group, I'm sorry. And, and essentially, there's no online or, or telephone number or, or anything given as far as a means of, of addressing community concerns. Since that time, at that, at that meeting where I pointed that out, they did provide a, you know, complaint form, but it was kind of invasive, and the questions that they were asking, they needed, you know, they, they required your physical address, things like that, which I felt would, would deter people from providing input. The, the, is that my time?
Oh, no, no.
Okay. So, thank you. Essentially, what I'm, what I'm seeing here is, I would like to see a holistic program. We don't currently have a holistic program that's, that's being delivered. We don't currently have a holistic program that's, that's being delivered. You know, and perhaps the, the public health department in the county is, is, you know, having that, that standpoint and wanting to provide that, but that's not what we're seeing. In a holistic program generally, do you mind if I have another moment, just like one more minute to speak, Mr. Chair?
We're pretty far, so if you can wrap it up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. In holistic system, the different parts communicate with each other and they respond to and, and listen and, and are able to, to adapt in that way. We, we need, I, I would like to see an MOU between the department of public health and this particular program provider sooner than a three-month or six-month timeline. You said you have a template ready to go. If you could perhaps put that before them and see if they'd be interested in, in agreeing to that in a faster timeline, I would greatly appreciate it, that. Thank you.
Ma'am? Yeah? Do you want to answer that now or?
I was gonna ask a question.
Yes. Ms. Grant, I think Jonathan wants to ask a question.
Okay.
No, no worries, no worries.
Did I make a comment?
Yes.
There is an agreement, but it isn't ready for discussion yet. And as soon as it is ready for discussion and brought to the board, it will be made public.
Director, do you have a basic timeline on that?
I, I don't at this time, but.
Maybe you could reach out afterwards.
Yeah, and we are being proactive in finding solutions to, Director. Well-stated comment.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Hello, my name is Elise Jones. I live in Lucerne and I work in Lucerne on 13th Avenue. I have a four-year-old, a 14-year-old and a 15-year-old. They were all born in Lake County and raised in Lucerne. I take my son to the park, both parks in Lucerne since before, you know, when he could walk. And I always look around because I am wary and I've never found a needle in any of those parks. We probably frequent them three to five times a week, depending on the heat. And neither has that issue happened with my older children. During the course of my day at work on 13th Avenue, I'll walk up and down, up to the castle and back around to Power Mart, whatever. I've never seen a needle on the street. I've also observed the exchange program on 13th Avenue and my observation has been that they're parked in, in a, in the parking space area, not in the middle of the street as has been portrayed. I've also had interactions with them and I would not describe any of those as being hostile. So I just want to share those observations and my experience as a resident of Lucerne and a person who works on 13th Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close public input and bring it back to the board. Thank you for the report. I don't know if anyone else has anything to state. Vice Chair, Piska?
I really, I appreciate this conversation today. We've gone really in-depth into the presentation and also local experience. We are committed to working through this. This is a big job. There's a lot of work involved in this. We are going to be putting together that team with our new PHO and our epidemiologists and we're going to be looking at data-informed systems. I think that's what we all are looking at needing. And I, I just want to voice my commitment to this work and this ongoing process. And it is difficult, these are hard conversations, but the reality is, is that it cannot be ignored and we need to keep moving forward.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Director Portney, and thank you for your report. We'll go ahead and close this item on the agenda and take a short break. I know it's been quite some time, so we'll go. Oh, yeah, and when we come back, well, we'll, actually, no, let's do the, let's do that first, real quick. Lake County Animal Care and Control Pet of the Week.
That dog is amazing.
Yeah, because if any longer.
He was hacking up a furball at one point, but other than that, absolutely amazing.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Gotta get it up for our dog.
Oh, man.
We can't stand, they're just mad.
Hello, my name's Mary Paschke. I work with Lake County Animal Control and we're located at 4949 Hellbush Drive. Today I have with me this handsome boy, I call him Rusty. He is a lab mix. Come here, buddy. Nope, nope. I know, you want to say hi to everyone. I'm just gonna release him. He is a sweet boy. He's about five years old, he gets along with dogs, cats, everything. He's a little shy at first, but once he, like, goes in, he just wants everyone to love him. But he's just been the greatest boy we've had at the shelter. Anybody have any questions? All right.
Just, you already did the phone number?
Oh, 707-263-0278. If you guys have any questions about adoption, he is available.
There should be enough people in this room that he doesn't have to go back to the shelter.
Yeah, we need an over-the-counter form, so if you find somebody, just sign it right here and say, hey, we'll, we'll send you the bill.
I'm looking for a, a dog that learns about skunks because mine is not learning.
Good luck with that one.
All right, thank you for that.
Thank you, guys.
And we'll go ahead and take the short break. We'll come back at 11:05. All right, so we're a little past, we're at 11:07, a little behind schedule here, so we'll move on to our 6.4, Consideration of Recommendations from the Cannabis Task Force and Planning Commission Regarding Amendments to the Zoning Code Pertaining to Early Activation of EA Permits. And with that, we will bring up Director Turner and Cannabis Program Manager Andrew Amalung.
Hello? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna start by just reviewing the memo here that was submitted. As you know, on July 19th, this board rescinded specified sections of the Lake County zoning ordinance related to the early activation of use permits for commercial cannabis cultivation. The board also adopted Resolution Number 2022-91, declaring the board's intention to initiate an amendment to the zoning ordinance relating the EA or early activation permits. Within the resolution, the board directed this department to present the board's direction to the Cannabis Task Force and the Planning Commission in order to obtain the recommendations from each body. On August 1st, 2022, the Cannabis Task, the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force met to discuss recommendations on specified sections of the Lake County zoning ordinance relating to early activation of use. There was consensus in the task force to recommend the following to the board of supervisors: Rescind the early activation of use text from the zoning ordinance as it pertains to cannabis and establish a mechanism that allows cannabis permit applicants to obtain a conditional letter of authorization or a letter of conditional authorization from the county of Lake that would enable them to pursue both county and state licenses simultaneously with no cultivation allowed until approval from both jurisdictions takes place. On August 11th, 2022, the Planning Commission agreed with the recommendations of the Cannabis Task Force with a slight change to the second recommendation, that the letter would not be a letter of authorization but rather a letter of confirmation for additional clarity regarding not authorizing cultivation until the permit is approved. The Planning Commission approved the following recommendations to the board of supervisors: Rescind the early activation of use permit text from the zoning ordinance as it pertains to cannabis and establish a mechanism that allows cannabis permit applicants to obtain a letter of confirmation from the county of Lake that would enable them to pursue both county, well, both county permits and state licenses simultaneously with no cultivation allowed until approval from both jurisdictions takes place. Our recommendation is that, well, staff recommends to the board that the board consider the recommendations from the Cannabis Task Force and the Planning Commission and direct staff to prepare a draft ordinance amending the zoning code regarding early activation of use for land use permits. And we can open it up for discussion.
If I could just add a little bit more to that.
Yeah, please.
Just as a synopsis on what Mr. Amalung has presented, the recommendation for rescission of early activation as it pertains to cannabis permits was unanimous. There wasn't really much of a discussion about it on either, at either meeting, either the Cannabis Task Force or the Planning Commission. The only point where they differed, which was more of a, a point of wordsmithing and fine-tuning, was at the Planning Commission, they just wanted to make sure it was very clear that no cultivation was authorized with the letter that we might send to the state. And so I inadvertently omitted the templates of the letters that were, that were submitted, that we talked about at the task force and the Planning Commission, but those were given to you today as well as additional copies for the public available. And this letter would probably, as, as I read it and was thinking about the good stuff that was from these three different versions, it's kind of an amalgamation. I would create an amalgamation just letting the state know that it is a letter of confirmation of permit processing. Because as Andrew has, as we've discussed before, when someone applies for a state license, the state contacts us. And what they want to know is, is this an approved permit in good standing or is it in process? And the part that, that Andrew has mentioned is very important, is they want to know if the SEQA is in process. So this would, we, we would modify this letter to be a letter of confirmation of local permit processing. We would also recognize that the SEQA was in process. We received public input of an inquiry from Holly Harris asking when in the permitting process would we be able to issue this letter? And so what we would recommend is that the letter be issued either while the initial study is in process or when the initial study has been sent for circulation to the clearinghouse, the state clearinghouse. Either one of those would satisfy the, the question that the state wants us to answer.
Supervisors, respond to?
So a couple of things. One, I just, I think there's been a lot of different conversations about this and so I wanted to make sure, because of the presentation that was given, it was said on July 19th, we approved the rescission. There was some conversation about it, but we moved on for a moratorium to be added on July 26th and then a resolution of intent to be sent to the Planning Commission. And I see on our docket here on our agenda, Ordnance 3124 was signed, but Ordnance 3124 was the one that we sent to the Planning Commission and should not have been signed. So I want to make sure that we're able to rescind that and then sign it with today's vote of approval or denial added on to there. I just wanted to make sure that we would clear that up.
If I may?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the approval of the, the draft that had been previously prepared by Community Development for the rescission of early activation permit provisions doesn't have to be rescinded because there's no evidence that your board took any action to adopt it. I've gone through the minutes for both of the dates in question and the agendas and it's not on the agenda on the 19th or the 26th. I think it was just an error because it was there as an example. So it was just a simple error and I think that your board doesn't have to take formal action other than you may want to make a motion at some point just to note that it was an error and there was no intention to, to adopt it. But that's the most you would have to do. You could probably even do it by consensus. The, what your board did approve was the interim urgency ordinance and you did approve that on July 26th. On July 29th, you approved a resolution that was just clarifying exactly what the eligibility requirements were for early activation and letting essentially Community Development know that you supported a stringent application of those requirements. And so that's what happened on the 19th. But as I said, both the agenda items and the actions of your board are entirely consistent. So I think it was just, the document was there as an example and it was just inadvertently signed at the time the other documents were signed.
And the reason I bring it up is because we have the signed document in our attachments, wanted to clarify that, as I was confused as we're considering an item that we've already signed.
I'm, I'm sorry, and the number that was designated should be eliminated because that can't exist for an unadopted ordinance.
So then the second thing is this, this letter of conditional authorization, this would be submitted by staff to the DCC upon the question of, is this in process or not?
Yes.
So this would not be handled at all by the applicant whatsoever?
No. It would be signed by me. It would be sent by our department in response to the state inquiry as to the status of the local permit.
So I know that there's a lot of projects that have been going through the process without this. So just, is this to kind of help clarify and help kind of have a paper trail behind the process more so than anything else? Because I, I've seen people come to the Planning Commission, they have their state license, didn't have an early activation before, so obviously they were able to go through the process. And I've seen others who have not yet gone through the process and were waiting to get approval from the county. So just, this, this is to help streamline the process and have a paper trail behind who said yes and who said no and what the interactions with the DCC have been?
Yes.
Okay.
When we first started the process, the state would contact county council and county council would then email me and I would check the status of the permit and I would reply back via email and we were just doing it that way. So apparently, since I've been gone, the, the process has changed. And I just wanted also clarify, although the applicant would not be handling the letter, we definitely send them a copy for the records because it's not like it's a confidential thing.
Right, right. And then my, my second question is, I know it's been the practice of the past for the DCC that if they email you with that question of what's the status of this project and you don't respond within a certain amount of time, that they automatically just keep going because they were handling way too much to be able to kind of deny somebody and then have to start over? And so that was kind of their, is that still a process that they have right now?
Not so much. And going back to a lot of applicants coming forward with their state licenses, quite often that was a provisional license, which is something that the state is phasing out. And a lot of times those provisional licenses, and I guess, you know, in this exchange of information between the state, whether it's through a letter or email confirmation, a lot of times the early activation use permit served that purpose. So the applicant could have been issued an early activation of use, they take that directly to the state and they said, the state's like, well, this looks good, here you go. So without early activation as an option, that's where we've heard feedback that they need some kind of mechanism to go to the state and let the state know that this application is in process. So I guess as, you know, Maria had brought up, the concern is where in the processing, well, process to be redundant a little bit, where in the process does this letter get issued? And that is something that both applicants and the general public are concerned about. It's something that we've discussed. From my interactions with the state, you know, as Maria had said, they seem to want to see that it had at least entered the environmental review and SEQA phase of the project. I'd be more comfortable once we are confident in declaring a mitigated negative declaration. Because these licenses at the state level can be tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars and allowing an applicant to go forward and put that kind of investment and money into a project that is not yet approved is, you know, it's a risk to the applicant. So it's something to consider.
My, my other question is, you said SEQA being in process is the current trigger potentially that it could be, but isn't that solely for provisionals that the state would agree with that? That once provisionals are gone, that for the annuals, you have to have SEQA completed? So would that be a temporary status of when this letter is submitted versus?
That could very well be correct. I, I believe that is the case. I'd have to confirm that, though.
Okay. And I, I've lost track of all the changes that have been going on at the state, but I know provisionals were supposed to be done, I think, by 2022, so now maybe it's 2023?
I think it's January 1st, 2023.
Okay.
Or December 31st, the end of this year.
Okay, okay.
Additionally, with the internal changes in the, the formation of the cannabis division, we do now regularly respond to the state within 24 hours.
Okay. And just final comment.
That could very well be correct. I believe that is the case. I'd have to confirm that, though.
Okay. And I've lost track of all the changes that have been going on at the state, but I know provisionals were supposed to be done, I think, by 2022, so now maybe it's 2023?
I think it's January 1st, 2023, or December 31st, the end of this year.
Okay, okay.
Additionally, with the internal changes in the formation of the cannabis division, we do now regularly respond to the state within 24 hours.
Okay. And just final comment.
Go ahead.
I do know that the applicants, their process of when it gets to us for local authorization is way past after they pay, after they submit, after, they have to go through at least four steps before it gets stuck on the local authorization. So I don't think that our local authorization in our letter changes the status of how much they've spent towards that. That's their choice on when to get started because the state won't move until they get paid. So at least that's been the process that I've known in the past. I don't think that's on us, but I think we do need to be cautious of when we say yes to the state rather than moving things forward and then finding out that we shouldn't have. I would be comfortable with when we send it to the clearinghouse.
Ms. Grant, did you have something to add? I seen you coming towards the microphone earlier.
Well, the only thing I was just going to clarify was, I think there was just a misspeak saying that until the mitigated negative declaration was issued, because certainly staff wouldn't presuppose a particular environmental document.
True. It's when staff would reach that conclusion and upload it to the state clearinghouse.
Reach a conclusion as to the appropriate environmental review, not as to a particular level.
No, not exactly. Here, I have a memorandum that I prepared about a year ago with a timeline of our processing and some highlights on it that can help clarify where in this.
Can I help clarify? Do you mean the difference between exempt from SEQA, negative declaration, or whatever the status of the environmental impact is? Because there's three different levels.
Exactly, exactly. Because staff can't predetermine that, obviously, until the review is done. I see Ms. Turner's nodding her head, and that's the only clarification that I was looking for.
Correct. When we do send an initial study to the state clearinghouse, it's acknowledged as a draft initial study. Staff does not approve initial studies. We leave that to the Planning Commission and the board.
Okay, all right. All right. If there's no other questions, I'll, any other questions? No?
I'd like to know, and maybe it's after public comment, as far as what the board thinks of the timeline, I think I'm very comfortable with when it's sent to the clearinghouse. That means we've done our due diligence already in what we believe needed to be completed for a good SEQA document to be submitted to the state. So that's, to me, would be a good time where I don't feel like we're wasting our time or their time in interacting with DCC in that way.
Okay.
I would agree.
All right. I'll open it up to the public. If there's anybody in the chambers that would like to speak on this item, please come up to the microphone. All right. I don't see anyone on Zoom as well, or actually, there is someone coming up, and there is someone on Zoom, so.
Hi, my name is Lynn Marks, and I live on Nancy Drive, which is located on the same road where the cannabis farm is. And I'd like to.
Is this about this item? It has to do with the Cannabis Tax Force Commission recommendations, or is this about an actual?
Is that the appeal that you're here to speak on?
I believe so.
Yeah, that's, that's a little later.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I have Jennifer Smith, if you can unmute and state your name for the record, and we'll start the timer.
Good morning, Board, Jennifer Smith. I wanted to kind of shed some light on this process and how it operates in other counties as well as advocate for the conditional use, the conditional letter of authorization. We understand that early activation is problematic and needs to go away and fully support that. We would like to see this conditional letter of authorization provided to the applicant as soon as the application is deemed complete and that they've met the zoning requirements for the project. All of this letter just allows the state to start the process, their process of approving the application and doing some of the scientific review. The application fee that the farmer pays is minimal compared to the actual license fee. So at the state, we pay an application fee and then a license fee. And so if we were able to, I think that decision should be put in the hands of the farmer if they want to pay that application fee going forward and knowing that the county may not have that negative mitigation declared, I think that should be up to the applicant. State licensing can take up to six months, and so if we have to wait until it's submitted to the clearinghouse at the local level, then that's another six months. So we're just asking for this to, so that doesn't really feel like concurrent processing. If you have any questions, I can help answer those. But the very first thing that the state even does is they check back with the county to make sure that this is in process and it is an approved application, not that it's necessarily 100% complete, so that neither the county nor the state are wasting their time. Thanks.
Thank you. Did you have anything to add to that, or anybody? Questions? No? All right. Bring it back to the close public input and bring it back to the board. Supervisor, spot you.
And I get it that it should be on the farmers, but two things. One, application deemed complete, we know it's taken two years sometimes, if not longer, to get to the final product. You paid for a whole year. We seem to get blamed quite often for being an obstacle to getting things done. I just think this would reduce the potential for being blamed, well, you approved it and you didn't finalize my project, and I spent $200,000 on licenses. I think it just helps out. I didn't think it was six months. I'm asking staff what your timeline has been, in your experience?
It can't take six months. It could take less than that. It's similar to the permitting process. It takes, I guess, as much time as it needs. You know, a well-planned project can move through this, you know, process pretty quickly, but more problematic applications take more time to clear up things. I believe it's similar at the state level. Six months might be an average. So another thing that I guess when we're looking at where should this letter fit in the process, I guess a lot of that, you know, staff had put it at a comparable place as to where early activation should have fit in the process. Given the fact that this letter doesn't authorize any cultivation or, you know, breaking of ground or any development whatsoever, there is the potential to have it a little bit earlier in the process, especially as Jennifer just noted, that, you know, they're paying the application fee, not the full license fee ahead of time. So something else to consider.
And if we do move forward, and no matter what the timeline is, make sure to, like, have indemnifications on this letter saying that this does not mean that your project is approved, because they can still go through the whole process and not get the approval from the Planning Commission, things like that, just to make sure to, so that people don't use this as a thing. But and my other issue is, and I don't know how many there are out there, but there are some who have been operating under a state license without a county license. And so if we can get people to really understand that we should be that first trigger, so if we do it earlier, I'm concerned versus when we're in a good position to say, look, we're confident that we're moving forward with this to bring it to the Planning Commission for consideration rather than still being in the process of. Because as far as the state goes, being in the process of SEQA is just hiring a consultant is good enough for the state when I had a conversation with them, and that, to me, is not good enough.
From there, do we have any action that needs to be taken, or?
And I'm ready to approve, I'm ready to approve the ordinance, but I'd like to know how the board feels about the timeline and where it is.
I'm not sure if the ordinance that was accidentally signed last time has had a notice public hearing, which is not today. So, but we could bring it back for a notice public hearing.
Today, they're looking for direction.
But I defer to county council.
She was nodding her head vigorously in agreement with Ms. Turner.
All right. And so just direct staff to prepare draft ordinance is what we're looking at then for action then. So how does everyone feel? Yes, direct staff to do so. All right. Is that enough direction?
We feel directed.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, thank you again for that information. 6.5, public hearing on account and proposed assessment for 725 Bass Lane, Clear Lake Oaks. With that, it looks like we have.
Did she have a question?
Oh.
She sat there for a minute.
Oh, sorry.
I guess she did.
Okay. And so with that, it looks like Michael Herringshaw is the code enforcement supervisor that's on this, and I see Marcus Veltramo, the code enforcement manager. So if you'd like to come up and take a seat with us.
We had to re-balance the attachments here, so there's a copy. The Richard.
Okay. And so I think first and foremost with this, I think we need to do a swear in. Yeah, Ms. Grant, we need to conduct a swear in, right? Yes, okay. And so gentlemen, when you're ready, Kim will.
With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't see any hands up in Zoom, and is anyone here for this item? I didn't think so, but I just wanted to make sure. All right. So with that, we'll go ahead and allow the director or the manager to move forward, or I don't know if you're presenting it. Okay. Michael's presenting it, so we'll go from there.
You need to write that on the microphone, Sam. Speak directly.
Good morning, Board. I'm the code enforcement supervisor, Michael Herringshaw. I'm here today to present to you 725 Bass Lane in Clear Lake Oaks. It's a summary abatement that we completed last year in October. So 725 Bass Lane was a structure that was part of a house fire. It took severe damage and was subsequently red-tagged by the building department for the damage. The entire house had been burned out, leaving mostly only the shell of the house and then some interior debris. The part that concerned code enforcement was a wall on the left side of the house here, which began leaning over the neighboring property. And as you can see on the second picture, there's no connecting supports to the wall. It was just leaning on its own. And during October, of course, we have some high winds, so we were a little concerned about that. This is a better picture showing just how much it's leaning over the neighboring house. The neighbor called multiple times. We came out the next day, took a look, and decided to move forward with a summary abatement after getting the approval of county council and Board of Supervisors member, Crandall. Code enforcement executed the summary abatement due to the immediate threat of danger that exists to the health, safety, or welfare of the occupants of the particular property, in this case, the neighbors and members of the public. This, of course, being in the Keys, it's a very dense neighborhood. We have children in the area and other folks. It's immediately adjacent to a waterway on the backside with the Keys, which leads directly into the lake. So we were also concerned about that. You know, if the wall were to come down, how much debris would get pushed into the waterway and eventually end up in the lake? So code enforcement came in and removed the wall and a small adjoining wall on the backside of the property. Later that year, the property owner came in and completely cleaned the property, but this took a couple of months. So code enforcement had to get that wall down before the property owner was able to finish with their insurance to move forward with cleaning the property. The cost of abatement was $1,530.98 for contractor services. This included removing the wall as well as putting a waddle on the backside of the property to stop debris from leaking into the Keys. And then staff time was $597.72, which a revised task sheet has been given to you. This includes a $17 recording fee that wasn't on the original task sheet, and that's where you'll see the difference in the fees between what I may have given you before and now. So the grand total was $2,128.70. Notice of assessment was posted at the property and mailed via certified mail to the property owner. With all the timelines being met, the notice of assessment does have the $17 difference that we didn't find out until yesterday needed to be added to the task sheet. Staff recommends to the Board of Supervisors confirm the assessment of $2,100 and it should be $28.70 and direct staff to record a notice to lean against the property.
Thank you for showing the invoice. That was one of my questions because I didn't see it included, but that helps to see that. And for these, is there specific dates when these are done, or did they just?
It happened over a period of time, and I went out on leave, and when I came back, I couldn't recall the exact dates, so I left them blank.
Okay, all right. This would help to have those, but I understand the specific situation. And the next of kin, because both, both people that owned have passed, right?
Next of kin was notified of the summary abatement via telephone and email. At the time, we weren't able to get a hold, well, we got ahold of him previously, let him know what our plan was. When we decided to do the summary abatement, I tried to contact him again. At that time, I wasn't able to get ahold of him to him until after the summary abatement was complete.
Thank you. That's all I had.
And he did respond to the assessment as well, contacting us, letting us know he received it.
Thank you. Supervisor, spot you.
Very sad situation, but glad that you guys were able to clean that up. I appreciated the invoice as well in the presentation. That was one of my emails that I sent yesterday, so happy to see that. I do have a question for Ms. Grant. If we posted an assessment to the property without the $17, are we able to add the $17 today? I think we are, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I think, I think you can, just simply because the notice went out that the assessment was going to be affected, and certainly changes in assessment can occur during the course of the hearing. So I think so. If it was double the amount, I'd have more of a concern, but here, I think it's well within the realm of reasonable.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll open it up to the public briefly. I know there wasn't anyone in Zoom or in the chambers that had their hand up during the swear in. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board for action, and if someone could motion it. It's in my district, but that's fine.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the assessment of $2,128.70 and direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for the.
Thank you.
All right. Next, 6.6, Presentation on Lake County Behavioral Health Services Mental Health Services Act Annual Update for Fiscal Year '22 and '23 and Approval of Modifications to the Three-Year Plan Spanning 2021 for 2020, 2021, 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023. I see, Elise?
Driving.
Okay. Well, Elise, you're here, so I, did you want, did you want to wait, or?
Um, I know he wanted, sorry.
He's, he is on his way.
Okay.
He is.
Yes, he is.
I think he would have liked to introduce the item. I'm not sure.
We could possibly cover some seven-point items while we wait, if the board's amenable to that.
How about 7.7?
All right, 7.7. So while we wait for Todd, we'll go ahead and cover.
That's highly controversial.
Yeah, 7.7 might take an hour. 7.7, Consideration of Confirmation of a Special Meeting on August 30th, 2022, CAO Parker.
This item, it comes before your board because when you set your schedule, your calendar, this was set as a special meeting, and we would like the board to consider having a special meeting next week. We have several items, and we brought this item before the board to make it publicly known that this item is being considered by the Board of Supervisors for next week's August 30th special meeting.
All right. Any other discussion? Supervisor, spot you, as you're panning up, or?
Just play.
All right, I'll open it up for the public. Is there anyone in the public who wants to comment on 7.7? Don't see any hands in either forums. Bring it back to the board for action.
I just want to make sure, since it's not in the memo or in the motion, do I need to say at 9:00 AM, or are we already set for 9:00 AM on just the regular?
Why don't you say 9:00 AM?
Okay. Then, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the addition of a special meeting in August 30th, 2022, at 9:00 AM in the board chambers.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. While we're waiting for Todd, it looks like 7.4 should be pretty, pretty decent, right? Well, we could probably cover that pretty quickly. So discussion and consideration of supervisor coverage of District 4 in the event of future emergencies, CAO Parker.
Hi, this item is coming before your board. As you may recall, we had the Hill Fire within. As you may recall, we had the Hill Fire, uh, within District 4. Unfortunately, at this time, we have a vacancy, and both, uh, board members, Jessica, and, I'm sorry, Ms. Pisca and Chair Crandall conferred together, um, for this particular event that if, uh, for, in case the sheriff needed to notify a, um, board member about the incident. And so we were bringing this back before the board for future incidents while this vacancy, uh, still exists. Stumbled over that a little bit.
Yes, and I, and I thank you for calling me Vice Chair Pisca and, and asking me. It was close to my district, really close, uh, so I figured I'd just go. And then we discussed if we should just kind of split Lakeport in half and go from there. So, um, did you have anything to add, or?
No.
Any other questions? I'll open it up for the public. Anybody in the public that has a comment, concern, question on this? I'm not seeing any on either forum, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
So there's two motions in this one, correct? It's got an A and a B, so do we make two separate motions? Uh, I'm asking county council for that, just to make sure.
I think since it's listed as an A and a B, the two separate motions is advisable, supervisor. Thank you.
If you're ready, Chair, I'll make...
All right, I'm ready.
Ms. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Supervisor Crandall to cover the northern region of District 4 in the event of an emergency until the District 4 seat is filled.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, to appoint Vice Chair Supervisor Pisca to cover the southern region of District 4 in the event of an emergency until the District 4 seat is filled.
Second.
So I have a motion.
Right on cue.
And you might just get a text right now.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and motion carries. All right, so let's see here. Maybe 7.5?
Let's do it.
All right. Consideration of Letter of Support for the Meadow Point Upper Lake, Meadow Point Upper Lake County Water District Consolidation Project, and I brought this forward. Um, it, as you know, I've been attending meetings in Upper Lake, they're monthly. Um, there is, uh, a need for a project to take place for Meadow Point and Upper Lake. It's a, it's a Water District Consolidation Project. Um, with that, there is, um, there's a group of, a family that owns property in one of the general plan descriptions for housing element, um, that would like to try and tie into this program, this, this, uh, process. Um, and so they provided a letter to ask for a letter of support, and so I just brought it here to see if that would be the case. I know Supervisor Sabatier had mentioned some comments that he may have, and, um, it's, I appreciate all of them. I just brought it forward to, to try to support the, the project as it is for the, the general plan and housing element. The concept is that they, um, the group, uh, the, the family that owns the property would like to have the access, uh, to a hookup. So if this comes forward at a later date, when it's ready, they'll have that in place, and they won't have to wait. Um, as many projects in, uh, Lake County, they'll have, they'll wait, and then they'll die out, they'll fizzle out. So with this, it's, in essence, uh, an attempt to be proactive in that realm. So, um, that is another reason why I brought it forward, but, uh, you know, just, of course, it's, I haven't really talked to anyone about it, uh, so just, uh, wanted to kind of give the layout of why I brought it to us. So go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
So I appreciate the letter, and I, I'm always looking to support, uh, development. Uh, I know that we're asking a letter from the Board of Supervisors to LAFCO, that's one of the recipients, uh, to, uh, approve of the annexation. And I think, at least from my perspective, because I'm on LAFCO, without, like, are we asking for something that fits, or are we asking for something that doesn't fit? And that's where I get concerned of a letter of support for something that may not fit. I know I reached out to John Benoit, who's the executive director of, or executive officer of, uh, LAFCO. Uh, he was definitely aware of this letter, uh, probably took part in some of the conversations. I believe, uh, Chair Crandall had some conversations with Mr. Benoit. Uh, but he's, um, he has some concerns about the, um, the potential for the annexation and some of the other municipal services required to serve that kind of development. Uh, I'm not looking to deny the letter, I'm just wondering if there's a way to, um, a way to support the project, um, and saying that, uh, we support LAFCO reviewing the application and, uh, using LAFCO guidelines to approve the, uh, project, something along those lines. Uh, it's very, um, like here, it talks about along with an adjoining two-acre parcel is site one for affordable housing with a density of 160 units, could potentially be increased to 240 units, um, and maybe adding with the expansion of services required, uh, to make these projects possible. Uh, maybe would be a simple addition, uh, rather than saying, please approve as is, uh, because there is concern about the capacity of the Water District to be able to handle that level of, uh, addition. And so maybe saying, we approve of this letter for the application of annexation with any additional, uh, increases in services required to make this project possible. Uh, I don't know what the right terminology would be. I'd go, I'd look at Ms. Grant, but that, that's my only concern with just approving as is. Just expressing that.
Ms. Grant, did you want to add to that, or? I know that Supervisor Sabatier had made a mention about some verbiage.
And if I can interrupt, I, I'd rather hear from the board, because if nobody wants to do that, then there's no need to ask Ms. Grant for any type of language.
Now, I, you know, obviously, LAFCO and sitting on the board, you know, are we supposed to look at it differently as it goes through there? I, I completely agree with your, your thoughts along of supporting the housing part of this as we move forward, but making sure that it goes through the LAFCO process, uh, that it needs to. Uh, this is just a, a general letter of support from the board that we support housing in Lake County, and if there's an opportunity, we would be willing to do that as long as it meets all the rest of the requirements. So a lot more complicated, but I thought you said it well, uh, as you move forward. So I'm in the same way. We know we need housing in the county, but there's also limitations when you talk about the other infrastructure that's needed to do that, plus the capacity of the water. We all deal with that on, uh, you know, water, uh, and what that is, and, um, it's a lot of dwelling, so I, I'm in agreement with some type of language going to that. I don't want to stop it either, but I would like to get that letter and be very clear about what we're asking for, or supporting here in this letter.
All right. I guess we're back to Ms. Grant.
Yeah, because it's two and two.
Well, I think it, you, you may very well be able to just change the, the last line and say for, for all of the foregoing reasons, the county supports, uh, a thorough consideration of this annexation, uh, through the, a thorough consideration through the LAFCO processes of this annexation.
All right.
And just keep it very simple without going into the, and the LAFCO process will take into account everything Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Simon have mentioned. So I think you can just...
All right.
...clarify what you're asking for here.
All right.
I'm good with it.
I think, uh, it looks like, uh, is there anyone from the public that has any comment on this? I'm not seeing anyone in the chambers or on Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board for, uh, action. And, uh, it's in my district, so, I mean, I, if you can make the motion with, uh, the addition, I'll, that's fine.
I would say so moved, but I'll, I'll go ahead and, I move to approve the letter of support for the Meadow Point Upper Lake County Water District Consolidation Project with the amendments as stated by Ms. Grant.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and motion carries. Thank you very much. Um, Todd, if you'd like to come up, we were on your item, um, for six point six.
Six point six.
Got it, yeah, we're there.
My apologies for, uh, being a little late. You guys went ahead of schedule. I was...
Oh, we discovered some nonsense.
That's hard to believe. Um, anyway, uh, it's morning, I believe. Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, Todd Metcalf, Behavioral Services. What we have before you today, we're going to make a, hopefully, a fairly brief presentation of our Mental Health Services Act, um, Three-Year Plan Annual Update. What this update is, it's, it's actually the final update to our three-year plan because we're gearing up to move into a new, uh, three-year plan cycle. And so I will, um, I'm actually going to turn this over to Elise Jones, our administrative deputy director, who will drive this presentation, and I will, with Elise's permission, jump in, um, if and when needed as we go through this presentation. I know you've seen these before, but we do have some minor updates we would like to share, and so, um, and appreciate and solicit any comments and questions that you have as we go through it. So, Elise, I will, uh, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, absolutely, thank you. I just want to give you all in the public heads up that the first slides are very cursory information about the Mental Health Services Act, all of the boilerplate, I'll call it, services and components of the program. And so I'd like to kind of, um, move a little bit more quickly through those slides. Of course, pause if you have any questions to get to what's really interesting, which is the data and outcomes from the programs as being implemented. So just wanted to let you know that's why I'll be moving. So on the agenda today, we're going to talk a little bit about the background of the Mental Health Services Act, um, our annual update and community planning process, PEI evaluation reporting. I'll break out all of these acronyms as we move through them. That program participation and outcomes from fiscal year 2021, our community needs assessment findings, and our proposed changes for the last year of our current three-year plan, which is 2223. And of course, we'll be presenting those updates, um, and there is also a resolution, I believe, attached to this item, which is necessary. Okay, so the first thing that we want to talk about is training and education, which is a nice component of the Mental Health Services Act. So, um, just the background on this. Proposition 63 passed in November 2nd, 2004, imposed a 1% tax on income over $1 million to expand and transform mental health services in California. And so there are these various components. Uh, one is community services and supports. It makes up the largest component of the Mental Health Services Act. Um, it includes outreach and direct services for people with serious emotional disturbances and serious mental illnesses of all ages. So next, we have prevention and early intervention, making up the second-largest, uh, funding stream within MHSA. And as you might think, this is geared towards preventing, uh, the development of mental health problems and to screen for and intervene at early, early signs. Next up, we have innovation. Um, so this is a really neat funding category, not much money, but, uh, very clearly put to innovate, uh, to try new things that we might not be able to try within a traditional mental health system. Uh, we also have our workforce, education, and training program. So we're building, retaining, and training our public mental health workforce, and we have capital facilities and technology needs.
And we like that last one because it's going to help us. We've been trying to use those funds to, uh, renovate and update our, uh, Clear Lake, City of Clear Lake building that's in dire need of certain repairs. So I'm excited about that one.
At least it's got a new roof.
Yeah.
Yes.
Among other things.
It does. Um, all right. So as I stated, we're in the last year of our current three-year plan, and we're just going to talk about the status and accomplishments from the previous fiscal year, um, well, the year before that, and then proposed program changes to address those identified needs within the MHSA program. Um, in the development of the annual update, we elicit, uh, a ton of feedback from stakeholders. Some of you in the public may have been involved in these stakeholder meetings to provide feedback, which we're really grateful for. Um, we also, of course, look at our own department and say, hey, our, some of our biggest stakeholders are actually our staff. Um, our Behavioral Health Advisory Board, um, has a lot of involvement with our Mental Health Services Act plan, um, and actually conduct the public hearing. And of course, you all, the Board of Supervisors, must review and approve our annual update. And then RDA Resource Development Associates is a consultant with whom we contract, who, uh, put together this beautiful presentation in coordination with our staff and who, um, provides that facilitation of all of these community planning processes. And so it's nice to have a consultant also to serve as a neutral party. So we're really not invested in the outcome, we're just here to listen. Okay. So for the prevention and early intervention evaluation reporting overview, um, we, uh, the MHSA, uh, program is overseen by the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission, what a mouthful. And, um, PEI is an area where they have expanded the reporting requirements, and they're looking for more outcome data. Um, and so we're going to look at demographic information, program accomplishments, and, as I said, um, additional outcome data that is being required of us to collect from the MHSOAC. And it's spanning, of course, the current plan, uh, we're in the, the last year. All right. So breaking out further, these main funding components, we have community services and supports. Um, I'm not going to list all of these programs. They are, of course, contained in our annual update, and you can access this presentation on the board agenda if you want to go back and reference it, but as you can see, we have a variety of programs associated with each of these major funding streams. Um, a lot of them have been established for quite a few years, and some of them are new, and we'll touch more on what those new and expanded, uh, programs are underneath each of these five components of the MHSA plan. Okay, this is demographic information, um, and essentially, this is covering the CSS programs, which if you recall, are direct services and supports. That's our largest, uh, funding stream. And then the PEI, the prevention and early intervention programs, our second largest. And so overall, our CSS programs serve 301 consumers. Now, if you think about it, these are direct services on the ground, boots on the ground services. That's actually quite a lot of folks receiving direct services through MHSA. PEI is a little bit more expansive. This is, um, if any of you have had the, uh, opportunity to attend a mental health first aid training, highly recommend. Um, that's encompassed in this, mental health, mental health first aid training, um, all of the community education that we do in the schools and the classroom around substance use prevention, um, and mental health awareness and things like that, and a lot of other prevention activities. Um, our peer support centers around the lake actually do a lot of prevention activities, and so many of those services are encompassed within that PEI reporting. And so you see a very robust 4,722 consumers who were touched by PEI services over the last reporting period. And again, this slide, and all of this data is contained in the annual update. I'm not going to, um, talk you through. I mean, it, it shows a pretty widespread of different ages, um, people of different ethnicities, um, and no significant issues with disparities emerged from the data, um, as we've identified them previously. We, if you all recall back to our EQRO, our External Quality Review Organization Audit Presentation, we did see some disparities, um, but not here. Okay, so for FSP, that's Full Service Partnership. This is a CSS, a Community Services and Supports Program. Um, it's the largest, uh, funding stream under CSS, and as you can see, um, we had some younger people served with FSP. Uh, we have, the bulk of people who received FSP services were between 26 and 59 years old, um, and then we also had, uh, quite a few older adults who were served by FSP. This is our, um, highest level of service that we offer on an outpatient basis. Um, the philosophy is whatever it takes. So we provide wraparound treatment and support to individuals, also addressing co-occurring issues, people who have a dual diagnosis of mental health and substance use disorders, making sure that, again, we do whatever it takes. This also does, it can include, if it's part of a person's plan, housing. We can help link them to housing. We have a housing navigator on staff who, um, works really hard and, um, ultimately, uh, supporting that person in recovery and, and partnering with them in that journey.
And I want to add to that, the Full Service Partnership, the word partnership is key to this because, um, you know, we engage with these folks if they're eligible for our programs, but, um, it is a true partnership. If they don't, you know, uh, follow along with what we're telling them to do, and not telling them, but it's, it's just part of the requirement of the program, and so sometimes folks, uh, may be ineligible for it. We, and we enroll and engage them, um, but if they don't, um, fully engage, we have to disenroll them, that's probably not the right word, from, from the program, and, um, but it is, I, I just want to emphasize the word partnership because when I... And, but it is, I just want to emphasize the word partnership because when I, when I came to this department, I didn't quite understand. It's like, well, we have to help everyone, but it's a, it's kind of a 50/50 relationship with these folks that, that they have to participate as well as, you know, we do to facilitate the services or programs that they receive. So, just kind of want to, wanted to drive that home, that it's a great program, but the folks that engage and are eligible for it need to comply in order to receive those services.
Yes, participation is voluntary.
Yes. Thank you for that, too, Elise.
Discharged.
All right. This is, to me, probably one of the most exciting slides in the presentation, and so I'd like to give it some space. So, these are some really great outcomes to report. This is talking, this is telling the story about people who received FSP services, and it's not broken out by age, it's just as a whole. And so, what you can see is changes before and after they got into the FSP program. So, a 13% increase of people living alone, really that should say, living independently. That's huge. So, I'm not quite sure where all people came from before this. You know, some may have been, even we have people on FSP who are coming off of conservatorship, and so they're stepping down into a lower level of care in the community, and here they go, living independently, which is, which is a great thing. We also have a 9% decrease in utilization of emergency shelters. We have had the Elijah House Emergency Shelter operating, and so some of our FSP referrals came from there, and we saw a 9% decrease in people utilizing those services. A 7% decrease in people being admitted to psychiatric inpatient facilities, that's a great metric. A 3% decrease in incarceration, and a 92% decrease in arrests. So, I think that's probably one of the biggest improvements. It's marked. And then we also saw, and this is kind of a, this is an interesting outcome here, we saw a 300% increase in residential treatment. And so, that's including substance use disorder treatment and other types of rehabilitative settings. And while it's looking like, wow, a lot of people are needing to go into treatment when they're getting to FSP, really, they're getting the help that they need, and they're voluntarily participating to get that level of care that's the best for them, to support them in their recovery. And so, it's, I think, a fantastic story to tell. And we also see an 83% decrease in mental health and substance use disorder emergencies, where people are calling the crisis line, or they're having other types of emergencies within the community. And I want to take pause, if there are any questions about this data.
Not at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Right. So, touching in on some of our other CSS community services and supports programs, we have the Crisis Access Continuum. And so, this program supports the funding of staff who, after people might call the crisis line and they're in crisis, and whether, however that goes, they have supports after that, right? That aftercare is critical so that we don't see them rehospitalized or going back into crisis. And so, these folks will make phone calls, they'll go out to the person's residence and check in with them, make sure that they're linked to services and supports. And if they're not already in our services, certainly people in our services can go and do go into crisis, right? They'll help make sure that they get, maybe they need a higher level of care, or they're supporting them until they get connected, you know, with a mental health professional and starting that treatment process. So, really critical. And that, there is the demographics of ages of people who were served by this program. And over the last reporting period, 128 folks who got that level of support. We also have our Trauma-Informed and Co-Occurring Disorders Program. The bulk of people were aged 26 to 59, and then we had some older adults participating in that. And this team really focuses on serving individuals who have dual diagnoses, mental health and substance use disorders, which is actually really common. And so, in rural and remote areas, we also see that this is an underserved population, and so that's also why we have a specific focus. And we do a lot of evidence-based practices around supporting this population that have been shown to be effective in supporting recovery and reducing relapse and recidivism. So, that is happening.
Can I ask a question on this one? In the previous one, I really appreciated kind of the specific outcomes of the list of criteria that you were looking at. And as I keep going down into the report, that level of detail slightly goes away. And so, like, I'm reading right here that it is recognized, no, clients are screened, evaluated in terms of severity and level of impairment, and then placed into appropriate services. To me, what I'm looking for outcomes is, are all of them placed into appropriate services? Or did some not have the appropriate services available? Did some deny it? Those are the outcomes that I would like to see, to really see how this Trauma-Informed and Co-Occurring Disorders Program is functioning. Because having the demographic of the number of people we served is one thing, but seeing if they went through the program appropriately, where that program was able to help them, is, I know that I've been talking constantly about that, and I know it's probably not an easy task to ask because it's, what I'm being told, the data is difficult to grab. But that is, the program outcomes from the previous one was awesome to show us a reduction in arrest, a reduction in use of facilities, wondering if that's something possible in the next iteration, that we can get that same level of detail for the next one. I'm guessing that the way that you get reimbursements is similar to hospital reimbursement from insurances and other things like that, where you code things, and that you might be able to say, see that a referral occurred, therefore, this many people out of the five people that we're talking about for this group were referred. So, okay, so that worked out perfectly, 100%. But without that percentage, it's hard for me to know what the outcomes were, other than you served a specific number of people. And I'm hopeful that in the future, we're able to get that level of detail a little bit more, because all I, all I'm feeling that I'm getting here, which obviously the service is being attempted, and everyone has the right intent to provide the best service and the best outcomes, but I see more of the goals of that program versus the actual program outcomes. Where in the first place, it was the goals and then a list of all the outcomes, and I really appreciated that, and love to see if we can replicate that.
So, just to clarify, you're wanting to know, once someone has availed themselves of our services, we either serve them or refer them out or discharge them from the program. You would like to see maybe a follow-up to that, as to what, how they're doing, or?
Well, not necessarily. You don't have to follow them once you leave your agency. Following up on that is like colleges trying to keep track of their alumnis and trying to figure out where everybody is. It's just an impossible task to ask you to do. But to know what was the service that was provided through your agency, through your department, what did that service outcome? I'm not seeing outcomes in this, and I just reviewed the rest. They're similar. It shows demographics, but it doesn't show outcomes, in my, in my opinion, in reading this. And to me, that would be the best, and I'm thinking of the EQRO, I have no idea what that stands for.
You don't have to.
It's the state survey or the state review that some of the negatives that we received would help us to better understand, or at least from my perspective, I don't know if the rest of the board feels the same way, or maybe the public, but would help us better understand the efficacy of the specific programs in dealing with, in providing the assistance that people are requesting from us. So, I'll just leave it at that.
No, thank you, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Yes, and our Mental Health Services Act program manager is, I'm sure, listening in and hopefully is taking, making note of that request. And just as you stated, Supervisor Sabatier, here we have more demographic information and breaking out the goals of the program. So, we have the Early Intervention Services Program. And I can speak a little bit more to this particular program, just because I have a bit more familiarity with it. But this Early Intervention Services Program is also funded through an Early Psychosis Intervention Grant, also awarded from the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission. You may be familiar with it, we have come before the board with it before. And in, we're just still getting that program up and running. There are very robust fidelity measures associated with that, that we're also obviously beholden to as part of our grant reporting. And so, we're actually working on that in partnership with UC Davis and UCSF. And so, hopefully, next time around, we're going to have some really great metrics around this particular program. And of course, it's an extremely vulnerable population, right? The Forensic Mental Health Partnership, so this is serving a variety of clients involved in the justice system in some way, shape, or form. It's funding in part our mental health diversion program, which has been quite successful. We see the bulk of them, again, these are adults between the ages of 26 and 59, and our team works very diligently alongside with the client to, to resolve their, their issues with the justice system. We also have our Older Adult Access System of Care. This program was really negatively impacted, I'm sorry to say, due to COVID. Older adults really struggled, this is not news, right, with COVID and are not as adept or willing to engage in online modalities. And there were a lot of restrictions on being able to go out, they often have medical issues where, you know, they're still, I mean, COVID is still happening, right? So, we're looking at new and different ways that we can engage this population, and hopefully we'll have some solutions and some, some great things to report next time around.
And we have, on the mental health side of, we had, we have an adult team, but it has now been split into adult and older adult, because you've heard me say, well, my background is working with older adults for many, many years, and it is a demographic that, not that we have ignored, but it's one, as Elise pointed out, especially during the pandemic, they were mostly unable to access services because of technology. And so, we are really working hard to, to facilitate better outreach to that population that are struggling with not just mental illness, but substance use disorder as well. So, it's being noted, our Mental Health Advisory Board is really on top of that. They're following the work very closely. And I appreciate the Mental Health Advisory Board in sort of pushing that. And so, we are, we are certainly focusing on that, that demographic, because they are in need of our services.
Peer support centers. If you haven't, just take a tour around the lake and visit our lovely peer support centers. There is one in each district. And 7,128 folks were served by one of our peer support centers across the lake. And there, there are no strings attached to these peer support centers. It's free to anyone in the public to come. And if you're not interested in getting connected to formal services and supports, that's fine. They offer a variety of other kinds of informal groups and different activities. And of course, we tried our best to focus, each of the peer support centers has a focus. So, the one here in Lakeport is the Circle of Native Minds. Everybody is welcome, but particularly, their focus is on the indigenous population of Lake County. We have Clear Lake, in Clear Lake Oaks, we have, I want to say the bridge, but my mind.
That's old.
That was a long time ago.
I know. Why did I think that? A big oak. And so, their focus particularly on our homeless, our unhoused population. Then we have Laveaux's, which is in Clear Lake, in a really great location, I love that spot. They're focused on our Latino population. And also, really expanding services also, we've gotten a lot of stakeholder feedback that our, in particular, our Spanish-speaking youth and our youth of Latino descent are, we need to pay a little bit more closer attention to them. So, we've tried to integrate some more peer support services also for the youth in Clear Lake, but also specifically for that demographic. We do have a peer support center in Middletown. It is more family-oriented, so we have things like a clothing closet and different family skills and things that happen at that center. And then we have the only peer support center that we operate, which is contracted out, is through Redwood Community Services. It is called The Harbor on Main. It's right on Main Street, also a great location, and they focus in particular on transitional age youth, and they do a lot of great work. And then you can read everything, you know, the book here about everything that they're doing, but very impressive, yes.
And is there one in District 5?
That was a miss, that was a misspeak. There isn't one in District 5.
You're right. Do you have any space available in Cobb?
The van's going to show up, though.
Yes.
Well, we're going to talk about the van, especially.
Yeah, we love the van.
Thank you for catching that. That was not accurate. There is one in almost every district of Lake County. I, I talked before about our Mental Health First Aid Program, and I'm going to be very presumptuous, and if you haven't before, I would urge your board and anyone here, please take the Mental Health First Aid class. It's a sensational, phenomenal curriculum. I've been an instructor myself of the adult and youth, you know, curriculums. It just offers such perspective and so many great skills that you can just take. As everybody here is keenly aware, and there's been a lot of discussion today, our community has a lot of challenges around behavioral health. And so, if you want to go out into the community and really have a skill set to be able to help at a non-professional level, this is an excellent curriculum. They've done a sensational job, and our trainers are very dedicated and passionate. We also have a few classes that we offer to our youth, and these take place in the schools. So, one is a self-awareness class, and this is just, you know, stuff that maybe you could argue, or I certainly would, that is imperative for all human beings, like, how are you aware of yourself and your feelings and some communication, and things like that, that have been proven to have positive outcomes with regard to a reduction in substance use issues and mental health issues later on. So, this targets middle schoolers, and bless the facilitators' hearts, I just, they go into those middle schools day in and day out, and they love it. Know the signs. And this is about suicide prevention. Unfortunately, as you're probably aware, county, I'm not real up to date, but the last time I looked, we were up, I'll say, in the top three, for sure, of suicide deaths per capita, which is extremely unfortunate. And we know that planting seeds of change within our youth is critical, and unfortunately, a lot of youth do complete or attempt suicide. And again, though, we're targeting middle schoolers. And then we also have a question persuade and refer. This is, again, a suicide prevention curriculum. It's aimed at ninth-grade students. And we also have, this is for anyone, it's not just for youth, the QPR. So, if you haven't taken that as well, highly recommend that course. Unfortunately, you just never know, and you might need those skills.
So, where can people find the schedule for these courses?
So, the school courses, of course, are coordinated with the schools, right? But the QPRs, we send out bulletins pretty frequently. You can always check our Lake County Behavioral Health Services webpage, and we post a training schedule. And I'm going to hold, I see my, my friend there, Mr. Abbott, our MHSA program manager, he's nodding in agreement that, yes, that's how these are advertised, so.
And the, okay. Would it be possible to share those on the county Facebook page, so there's a little bit more exposure?
I see CEO Parker's nodding your head. Good.
Yes, of course.
We'll do that.
Happy to do, that's a great suggestion. Thank you, Chair Pyska, or Vice Chair Pyska. Okay. So, how am I doing on time? Okay. So, Motherwise, I think everybody here is pretty well familiar with Motherwise, sensational program, serving mothers, and they serve 1,414 moms and their children. And so, of course, they're focusing, you know, a lot on postpartum issues, and fantastic program. We also have the NEST, which is nurturing, education, and skills training. This is a home that's located in Lake County, where women and families with children that need help and need a place to go stay and gain some healthy living skills can go. And it's, you have some really lovely quotes from consumers that have stayed there. And Supervisor Sabatier, this is in particular a program that I would love to see more outcome, I believe that we have more outcome data around, you know, how people do after they've completed the program and where they go and the successful completion rate, but it's definitely on my radar. But anecdotally and qualitatively, we just have a lot of positive support for this program. And certainly, we actually did a site review last year, where we went out to all of our sites, this one included, and I was definitely impressed with the passion and dedication, and just love that the, that staff had for the consumers there. So, it was really nice to see. We also have statewide, regional, and local projects that we do in partnership as part of grand MHSA planning. A big one is around stigma and discrimination reduction, and so, a lot of our stuff that we do is focused around addressing those things, negative attitudes, beliefs, and that what we've found, the reason why that's important, is because stigma has a huge impact on people seeking treatment. People, to this day, unfortunately, in 2022, still don't seek treatment because of the stigma associated with behavioral health needs. Suicide prevention spoke to that already. We do have our Senior Peer Counseling Program. needs. Suicide prevention spoke to that already. We do have our senior peer counseling program that's contracted out through Canuckti Senior Center. And that, we only served 11 seniors, again, dramatically impacted by COVID. We're working with that program to see what we can do. Of course, as restrictions ease and people in that age demographic feel a bit more comfortable with face-to-face contact, things will free up. But these are peer counselors who are trained, not professionally, but just to go there. And Supervisor Simon, as you said, having someone with lived experience at peer, they're also older adults who are going through things. And so they can connect with those older adults. And of course, make sure they're connected to any community resources, services, and supports that may be appropriate. And also, we have our friendly visitor program. Of course, we serve four homebound seniors, but we're really looking to improve those numbers now that we're kind of coming out of the pandemic. So that's what we have there.
I have a quick, feeling dumb question. What's, where is Canuckti Senior Center? Is that Lakeport?
No.
Oh, actually, it's Canuckti Senior Support.
Okay, so it's not a, it's not a senior center?
It's not a senior center, no.
Okay, okay. I was trying to figure out.
Unless, Elise, am I misspeaking? It's Canuckti Senior Support.
Scott's nodding his head.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that typo.
No worries. Now, now it makes sense.
Thank you for catching that. Okay. All right. So this, here, we're moving into covering the latest data and feedback from the community needs assessment that was just conducted and completed. And so we conducted several meetings, community meetings beginning in February, and a lot of participants coming in to express, you know, opinions or thoughts or feedback about MHSA programming. A variety of them, you know, coming from different backgrounds. Some, a lot of it were consumers, other community stakeholders, families or loved ones, and other mental health consumer. We had 88 people complete our survey, 24 participants in focus groups. And then we did have a public hearing, which was attended by 57 people. So really impressive and robust community involvement in these programs, which is really awesome to see. So this tells you, this is the feedback that we got about how we're doing. So generally, people felt like, yes, we're working, agencies, including us, I suppose, are working pretty well to coordinate mental health services for our clients. Mental health workforce has the necessary resources to safely provide mental health services. Yeah, we're doing okay. Clients have the necessary resources to safely access the mental health services they need. Still okay. Going down the line, it looks like the community does not feel, we have some room for improvement in the community's perception about our ability to adapt to the changing needs of the pandemic. And certainly, as evidenced by our, our numbers in the senior programs, that's, yeah, I would agree with that. Also, some room for improvement with our access to mental health services. That's always something that we're hoping to make really easy as possible. It takes a lot of courage sometimes to be able to make that first call or step in the door, whatever it is. So we don't want people to feel any barriers to accessing services. And so we're definitely going to work hard over the next year and years to address that and make services really easy access. Okay. So overall, the strengths, and these always come up, our peer support centers, people, our community just really adores our peer support centers and the staff that work at them. The staff really make the centers, right, come alive. So they're providing a sense of safety, and they do a lot of referrals. They're also part of our Lake County Continuum of Care, as, I'm probably going to mess this up, but they do connections with housing, and they have housing navigators or coordinators or whatever the word is to, because we recognize, right, like, that's a foundational element of health, obviously. So they're tied into that. They also did a lot of work to transition services to telehealth and virtual. And so they were running groups and reaching out to people. And it was really a Herculean effort. And bear in mind here, again, that our peer support centers are run by peers. And so these are also folks with lived experience, and they did a sensational job navigating these extremely challenging times.
And to add to that, since, you know, I've been in this role for a few years, but whenever we go through an audit or someone from the state is asking about what we're doing, and we share with them what we're doing at our peer support centers, I always hear, wow, for a small rural county, you have that many peer support centers, and they are being utilized and being taken advantage of. It seems to be a bit of a rarity across the state that we offer more access to services through our peer support centers than many, many other counties. So just kind of wanted to mention that.
And that was definitely, and that was definitely highlighted in the EQRO, that they were pretty impressed with that, too. So, yeah.
Yeah, apparently, we're unusual, but unusual in a good way.
Yes, thank you so much for that up. Okay, of course, there were challenges, as there always are, COVID-19, enough said. Okay, insufficient staffing and retention issues. We continually have issues with that and are always striving to figure out how we can recruit and retain qualified staff. But we are not alone in that challenge. The entire state of California and the nation also is struggling with recruit, recruitment and retention issues with berehabil health staff. Barriers to affordable housing are coming up. I mean, that's for everybody, let alone mental health consumers. The price of living has increased dramatically, and housing is included in that. Timeliness of services continues to be something that we can improve, as well as that ease of access issue. And as I spoke to before, accessing due to stigma, still seeing low awareness of what services and supports are and how you can access them. So we still have a lot of work to do in terms of educating and informing the public about how you access services, which if you didn't know, you can just walk in the door, or you can call, and you will speak to a human being who is dedicated to helping. And we also have service gaps and some lack of infrastructure. Of course, as Todd stated, unfortunately, our Clear Lake clinic, despite having a new roof and a new generator, is still in pretty dire need of repair. So that's something that we're going to definitely look at addressing. Okay, so these are some of the broad strategies that are going to be employed to meet these needs in our 2022, 23. So service awareness, just like I said, outreach and access. One thing that we're implementing, and I guess just kind of, it's silly to say here again in 2022, but a lot of clinics, like when you have a doctor's appointment, you probably get a text message reminder. We don't have that, but we are going to implement that soon. So very excited to kind of like jump into modernity here. Increasing our, our resources and materials and advertisement, for lack of a better way of putting it, about our peer support centers and all of our, all of our services. And we're also aware that, you know, the way things look matters a lot. And so even the, the face of our Clear Lake clinic, it is not the most inviting. And so we hope to improve that. Also, service coordination, even though we've come a long way as a small community, and we have some very dedicated community partners and organizations, we still have a need to increase our provider networks, our collaboration, and build partnerships so that we can make sure we reach out to and serve people in need in Lake County. We need to be innovative as well. So there was a recommendation for a mobile crisis response team without police, a student crisis team in schools, a wellness center for youth in Clear Lake, and paying stipends to agencies and persons of color with the idea that, to build equity and to have the, who's working for you match the community. Ideally, your staff should look like your community. So we have some room to go on there. Paying a closer attention to our services for specific populations, focusing on affordable housing, in-home assistance for older adults, and family and parent training and education. We also have, we just launched, this is super exciting and is a huge effort towards our workforce retention activities, but we just launched our stipend and scholarship program. So for staff who are here, if they commit to a period of service, which is actually only one year, you only have to commit to one year, and you're eligible for, you know, thousands, potentially thousands of dollars off of your student loan debt, or to help pay for college tuition. And so we're also, what we've seen is we have a lot of success building our own workforce and growing our own. And actually, a lot of our leadership team is comprised of people who have lived their entire life in Lake County and are dedicated to it. And so that's what we're really focused on doing, is growing our own. And hopefully, it's going to make more licensed supervisors. Simon, you talked about, you know, those professionals that can do those types of services, that's our goal. And so this is one effort to reduce that disparity.
Quick question on that. That's something you are working on and to implement, not something that is implemented?
It is. The stipend program has launched. The first round of applications for stipends and scholarships has just closed. People are signing contracts for their awards, and they should have their loans paid off, like, I don't know, soon, a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Not the whole loan, but you know, a portion, right?
Yeah, it was a state initiative, and it's, it has gone into effect, specific to MHSA. But it's a great thing.
Does any of that funding, it has nothing to do with this, right? It just has something?
It does.
It does?
It does.
Okay.
That's how it's, that's how it's being utilized, but it's in partnership. This is where, we have leveraged.
The 235,000?
Uh huh. Yeah.
Well, you're good.
Yeah, exactly. That's kind of like tricky to follow, but you're all over it. So yes, that's how it happened.
Just to express my, my thought in my head, the reason I asked the question is, I have not heard of it, and it would almost seem like it would be something that the board of supervisors would need to approve to do such a program, but.
I did.
Yeah, we, it's been, you've heard.
It was in agreement with the mental, with the California Mental Health.
Services Authority.
Gotcha. I didn't realize there was a stipend involved.
Yes.
It's part of that. Well, our apologies if we didn't articulate that. But yes, the California Mental Health Services Authority helped facilitate this for all California counties. And it was brought before your board. But I know we bring a lot of stuff here, so it's, it's difficult to keep track of. Even I can't keep track of all of it. So I appreciate that.
So basically, the blue, like, I think it's the past page where it says capital facilities and technology needs, and then workforce education and training, that, that is comprised in-house for.
Yeah, that's, that's where it's.
And then the orange, I'm looking at this one.
Yes.
Yeah. Those are the ones that are served to the people that need it. Like, community services and supports, prevention and early intervention, and innovation.
Correct. Yeah, the workforce, that, the workforce education and training, that's, that's where that is.
So it's not for the people that we serve, it's for our.
It's to support our.
Correct. Yes, 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 yes. It's for our staff, yes. Sorry about that.
That's all right. I didn't.
Because they're the ones that are serving the people that we serve.
All right, thanks.
No, thanks for the question.
Okay. All right. So here's what we're proposing in terms of our modifications and budget requests for this last year. The bolded italicized items indicate a change or an addition. So a change in addition to our community services and supports program is, we've modified our outreach and engagement program, and I'll talk more about that, as well as modify, modified our peer support centers. And then for prevention and early intervention, peer support recovery centers is duly funded by CSS and PEI. I guess within MHSA, we have braided funding, if you want to call it that, to support those peer support centers. And so we've modified those, too. For the peer support centers, and we'll get to that, but that modification is just, we had to increase, we increased their budgets. Everything got way more expensive. And so they, you know, there you have it. Our, we have also launched, as Vice Chair Pyska is aware, of our street outreach, which is our van. It's beautiful, and it, man, it is popular. But we'll talk more about that in a minute. It's people are, the word is really getting out, which is exciting. No other changes, though. Everything else, status quo. Of course, when we get into here now, right after this, we're going to start planning for our next three-year plan. And then who knows what's going to happen. But, you know, definitely have input. And this is our van, I couldn't help it. But if you haven't seen it, this is our sensational street outreach van. And Scott, I was actually hoping that you could just speak briefly about where it's going and how people can find the outreach schedule.
Yes, the van goes around the lake. It has a, you know, kind of a normal schedule. It's, it's, we partner with other agencies, such as Catholic Charities and, you know, some others to go around the lake, to find, finding different encampments. So we go to different parks, even the Walmart parking lot in Clear Lake. And this is where people are. And our van is becoming more and more recognized. As we, as we pull up someplace, more and more people are coming to it, which is nice.
Thank you so much. And the schedule is posted on our website.
Yes, it is.
And I just want to give a shout out to David Abels. Davy, there is our lead staff at the Big Oak Peer Support Center. And he's often involved because he really has a passion for especially the unhoused population and has just a way with people. So he's there promoting it and connecting people to services. We also have within the van and within the peer support services, not quite the van yet, we're working out logistics, but certainly within the peer support centers, we have a connection to Bright Heart Health, which is a virtual platform. It's no cost to us. They bill insurance. But what they've done is they've, we signed an MOU with them, and they provided us with a tablet. And it's instantaneous, instantaneous access to a clinic. And they specialize in substance use disorders. And it's more for intensive treatment. And you could even go on your phone, you don't have to go there. But if somebody came into the peer support center, and, you know, the thing with substance use, especially treatment, is you kind of want to strike while the iron's hot. When people are really ready and in that place of wanting to change, you can connect them with that service right there. And then it's just, it's really better to do. And so I'm hoping soon to have some utilization data as well on that program, because it's a way to expand the services that we offer. And that's, that's what we have. So again, summarizing the modifications that we're doing.
Can I just say one more thing about the van? I just want to remind the board that that van, as a result, it's a benefit of the cannabis funding we took advantage of a year or two ago, and hoping that that might come available again, because we want another van, because it's, it's working. It is truly working. And so just wanted to remind the board of what those funds helped pay for.
Are, are there van stops in District 5?
Of course.
Yes, there are.
Oh, where, what are the regular stops, if you don't mind me?
I don't have it offhand.
Okay.
But you do have a listed bill.
It's just on the schedule that's posted on the website.
Okay.
And we can, we'll make an effort. In fact, Scott, if you want to send that over to me, I'll make sure that you get that information.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We also, we also do requests.
Yes.
Sort of week, you know, if, if, if there's a need, we can, we can, you know, we can, we can go to a particular spot. You know, one of our, one of the things was having a crisis outreach type services. And so what we're gearing up for is to be able to do that. There wouldn't be, they'd be still, you know, peer workers and outreach workers. But if there's, you know, someone that's, that's in need, that's identified, the van, van can go, go over there and, and help the person. If the person is in crisis, then we can, we can refer them to our crisis team.
Yes, we do take requests. Recently, I've been working with Director Ewing at Public Services. He had expressed concern about folks in some of the parks. And so I said, hey, we're driving right by there, so we can stop by and check it out. So just let us know. As, as Elise mentioned, the schedule is posted on our webpage. But if there's something, some need or somewhere that you think we need to go, we'll do our best to incorporate it in the, in the trips around the lake, so.
So if we're aware of new encampments, that would be a good place to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. So again, summarizing these modifications, as I had previously stated, our peer support center, Laveaux's in Clear Lake, we're having a new focus on youth, particularly Spanish-speaking or Latino youth. Additional funds, as I said, to all peer support centers to strengthen existing programming and really just keep up with rising costs, to be blatantly clear. Outreach and engagement, this is the street outreach. And then we do have plans to renovate and remodel the Clear Lake Clinic, working hopefully on some other grant opportunities within the state to, to use MHSA funding to leverage those grant funds. So hopefully, you will be hearing updates about that soon. We are hiring more prevention specialists and outreach staff to do this work that we've been talking about. We did hire a workforce education and training coordinator, a WET coordinator to oversee and support all those stipend and scholarship programs, as well as all of the training opportunities that come through, and there are a lot. And so we can really put forth a concerted effort to strengthening our workforce. Also, we're working very diligently to, with, with state partnership, to create the guidelines for peer support specialist certification. And so peer support services are now able to be Medi-Cal reimbursable. There's some, of course, as there always are strings attached. There's some, of course, as there always are strings attached. One of the strings is that you have to be certified to do that. And so our team has been working on that certification process and so that's exciting.
Yeah, you hear me say that all the time, yeah, we need to be able to bill for services. So this peer support certification thing is, is really a big deal because it will help us draw down additional revenue.
Yes, and so this is just the high, you know, 30,000-foot view of the budget. And we have a total budget of, you know, about 6.4 million for everything all told.
What's the estimated local prudent reserve? What is that?
That's our rainy day fund. By statute, we're required, required to have. It equals the average amount of, oh, I forgot, there's, there's a formula for it of how it exists. And, and we are right at the maximum amount that we can have in our, in our prudent reserve.
Tapped out, tapped off, tapped off, that's what I meant to say. Which is great. Questions or comments?
Just one, is the senior peer counseling, are they, are they tying in with like the senior centers or triple?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. And then is there a requirement with WET? Is there a commitment, a time commitment, so often employees receiving those benefits? Are they, are they making an agreement to stay like a couple of years or?
No, it's a one-year service agreement and that was hotly debated.
Yeah, it has been, but you know, you can't make anybody stay, but there is a 12-month commitment.
All right, thanks, that's all my question.
And, and further to your question or comment about, as I mentioned earlier about our adult team and now there's an older adult team, we are, we, we send folks to the Air Agency on Aging Board meetings and, and other types of meetings that are involving older adults. And so we're, we're really making a concerted effort to, to serve that population.
One of our, our new outreach workers specializes in working with older adults and will often accompany Davey. As Elise mentioned, they're, they're going, going out into the community. And his name is Tom and Tom is making those connections with the senior centers and with the Conacti Senior Support, trying to, you know, kind of be that, that, that whole yam altogether, including our, our older adult team as well. So he's really trying to coordinate that effort, which, which is something I'm really excited about.
So in the past, I think you were looking for more volunteers for Conacti Senior Support. Is that still, you still?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And what type of volunteers spots are available or what, what type of places, what are you looking to fill?
I believe it's the senior peer counselors, so people who are willing to take the training. You don't have to be any type of professional, you just have to be a peer. And then you take a, a training and then you're able to, probably a background check, I want to say. And then you're able to do that peer counseling.
Great, thanks.
I think my last question, and I think I can check this out during budget timeframes, but is there, is there a possible way to, in the budget description, maybe expand out like services, support and outcomes, like, like the budget amount, explaining that, if that makes any sense?
The, the budget is in, in the plan and it, it's broken down. Much, much more about what in the outreach program.
No, I'm just looking at this.
Okay, it's, it, as Scott stated, we have detailed, that, that's just.
Oh, it's in the, okay.
It's in the plan, yeah, which also, it's a gigantic file.
It's the one at the end.
Yeah.
Huge file, okay, got it.
Huge, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I appreciate that comment because that comment helps us understand on an individual basis what is that costing us for the services? And I think mixed with the outcomes, that that gives us a better understanding of. It sounds rude because we're talking about people, but the biggest bank for our buck to make sure that we're providing a service that helps people.
I just want to mention just real quick about the, the outcomes, kind of answering your, your question previously. With our full-service partnership program, we actually do have a very sophisticated outcome data gathering system that the state has provided, recognizing that FSPs, the Full Service Partnership Program, is such a large and important program. So that's, that's how we're able to, you know, give, provide that particular data. It is really a big effort that we're trying to, to gather more outcome data. As Elise mentioned earlier, we have our, our PEI report that we have to do with, with outcome data. So we have a big push for doing that this year, working with RDA to, to, to be able to gather more outcome data for, for PEI. We're really hoping, you know, we'll, we'll be getting a new electronic health record in February and we're hoping that, you know, some of the capacities and capabilities of that particular piece of software will also aid us in, in gathering outcome data. So we're really, we really are, we really do recognize the importance of outcome data. We want our programs tied to it and, and we hope to present it more as, as we, as we get better at it.
And what I would say is come to us and, and let us know what you need to be able to gather that data. Is it software? Is it what exactly needs to happen? Because I don't want to wait for the state. The state wants to, in my opinion, look for very vague numbers. How many people are you serving? I know I've had the same conversation with social services. Do we keep track of who actually utilizes our food stamps program and becomes independent? So they don't have to depend on the state to provide them with food stamps. The state doesn't really care about that, they just care, how many people are you providing this to? I don't want to know how many people we're providing it to, it's important data, but I want to know, is it actually useful? And so I would say come to us, ask us for support to make that happen. Because if we're waiting for the state, we're going to be spending money and spending more money and maybe not seeing the actual outcomes that we anticipate we should be seeing. And I think we have to make it happen locally. And I think that, that it's all about coming to us and asking for that support.
Outcome data is very challenging to gather, but we, we're definitely making a concentrated effort in, in improving that area. We're not waiting for the state, recognizing, you know, the, the community board, even our own, you know, clinical staff. They want, they want more data that they can use that will be helpful.
So the biggest.
We are definitely making a concentrated effort in this area.
And even your boss has been asking for it long before the board was.
Right, right, sorry, yeah, I forget Todd, he's always asking for it.
We are one of a, a handful of pilot counties that are entering into this new electronic health record system, as I've explained before, that will go live now February 1. The California Mental Health Services Authority has facilitated these conversations. We were very vocal in, in our wish list and what we wanted and, and Elise, you're nodding. I, I was pretty vocal in, all right, what, what kind of data, the data is being tracked? What will we get out of this? Yes, we need a new electronic health record system. The one we have now is, is very antiquated and clunky, but I was very interested in what are we going to get out of it? You know, we're putting data in, what are we going to get out? And I, I'm, I'm very hopeful, they did select an organization called Streamline that will build this for these pilot counties, which I don't know if all counties in the state of California are going to opt into this, it's, it's, it's an optional thing. But we, Elise also has been very vocal in these meetings about this is what we want and it's going to be better than what we have now. But as Scott mentioned and as I've learned in this line of work, the outcome piece is, it's, it's hard to get a hold of. It's really hard to get a hold of.
I would just like to add in response to your offer of support, Supervisor Sabatier, your board, and I want to thank your board for approving the contract that we did establish with Cali MHSA to join that pilot program, so.
And don't worry, I have your number, so.
Yes, you do.
I know if I need your help, I know where, who to call.
And, and I, I'm not going to offer a solution because I don't know what the solution is, but I think it's a good conversation during budget time. Here's what we think could be a solution to get the information that we need. I'm just always looking forward to, to pushing us in order to get that better information so we can better understand what is working and what is working absolutely great. They're not all the same. And so to recognize that and to see that would be really eye-opening, I think.
I think, and I appreciate pointing me to the, to the annual update. In the, it says proposed budget 200,000, number served, cost per person. The remaining amount, like for example, early intervention services says proposed budget 200,000, total cost 107, 896. So is it safe to say that the remaining 90,000 is for support?
Well, we overestimate our budget in a hopeful way. Maybe we'll be able to hire more staff and things of that nature. And so we, I don't want to, we put a little bit of padding around things in the event that we get lucky.
So that's the part of that one designation that he mentioned earlier, the 800,000 or something like that.
I'm not sure, I don't believe that that's actually calculated.
Yeah, the 800,000 is prudent reserve, which is by, by regulation, all counties are supposed to have, you know, for in case there's an economic downturn and you need to have money to be able to support it, support the programs.
All right, thank you. All right, I don't have any questions. Anyone from the public? Joan, if you'd like to come up?
Joan Moss, did I hear you say that there is a 90% decrease in arrests?
I believe it was higher, but yes, I'm in the 90s.
Did you get that from the Sheriff's Department?
No, that would have been tracked internally from us.
A what?
We would have tracked that data internally, we would have tracked who's been arrested, that's our clients, and we would have had to report that, that data would not have come from an external source.
Okay, I was just curious about where you got that statistic. It sounded kind of radical. A 90% decrease, decrease in arrests, you got it from tracking your clients?
Yes, that's just speaking to the people in our program that are receiving those services, those people. We saw that there was a 90% decrease in the arrest rate from before and then after they were in the program.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Joan. With that, I'm not seeing anybody on Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board and move forward from that.
May I just say one last thing about this? I know we've made these presentations, you know, on a very regular basis, but what, what I've, what I've learned about this process is that the result of these plans and the updates are truly stakeholder-driven and as Elise mentioned, it looks like we, and maybe thanks to the pandemic, because of Zoom, we, we're getting more participation in these meetings. But it's, 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 it's the stakeholders that drive where this thing is going. And I'm always encouraging people to come to these meetings or participate in these meetings, to be heard because they're the ones that are driving where this is all going and where the monies should be spent. And so I, I can't say that enough, that I'm grateful to the public and the community at large that participates in these meetings, but if people want us to make a difference, they need to be heard. So just wanted to add that, I'm sorry you're trying to make a motion and go to lunch, so I'll stop.
Before anyone else speaks up, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a resolution for the MSHA Annual Update Fiscal Year 2223.
Second.
All right, offer the resolution.
Offer it, yeah.
With that, Kimberly, can you conduct the roll call?
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, all right, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for answering the questions and Scott, thank you as well.
Thank you.
So we are at 12:54, of course, we're way behind schedule. And would like to see where we'd like to go from here, because I think we need to take a lunch break.
Yes.
I know the next item will be the six points.
Seven.
Seven, yes. And so we'll come back straight into that when we get back from lunch or?
Two o'clock or?
Um, let's see, we got, yeah, it would have to be two o'clock.
I, I have a question.
Before I say the wrong one again, like last time.
What is our schedule for our closed session? When does that begin?
We don't have a set time because of just the length of this meeting, but hopefully we can start at three because the last item can't begin until five. We had a withdrawal.
Okay. Just because I'm looking at some of the others and, and kind of, I'm trying to figure out what the timeline is. I know Director Ewing just walked in for his one o'clock with high hopes that we were on time. And I also had mentioned to the folks who are coming in for item 7.3 to be here at 1:15. Should I tell them to be here at 2:30, at 2:15?
Just 2:30.
2:30? All right.
If not even later, right? Because we still have.
Many things.
6.7 and then 6.8, we'll see how that goes.
And 7.2.
Right.
We'll keep that one brief.
Okay.
No, I'm just kidding.
All right, so with that, at least we can go into lunch for two o'clock. And we'll be coming right back to 6.7, right? Right? All right.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll see you at two, thank you. PM, thank you for coming back and joining us. We are at item 6.7, public hearing considering of appeal AB 22-05, a planning commission's approval of major use permit UP 19-42 and initial study IS 19-61 for cannabis cultivation applicant Bottle Rock Farms FJA Trust located at 9900 and 10300 Bottle Rock Road, Kelseyville, APN 011-057-22 and 23. And with that, give the floor to Director Turner.
Thank you, I'd like to introduce our contractor from.
Oh, sorry.
It's been a little bit, you might want to swear in all the witnesses against her.
Sorry. Kimberly, if you can swear in the witnesses and if you're here on this item, please stand and raise your hand. If you're in on the Zoom mechanism here, please take your camera off and unmute, raise your right hand and swear in with Kimberly.
With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
We have a hand up, I think that they wanted to swear in. Do we need to at least unmute them and hear the I do or is the hand up good enough? I just know that they.
If I were you, I'd unmute them long enough just to confirm that they've taken the oath.
Amy, I see your hand raised, did you, if you can unmute, did you, do you concur? Did you swear in?
I concur, can you hear me?
Yes, we do, thank you. All right, with that.
Thank you, Maria Turner with Community Development, handing over the update to the Board of Supervisors from activity that has taken place since the last hearing of the appeal or since the board approved the appeal to our Lake Hope Planner Byron Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Planning Commission Byron Turner. I'm going to give a brief staff report. On July 28th, the Planning Commission approved major use permit 19-42 for Bottle Rock Farms FJA. This decision was appealed by the board, to the board per the procedure, and procedures in the Lake County ordinance. This project has been around for some time. The EA, early activation was first granted in 2020. There was a second early activation granted in 2021, prior to the board enacting a moratorium on early activations. The project was originally heard by the Planning Commission in April 28th of 2022, where it was continued to June and subsequently continued to July 28th. Leading up to the meeting of July 28th, staff had recommended approval of this project. However, a site inspection on the 27th revealed that cannabis was being cultivated on the site at that time. Staff was therefore unable to recommend approval to the Planning Commission due to the, due to the visual observation of a violation on the site. Since this time, all violations have been remedied and therefore staff is able to again support the project that we weren't able, that staff was not able to at the time. This concludes a very brief staff report. The applicant and members of the public are here to provide further information. The board options are found in your board memo and I'm available for any questions.
If I could just add to that a little bit, the two violations that were noted by staff at the Planning Commission hearing, one was plants in the ground or active cultivation of cannabis. And then the second one was grading violations that were not covered. And both of those have been cleared. The plants have been removed, this has been verified by staff and Ms. Berg did pay the $500. This has been verified by staff, and Ms. Berg did pay the five hundred dollar grading violation fee, so they're both cleared.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Pesca.
Was there a trenching violation, or was that included with the grading violation?
That was included in the grading.
Okay, great.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier.
I believe the buildings are gone too, because that was part of the Planning Commission's conversation, that there were some illegal structures, but I believe that they're gone too. Is that correct? At least that's what I've been told.
Yes.
Okay. I, I do have some questions, that there, there was some confusion, and I don't understand it enough, and I'd like to better understand it, is the three-acre conversion. I know that was part of the original postponement, I think, back in April, where there was a review for that, and it says less than three acres is typically what that is. In reviewing the project, before 2019, nothing was graded other than where the home is, which is kind of in the middle of the two agricultural sites. Where does the three-acre conversion fit, and what grading permits, were the grading permits obtained in order to clear the areas for the two agricultural sites?
Start off, start with that. The three-acre conversion is a, I'm sorry, a CAL FIRE permit that's not issued by the county, it's issued by CAL FIRE. In addition to that, though, Lake County does have its own rules requiring a grading permit in addition to that three-acre conversion permit when there is tree clearing. It's independent, but it's the, it's a separate process. And in this case, the three, the less three-acre conversion was granted by the state, but the grading permit was never followed up on. Since that time, the grading permit has been issued by the county.
Okay. And again, I see two sites, so did they get two conversions, or, because where's, what, what I haven't understood yet is, if they're on early activation, and early activation prohibits grading, prohibits building of structures, at what point did they get their grading permit for the other site that they have for their, their cultivation sites?
I think so. I think it was both sites at the same time, and the grading permits have been issued since, in the last, in the last few months.
Okay, so it covers the entirety of what was cleared?
That's what he said.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm glad that the violations are cleared. I, I know that this seems, it is a formality, and it does seem like one, but to make sure that if we approve a project, it's to ensure that things meet the guidelines of what projects should meet in order to get the approval. I know that I brought this to the board for review, and at that point in time, there were some violations. Obviously, they've taken the time to deal with that. I, I wish that there had been a continuance at the time, but I wanted to make sure that we held the integrity of the Planning Commission's process together so that other projects would not follow the same suit and be able to get approvals when there's obvious violations. And so I think those were very obvious to me in reviewing the Planning Commission discussion, and so that is why I brought it to the board for discussion.
Vice Chair Pesca.
Yep. So I went out to visit the site last week, and they had just mowed down all the cannabis plants. That was the first and biggest violation that was outstanding, and I know that was a difficult decision for them to make, but it was the right move. And I think this is a great project. It's in a great location, and I'm, I'm really happy that we're in a place right now where all the violations have been cleared and we can move forward.
I see Andrew's hand up. Should I call on him, or? Andrew? Yes, Andrew, if you have something to add, we appreciate it.
Yes, I would like to add that the three, less than three-acre conversion exemption was issued and completed prior to submitting the application for the use permit itself. So all of the grading, all of the requirements had happened before the submission of the application, which establishes the baseline conditions that we do our environmental analysis on, including subsequent grading that we look at with our use permit, our use projects, so.
Ms. Grant?
Was the last speaker sworn in, just to make sure?
Oh, that's right.
This is an appeal.
Did you swear in, Andrew?
I did say the "I do." I, I believe I was unmuted at that time.
Okay, thank you. All right. And so is there any comments from the board? Not seeing any, I'll go ahead and open it to the public. I see a hand up in Zoom from Amy, and then if there's anyone in the chambers, please come up to the microphone when you're ready. Okay, she put her hand down, and I see Jennifer's hand up now. So Jennifer, I, I don't know, did you swear in, Jennifer?
I did.
Okay. All right. State your name for the record, and we'll time you from there.
Jennifer Smith. Good afternoon. It's no secret that I, I support this project. It was zoned right. It's been operating with no issues in the first two years of its early activation, and unfortunately, we, they found themselves up against the deadline and made a mistake. The project has cleared any violations. They've atoned for that mistake. They're a great addition to the cannabis industry in Lake County, and they're a great addition to Lake County as a whole. And I hope that the board will see fit to approve this use permit one last final time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think the other person put their hand down. So if there's anyone in the chambers that would like to speak on this, please come up, state your name for the record, and we'll go from there.
How's it going? Skylar Healy. I've lived in Lake County, well, Kelseyville, for three years, and I've worked for Jen, Fred, and Omeel for three years now. Man, I had a whole speech, and it's kind of hard now. But, yeah, I, I definitely agree that we're, we employ, I think, forty to fifty local workers in the harvest season, right? And, and we have a big impact on the community directly. I see it. I live there. I talk to a lot of locals, a lot of businesses. We spend a lot of our money here. And, yeah, I just, I really think that everything that they're doing, they, my experience with them, working for them is great. Anybody who will tell you that they've been, have worked with us is great. Yeah, we, they do a lot for this community that is not really seen, maybe, you know, but I do see it directly. We employ a lot of people, spend a lot of our money here locally, and I think approving this project would be great for the community, personally. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I did not get sworn in.
You did not get sworn in?
No.
All right, thank you, Kimberly.
With your right, right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Joan Moss, I have a few questions. I want to know if the people that got to the site and saw the violations got a permit from a judge, and if they had a warrant for a search.
They were invited on the property, is what I was.
You were invited?
That's what one of the gentlemen behind you said.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I don't understand the appeal process, and I don't understand, and I haven't read the law, that allows the supervisors to file an appeal, and a citizen that doesn't have the money cannot file an appeal. I just want to say that. Maybe I'll read, and maybe I'll find out. Do you have any answer?
It's within the code of eligible, and yes, there is a cost, and we paid that in the time that staff has spent to prepare for the appeal. By the budgets that are already created, we didn't give a specific check, like it would be if it was a private person that was appealing, but every appeal process and every, every process that we follow costs money, and so therefore, that's how it worked.
I heard you say that supervisors don't need to, need to pay when you decided to appeal.
I don't know if that was said, but, but is that, does that answer your question?
Okay, well, I just still have questions I don't, I don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grant, did you want to add anything?
I was just going to say the question and answers aren't actually testimonial in nature, so.
All right. All right. If there's anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
Hi, my name is Fred Friedland. I am one of the owners of Bottle Rock Farms. Over the past two years, I've helped prepare the property for nearly a dozen site inspections from various government agencies, state licensing, and Lake County Planning Department. As a team, we've always strived to maintain a compliant project, and just passed another state inspection on August fifth of this year. Omeel and I have gone above and beyond to clean up Nancy Drive. We've gone down in the ravines. We pulled five dump trailers of washing machines, mattresses, done way more than we needed to to make this a good project. All of our neighbors like and respect us. There was a nice couple here who helped us do the bees on our property, and they were here for support, but I think she had a doctor's appointment. There was a problem house on the road who was like basically selling meth. We stopped pretty much ninety-five percent of the traffic. All the other neighbors came over, said they're appreciative of us, and I think everybody really likes us on the road. Our project is in the perfect area for a cannabis farm. It is completely out of the sight from Bottle Rock Road. None of the traffic heading to our farm has to pass by another residence, so there is no excess dust or traffic for any of our neighbors to deal with. We keep the road in great condition even during the winter. We are the type of farmers you want here in Lake County for the long haul. Thank you, and it would be an honor if you gave us this permit today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. I see another gentleman coming up.
My name's Omeel Nidam. I'm another owner of Bottle Rock Cannabis. I'm just going to go over a few things of why our project would be a good one to, for you guys to approve. We've been working three years to, on our process to produce high-quality, low-cost cannabis. We've invested heavily in our infrastructure in the county. Also, the cannabis market is down, and we have managed to stay in busy and to continue to pay our taxes and to support the local economy through all of this. So I just think this is a good business for you guys to stand behind, and I'm sorry that this, this last incident, it was a unfortunate, unfortunate incident. We kind of got painted in a corner. And just to, so you guys know, the, the decisions that you make, so we laid off everybody, and we're selling our farm equipment, and we hope we can come back next year. So just, we tried really hard, and, yeah, that's it, man. So it's over for this year, and our labor manager, you know, that's a hundred people for harvest, he's not going to be able, we're not going to be able to pay him for. So hopefully, with this permit we get from you guys, we can come back strong next year and give it a shot. But, yeah, that's it for us for this year, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing anyone else get up. Yes, there is, okay.
Hi there, I'm Jennifer Berg, and I'm the applicant. I know that we made a mistake with having the plants in the ground because we had a delivery early, and our timing didn't coordinate with our hearing dates, and it was a struggle to get that figured out, but I hope that you guys see that we are making an effort to follow the rules and regulations and clear up the violations. I do agree with my colleagues that our project is in a really good location as far as not creating a nuisance or bothering other neighbors with noise, dust, odor, which can be, you know, a big complaint in the industry. I feel like our, our other operators in the surrounding community do support us, too. We do have a nice project which should serve as a nice example for other cultivators coming into the industry, just how we keep our project and best practices. We have passed all of our state inspections, and we are in good standing with the state, and I hope that you guys can look past our mistake and improve our project today so that we have a shot at next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? With that, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board, and we'll go from there. Supervisor Sabatier.
I feel there's a need for at least a few more comments, since we are kind of starting this all over from scratch, as Ms. Grant keeps reminding us as de nouveau. I see nothing wrong with the environmental CQ report that was provided, the hydrology report. The project is in the right location, in my opinion. All of those things that go along with approving the initial study, in my opinion, there's no issues there. Wanted to make sure that we have standards of what we're following. I know that things are not, are very uncomfortable and difficult for the group that's in front of us, but I think that if we deviate from that standard, that we're hurting ourselves as a county also. And so we all make decisions, and we all have to deal with the consequences of decisions, and I hope that you guys can come back next year. So I'm ready to move forward.
You know, the same here, and like Supervisor Sabatier just said, you know, my decision last time was just to make sure that, you know, we put those rules in place when it first came on the board to make sure that they were followed. We're trying to establish this industry, and it was really concerning to have someone stand up and say, well, we had to make a decision, and we just, we're going to go forward. Understand it was a mistake. My concern, though, I'll be honest, what about the next time? Got to make a decision. You know, what's going to happen there? We're trying to set a precedent for this industry. We want to bring it into Lake County and make sure we follow those things. I know it's hard to do that sometimes, you know, and, but we're, we're here for decisions that were made. Yes, our process may have been a little long, timing didn't work out, but sometimes you just, you got to figure that out moving forward. I think that was where I was really stuck at last time, as we move forward. We're really trying to set the tone here. We want as many proper operators of this industry in Lake County as possible. Not everybody's going to get that chance. And so holding that line, I think, is really important for this board to do, not only for ourselves, for the, for the business that we're trying to establish in the cannabis industry, but also for our constituents that are on the other side of this, that are being affected by it. And we all know that there's many different factors that come into that, but we need to take everybody's, you know, livelihood and effect of their communities into place, and holding the line and strengthening our ordinances and everything we're trying to do, that's what we need to do. So these aren't easy decisions. I voted to bring in the cannabis ordinance as one of the members, the new members of the board, with Supervisor, our previous Supervisor Scott, to get something established. I know we've got work to do, but I would just, you know, for me, it was the decision where, you know, someone stood in front and said, well, I just had to make that decision, and that's what I did. So let's, let's, let's try and just get that better as we move forward with this industry. That's where we need to be, because I hate for us to be back at this table with another group, or even the same group of, oh, well, we just had to make that decision, because it does affect everybody. I know our decisions affect everybody, but also the business owners trying to establish here in Lake County, you know, those decisions affect people, too. So, anyway, I'm ready to move forward, though.
I do want to, I do want to say something, and this is something that I know I've learned from code enforcement, and if we end up in a situation that we were unaware of, and we recognize that, wait, I might be passing that line where I'm doing something wrong, I think the first thing to do is call up your planner and say, I have a situation here. What should I do? And I think that, I, I'm saying this for everyone else, not just the group that's in front of us, but we all come with random circumstances that we didn't anticipate would be the situation that we're in. And I think the best, most transparent, most productive way to move through those obstacles is to contact the people that can find those violations and have those consequences dealt to you. Contact them and say, hey, what do I do? What's my next step so I don't get myself in a bind? And I don't think that that happened. I'm unaware that if it did happen, but I don't think that happened. And I know that for a lot of times with our code enforcement, that can save a lot of problems, it can help with extensions, just so we can better understand what the scenario is and, and help you through the process, because it's not always the easiest to go about it alone either. So just for everyone else that's dealing with the unexpected.
Yeah, I know this was difficult and stretched out far longer than anybody wanted it to, but we do have to maintain our credibility and strengthen the ordinance, as you say, Supervisor Simon. So I, I want to make the motion that we deny the appeal AB twenty-two oh five, confirming the decision that the Planning Commission. that the planning commission to approve major use permit UP 1942, applied by, applied for by Bottle Rock Farms FJ Trust on a property located at 9900 and 10030 Bottle Rock Road, Kelseyville, California, as further described as APNs 011-057-22 and 011-057-23.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for the report, and thank you for coming in with us. All right. Next, we have 6.8. Consideration of License Agreement between the County of Lake and PG&E for the temporary use of a portion of Lucerne Harbor Park as a community resource center in the event of a public safety power shut-off. And with that, we have Public Services Director Lars Ewing. And then I see Melinda Rivera also on Zoom with us.
Very good. All right, thank you. Okay, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director, and I appreciate you letting me know that PG&E is on. I, I hope and that OES, Office of Emergency Services, may be up there. I-
Did see Gavin earlier.
Okay.
I'm sure it's Brian.
Very good. So I'll introduce the, this item, the, those two agencies are also going to be able to provide some information and maybe answer any questions that are there. But I'll kind of summarize really what, what brought us here. PG&E, PG&E brought us here. PG&E reached out to the Office of Emergency Services to request specifically a portion of Lucerne Harbor Park to be used as a, a community resource center, or a customer resource center, both terms I've, I've heard. In, in short, that resource center would be set up in the event of a, of a PSPS. They're, it's advanced planning for them, so they're, they're looking to enter into a license agreement, so they would have essentially the right to use that portion of Lucerne Harbor Park. And I say that portion, there's an exhibit in the, in the proposed agreement that, that depicts, it's about 12 or 15 parking spots, which is a good portion of the park, and that's part of the reason that, that we're here, is just to, to ensure that the board has, has an opportunity to consider the impacts to the public. But they would, they would have the right to use that portion of the park to establish that community resource center, which I look forward to PG&E maybe describing a little bit about what that is, but most people around Lake County have, have probably seen some of those set up. Essentially, we're talking about tents, or a tent, likely a large tent, with, you know, generators and opportunity to provide a place for people to, to plug in their cell phones and, and, and get some water, that sort of thing. But I'll defer to PG&E to, to maybe define that a bit more. There are some, some more specifics that are, that are spelled out here, and I'll just summarize those just for the, for the benefit of the, of the board and the public. That center, in the event that it is opened, and I can't say when it would be, you know, obviously, that's dependent upon any disaster, but if it was opened, what PG&E has informed us is that the center would be available to the public between 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM. The area would be staffed and secured by PG&E 24 hours a day. The, the duration would be dependent upon the event, but the anticipation is that it would be anywhere between two days to 10 days. But obviously, that can ebb and flow. The, the main reason for this, though, is, is for PG&E to have that, that advanced right to use that portion of, of the park. I, I referenced earlier that, that there's an impact to the county, at least to the public, of the use of this, of the, of the park. While, you know, the, the rest of the park would remain available, there's certainly an impact to, to parking. That, that is probably 75% of the, of the parking stalls in the, in the park. In exchange, the county would receive a daily rate of $200 from PG&E for the use of that site. So with, with that said, that really summarizes the, the proposed license agreement. I want to thank County Council for, for reviewing and providing some input, but, but with that said, I really would, you know, turn it over to the board to maybe ask any questions, and most of them, I would deflect onto, onto PG&E. The last thing I'll say is that, is that OES and, well, County OES and Public Services, meaning OES and me have, have, you know, are here presenting it because, as I understand it from OES, this is something that, that they are recommending. That's not for me to say, that's, that's for them to say, but I, I think in, in consideration for what is the benefit of, of this, of this proposed project, I, I'm gonna really defer to, to OES. So I'm, I'm sitting here really as a, as the steward on, on your behalf of that property that is right now a, a public park, and this would potentially change the, change the nature of that park for a period of time. So I'll, I'll wrap up my statements and, and turn it over to the board.
All right. I see Melinda on, so I'll go ahead and, Melinda, if you would like to add anything to this, or?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Board Chair Crandall, and the members of the Board of Supervisors, and thank you, Director Ewing, as well, for bringing this to the board. I am joined by my colleague, Public Safety Specialist Rich Noonan, and apologies, we were a last-minute substitution for you. So apologies that I am not there in person this afternoon. We just, we learned very recently that we would be here today for this item. So here to answer questions, I, I think we will be able to answer any questions related to the community resource centers, how they function and operate. Director Ewing is correct that we had previously had a location in Lucerne that we had in contract to operate as a community resource center for last year. We were not able to renew that contract, so we reached out to our county partners and County Office of Emergency Services and in the Sheriff's Department, and asked them for their suggestions for another location in Lucerne that, that would serve as, as hopefully, a good location for our community in Lucerne in the event that we would need to stand up a community resource center. As Director Ewing previously referenced, our standard hours are usually 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. About 24 hours before we open a CRC, we will post it on our website, that the hours that a CRC would be open, the locations where we would have, sorry, a community resource center, what locations across Lake County where we would open the community resource center, and the hours of operation and services that will be provided. Normally, we have a third-party staffer there who can answer questions related to PG&E specific to that event that we are responding to, whether it's a public safety power shut-off or another type of disaster. Usually, we have charging stations there. We sometimes have bottled water when we're able to, snacks, other items really there to just kind of provide the community with a place to come and recharge, get a little bit of respite during any type of disaster event that has impacted their power, where we, we've had the opportunity to at least set up, set up the tents and activate the community resource center. So generally speaking, those are for public safety power shut-offs, but they could be activated for other disasters as needed. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you for this. I think being prepared is always great, so having this contract in place will be useful when, hopefully, it doesn't ever happen, but it probably will, so that we can be prepared for that. But my question is for Director Ewing. I believe I saw in the contract or the agreement that it's $250 a day, is that correct?
I have 200 in my memo, and if, and if it was 250, then I-
I, I could have it wrong.
Okay, 200, it is 200.
Okay. Does that go to like a general fund for parks, or does that go back to Lucerne Harbor Park?
It would, it would, to be honest, it likely goes into the County General Fund. I don't think there's anything, anything that would be different than that. I would have to defer to, to the administrative experts, but I, I don't think it would go anywhere but there.
Okay. So that, I guess that would be a different conversation in the future for looking at like enterprise funds. So if somebody rents the park, it goes back to our parks rather than going into general fund, because that would make more sense to me?
Well, what we could do is earmark the, the funds to be used specifically for, to go back to Lucerne Harbor Park. I mean, I, I'm happy to do whatever the board would choose to. An enterprise fund might, might not be the, the best fit, but something that would, that would dedicate the funds to Lucerne Harbor Park. I'm sure we can come up with, with some mechanism to make that happen.
Yeah, I, I'd be in favor of doing that. I don't know what the complexity is of creating that, but I think that if a, a park is being rented or utilized, that we are able to, for the wear and tear, be able to put that money back into those parks. But again, I think that could be a larger conversation for all of our parks, because I know many different parks get rented for different purposes. Thank you.
We asked it, so I don't have to. Go ahead, Supervisor Simon.
No, I, you know, I want to thank everyone thinking about putting this together for the, the North Shore. I did have one question, and maybe you could answer. Where was the location last year? Do you, or Melinda, could you?
I do know that, one thing I do know is that Lucerne Harbor Park during the Mendocino Complex was highly used for a place for people looking for respite when we were, during the complex in 2018. That was a spot where everybody was, just giving that insight. As for the site last year, I, I thought Upper Lake High School, Robinson Rancheria, and I think Clear Lake.
Looks like PG&E-
Go ahead, sir.
PG&E can answer that.
Yeah. Rich, I see you have your hand up, if you can unmute. Rich Noonan?
Yes, okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Really appreciate your time today. And again, like Melinda said, we'd have been there in person, but this, we just learned about this yesterday afternoon. So the location last year was the New Paradigm Church, and I'm not sure, there was some sort of an issue there. Didn't, wasn't anything on PG&E's side of things, and I, I really don't know what happened. Just decided that they did not want to-
The castle.
-continue with the, with the contract. So it, it left myself and Lake OES trying to find another site. Now, the parameters for these sites, they have to be ADA compliant, and it, in Lucerne, the park was pretty much our best and only option. It's also very advantageous to have the community resource centers located in somewhere that's, you know, somewhere that's pretty visible, and an area that everybody knows where it is. So, you know, while there are other sites around Lucerne that are, that are fairly close, you know, should, should an event occur where we have to de-energize for public safety, you know, it's better not to overload, you know, the other sites, and having the site there on Lucerne would be really great for the, the citizens there and our customers as well. That's all I have.
So thank you for answering. It's, it was the New Paradigm College, not, right? Isn't that what they were called?
Well, likely, and then that's probably after it was sold, that the county sold that, so I don't, I don't, I can't comment one way or another.
He was doing an agreement with, they were doing an agreement with the college.
Yeah, I was just looking to see where that site was. I, I didn't know that, so it sounded like no one else kind of did either. So I was just wondering what happened with that contract. Obviously, I support the CRCs. We know our communities use them quite a bit, especially in South County. We've got a lot of experience with it, so, you know, and, and all around the county, but, you know, we know that's used. I did have one question, just for PG&E, because I know that we do have a lot of these sites around the county. Hopefully, this one's approved today. I'm in favor of it. But if there's any opportunities to not only bring these resources to our community while it's happening, but also to give opportunity maybe for employment for folks to work these centers from Lake County, you know, instead of bringing people from outside of the county to work, work in these shelters, get trained, go through that process? I wonder if that's an opportunity as we continue to grow these in our area, that there's an opportunity for individual local folks to go on your guys' website, look to be hired for these things, and, and, you know, it might only be, hopefully, it's only one weekend, and we can, you know, can create an opportunity for someone who may need some work.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Simon for asking about this. So yes, it is advertised widely through our, our subcontractor who operates these sites. And last year, when I visited the community resource centers when they were activated for public safety power shut-off events, I did encounter staff at multiple sites, both in South County and up at Clear Lake location, who were residents of Lake County, who live there. So there are people who are being hired, who live in Lake County, and who are staffing our, our community resource centers. We are very thankful for them.
If someone was looking to do that, where would they go? Would they go to the PG&E website, or is there a place? Someone's listening to today's meeting and says, man, I'd like to work one of those, or I, I need, you know, a little, little extra income. Is there, where would they go to look at that?
That is a great question. Let me, would it be okay if I followed up with the County Public Information Officer to get him a link for that?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
I will do so.
Now, if I could just add one other thing that was not in, in the memo, and that is the, the notice that PG&E would, would be giving us, because it is a concern at a, I guess I'll say at a tactical level. While they are, we're entering into this license agreement to say that, that they will use this space should the, the need arise. The agreement requires PG&E to give the county eight hours advance notice, and if we cannot make the site available, we need to provide PG&E with a response no less than four hours prior to, to that eight hours, eight-hour time block coming up. Muddling this a bit, but bottom line, there may be vehicles parked there that, that, you know, we can't, we can't get rid of. So, so there, you know, we, we need to have a, a plan in place, or at least the board needs to, needs to recognize that, that, you know, that things may happen that are beyond the county's control, and, and I think it's important for PG&E to understand that as well, that this is a public park. Things happen in, in the public park that are, to be honest, beyond, beyond the county's control, and, and should a, should a vehicle be parked there, and we can't, you know, can't find the, the, the owner of that vehicle, it's gonna, gonna present a challenge. If it's right in the middle of that, of that space, it could present a challenge certainly to the county. I don't have an answer to, to what we should do to that. I just want to make, make sure that the board is aware of, of that potential. Now, we will do our part, the, you know, County Park Staff will do our part to go out and, and ensure that, that we try to round up the, the owners of those vehicles, but I, I would hate for the county to be held responsible for, hey, within eight hours, we have to have that cleared. And so I think that's worth a discussion right here.
Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
The way that I looked at the agreement, it just, it, it didn't call out space numbers or anything. Yeah, there's a little bit of a, a map with showing where it would be located, but I'm guessing there's flexibility put into that, that if you had to move it over a couple spaces, that that's possible.
Well, I, as the, you know, just from the Parks Director side of things, I would be flexible with that. It would be dependent upon PG&E's flexibility with that space, how much space they need, and what modifications might need to be made to the agreement to, to indicate that, you know, maybe we make a, a square footage requirement that we can make available somewhere on that park. I will tell you that very rarely is that park, you know, entirely packed, that we, we couldn't find some space, but it's, it's just something that, if, if we want to ensure that the county is not held responsible for ensuring that that, well, it's not a rectangle, but that, that space is, is available during that, that timeframe, that, that could present a challenge. So I'm, I'm, I don't have an answer. I just want to make sure that, that we, we have that discussion here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Grant.
I think there are the things that we can do that will minimize that risk with regard to signage in the area, et cetera.
Thank you, Anita.
Any other questions? Sheriff Martin, I see you on. Did you have anything to add?
I think everything was covered. It sounded like this was going the, the way that it's presented. I would say I support this, as Director Ewing said, the OES and Sheriff's Office are both in support of this. With all the public safety power shut-offs, we've asked PG&E to be more proactive in helping to mitigate the, the effects of it, and this is another example of one of those things that they've done. I think this is a, a good partnership, and we, we support it.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, just a quick question from Ms. Grant. When you say that that's possible to do within the confines of what is already stated within the agreement, or is there changes that are required?
I don't think there are any changes required. Thank you.
All right. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? All right. Bring it back to the board for action. It's in my district, so if someone can make the motion, it'd appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PG&E CRC agreement for Lucerne Harbor Park.
Second.
So the motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Lars, and thank you, Melinda, Mr. Noonan, and Sheriff Martin, and Gavin Wells as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That will cover the timed items, if you want to call it that, but, so let's go to, did you say three?
If it's possible, it's up to you.
All right.
I know that I've contacted specific individuals to be here, but I know we've also had a resident sitting here all morning long waiting, so I, that, that choice is in your hands.
All right. I'll go ahead and start with 7.2, discussion and possible direction to staff on continuing homeless shelter operations in Old Juvenile Hall. Supervisor Sabatier, you brought this forward, and I'll let you go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So obviously, we know that the Elijah House has shut down as of, I think, over the weekend, or I don't know the- or I don't know the specific date, might have been the 18th or something along those lines. But having a 24-hour homeless shelter, I think, is a huge benefit to our community because if they're not in a shelter, if they're in a house or can be in a house, they probably would be. And so the shelter is for those that aren't able to find themselves in a approved legitimate shelter. And so we we need to continue those services, and we have very limited services. We have Hope Center, which has limited bed space. We have Project Restoration that has limited bed space, and both of those also have a specific criteria of what the tenants of the tenants. And so this one was very wide open. It was a more like no place like home where there's not much of a criteria, really helping everybody that could be provided at bed space. And one of the conversations I've had, and I hope that Director Metcalf is with us online, one of the conversations I've had with Director Metcalf is he has been proactively speaking with other nonprofit agencies, trying to get them to say yes to taking over the operations over at the Old Juvenile Hall. But the major hurdle is funding. We were told through the grapevine that it was about $53,000 a month to be able to afford the bills and salaries and everything for who was working there for the program to be successful. In the letter that we received for when they were letting us know that November 4th was their last or September 4th was their last day of operation, they believe they said $65,000 to $70,000. There is money coming down the pike. Governor Newsom signed almost $10 billion worth of funding for homeless programs and sheltering, but they're just not released yet. As you know, we like to say that we're really happy that we have funding, but then you've got to go through the bureaucratic process of the guidelines and criteria that you need to meet in order to obtain this funding. I would like to have the conversation on whether or not we would like to direct staff to come back to us on how do we continue these operations? And is this something that we're willing to put money towards to make sure that there's continuity rather than a full stop? Because there's nothing worse than providing assistance to those who are experiencing homelessness to then suddenly be put back into the experience of homelessness. That that lack of continuity is more harmful than it is good. And so I would like to offer that we do have funding and we can direct staff to find it and then have better conversations with other nonprofits who had interest but lacked the funding to be able to make this happen, that during the stopgap between now and when we get the funding access that the state of California is offering to us, that we continue to make sure and facilitate this program, or else it's back in our communities. And unfortunately, whether it's a NIMBY problem or not, there is impact to our communities when we eliminate these types of programs and bring things back into our county parks, into our properties that are vacant and more out of sight. But that's not the place these people belong. They belong in a shelter. And so I wanted to bring this conversation. I was really hoping that it would still be open until the 4th so that we can have this conversation and have better continuity because saying that word doesn't quite make sense now that they're closed. But I still feel that the service is necessary and wanted to bring it to the board to have the discussion because I think it's very possible to be able to afford a few months until we can get access to the state funding. And I don't know if Director Metcalf wants to add on to anything that I may have missed.
No, thank you Supervisor Sabatier. Todd Metcalf, Director Behavioral Services. I did want to add that that there is there are some monies through the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Grant. As a matter of fact, right now, as I'm speaking, there is a committee, the COC Committee is reviewing two responses to the RFP that we sent out not that long ago. There's about $300,000 that can be used for a shelter. It's not specific to any particular site, but that's under review right now. It's $300,000, which could, if someone wants to take this on. And as you said Supervisor Spatia, it's it's over $50,000 a month to run to run operations at Old Juvenile Hall. But there are monies here for a shelter operation. But that's all I know. I'm not obviously, I'm not on that committee that's reviewing the two the two bids that we received. So there is hope, but yes, right now, the Old Juvenile Hall facility has closed or is closing, and there will be not continuity care until we figure out what where these monies are going to go. And there is more, as you say, the governor is there's more money on the way. It would just be a matter of finding someone that could run the facility until those those funds come down. I'm sure it would still be a competitive process that whomever operates the shelter would have to apply for these funds. So there's still that part of, you know, it's not a guarantee, but I know all counties in the state will be entitled to certain funding for this type of operation.
Right. And there was a nonprofit that was sitting down and reviewing the ability to take that over. And again, the funding was the big hurdle. And I just want to make sure that we have, again, that continuity. I don't want to do 300,000 and then come back. I think that we need to be willing to match that in order to make sure there is continuity with the efforts of getting grant funding to never have to match that. But at this point in time, I think that just letting it go is is too detrimental to our community and the efforts that we've been making. So again, I think that there's been a little bit more information provided between when this was submitted to now with the RFP and the HAP funding available, but I still wanted to have that conversation and direct staff saying, yes, this is something we want to keep going, or no, this is something maybe we want to review before we keep going, or just not at all.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Well, I recognize the importance of having this facility, but how do we keep it going? What I mean, who's going to run it? I know there's funding here and there is a RFP, but I think we have to wait until we have somebody that is going to step up and run it because we can't staff it right now.
And again, there's two RFPs for people who are interested in running it. That needs to go through the process. And some of this information, again, came out after the Thursday submission or Friday submission. But I think it's we're going to come right back to the same place in a matter of time because 300,000 goes fast. And will the state be ready where we've not only submitted it, but we've actually received the payments from the state? Those things are for sure as far as getting funding from the state. It's a matter of time, and that on off, on off, on off is not healthy. So it's mainly direction that I was looking for today, but that was it.
And so thank you for that, and thank you for bringing this forward. You know, I first referred to the letter that was given to us, I want to say around July, I have a copy of it, sorry. It was July 11th when they stated that they would, the group stated that they would be leaving on September 4th and that they were running out of funding from that point forward. I know I had a brief conversation with Justin Amon, and he notified me that they were, in fact, going to leave and that also there was they were going to continue working as an SLE in Lucerne and that they were using their own funding for that. And something along the lines of HHAP funds for, I want to say Housing Navigator or whatever the case may be. An interesting note, though, is when it was proposed before, it was never stated that when it was first brought forward. It was brought forward as an area for an administration type of office. And so now it's the the scope has changed. And of course, this isn't referring to the Juvenile Hall, but it's in the letter that notified us that we were leaving. And so I won't go too far into that, but I just, one of the things is reporting requirements. I know that in the contract, I'm looking at the contract, Director Metcalf, and at the end, it basically states that the oversight and the you would basically be the person to be reviewing this contract and seeing if anything that's been conducted by the group, you would be looking at or you would have that oversight. And so I do have numerous questions about reporting requirements. You know, I know that in some of these statements, it states that they should come back and show projected performance measures, you know, annual exponential reports. I know in the letter, it states a specific number. It doesn't break down the actual amounts. And so I think a lot of concerns revolve around the fact that some of these aren't broken down to a point that give, you know, what a lot of people want to see. So I won't go too far into it. I'll just state that for now, and I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add to that, but I know.
I do have quarterly reports. I can certainly get those to the board. And any other additional information, I can certainly get my hands on it.
All right, thank you. Just one last thing, as I know that the night that they stated when I talked to, or actually the night after my town hall, there was a group that was supposed to come and discuss something about the Lucerne. However, I still took it upon myself to go over to the Juvenile Hall. When I went there, there was just three homeless guys there. There was no one else there when I went. So I just kind of found that odd when I when I went there.
There was no staff there?
There was no staff that came to the door. I asked the gentleman to go get the staff. He said he didn't know where he was and that he's probably asleep or he'll find out. And and it just it never took place. So I just that was interesting to me. So I just wanted to note that. It was very disheartening to see that regardless of what. So anyhow, I won't go too far into that, but I will just note that. I see Todd, Melissa, is she is she part of the? Yeah.
My Melissa?
Yes, I see a hand up in attendees, and so maybe she has something to add to this.
And before Melissa speaks, what I'm hopeful with this is I know Todd's been working behind the scenes. Sorry, Director Metcalf's been working behind the scenes, and I hope that in the future with direction that he could come back to us rather than trying to work within the restrictions of what he has in his budget or the restrictions of what he has from the grants, so we can have this discussion sooner than later. Just because I do feel like this is not something that Director Metcalf should be working on alone, especially when it's finding ways to fund this and make it happen. I think just bringing it to a discussion sooner than later is probably the better way to go. But I think with the changes that have occurred since this was submitted, that we can just give that simple of a direction and hope that with the RFP process that's currently in place, that that can at least attempt to resolve it. But one of the things that I'm I'm hopeful Director Metcalf can either let us know now or again, when it comes down to approving the the contract is, is this hurting any agency wanting to take part when right now we're only looking at a finite amount of money? Because that's that's a heavy lift to figure out how to staff this program, knowing that you only have a certain amount of money to use, not knowing how long you're going to be there. And I think the more we can show longevity, the easier it will be to find people that will have a long-term program over there.
Yes, and and something that I keep saying around this, and it actually came up in last week's Housing Continued Care Meeting, this I and Supervisor Spatia, I appreciate you bringing this to the Board of Supervisors, but I think it's bigger than it's it's more than just a county problem. It's a community problem that we all need to come together and figure out how to do this. And yes, I I had had some side conversations with a couple of organizations that expressed interest in taking this on, but the funding piece is 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 the trouble. That's where that's the biggest hurdle of this thing is is the money. I know that the couple of organizations I spoke to would be very interested in operating it, but it's just financially, they can't they can't handle it. So I it's it's more than what it's more than what the county of Lake can handle. We need to we need to have bigger conversations with with other organizations about this to get creative and figure out how can we pull this off.
All right. Vice Chair, did you have your panel?
Well, I have a question about the funding. Where are you anticipating this coming from?
There's always the possibility of reviewing our ARPA. That's a possibility. I know that we have some money set aside as well in our budgets. There's definitely money available, but there has to be a plan that goes along with that money because this is not a bottomless pit of funds that we have either. But I think for helping us hold out until the California funds come to us, that that would be a possibility, and I think that that could be afforded by us.
All right, let's see if there's any, oh, sorry Supervisor Simon, go ahead.
Yeah, so just stated right off the bat, obviously, I was in favor of this during the being a emergency COVID shelter as we move forward. So in support there. So for the simple request today, I think for staff to look and see with Behavioral Health Director Todd Metcalf to come back with a plan, how we move forward, I think it's really important. So obviously, in support of that, I like some of the ideas you've already thrown out there, but we need to have that plan in place. We really need to gather all the information. It's taken over the last two years, get that budget broken down and those types of things because our partner is going to be the state. And we need to have that information as we're doing this, just like we were talking earlier about really maximizing our funds. Here's our skin in the game right now that we're looking at, and this is a program we want to keep moving forward. So obviously, in favor of at least listening and being prepared as we move forward as these funds are coming down. We're doing it with the roads. We're doing it with, you know, everything else, trying to have a plan in place as we're moving forward. And with this, there are billions of dollars. We need to have that plan in place, a budgeted idea, potential partners, which you're doing with the RFPs. So, yeah, I'm in favor of staff to come back with some suggestions, maybe six months to 12 months, because who knows how long it takes to get the regulations done, even when the money is said it's coming, it takes a while to get all that stuff worked out. You've already suggested some ideas where it might come from, but looking at those opportunities, I think are real important, having something put together. So I'm in favor of, yes, bringing something back to talk about as a full board.
And I do want to remind you from our last budget discussion that our end of the year balance was 12 million, 10 million? And so those are unspent funds that because mostly because of our vacancies and other savings here and there, but not doing something when we have 10 to 12 million dollars that goes rolls over into the following year is something I'd rather not see. I'd rather see us attempt to do something, but with a plan.
Yep, just follow up on that. I'll wait for staff to say where these things are coming from, what budget unit, because there's so many things that need addressing in the county. Obviously, homelessness is one of those. That's very important. I'll just I'll wait to hear staff before I start throwing numbers out there because sometimes people take that in a different way when they only catch a part of the meeting. They're like, oh, got this. So I'll wait for staff to come back with those numbers and say, here's a suggestion of some budget units that may have an opportunity to help with this. But this is a huge, this this is double beneficial. Everyone that is on the street costs us money through the hospitals, through everywhere. Having this opportunity, I think, is really big and being a small county, when we do go to the state, say, listen, we've stepped up, we've done these things, now we need your help. We're asking for a handout. We're asking for a hand up. So here's our program. We put it together. Come give us the help we need.
And I'm probably going to shoot myself in the foot with what I'm going to say, but bringing this back in six months, I especially considering, you know, the RFP that we had two responses to.
I didn't say bring it back in six months.
That could that could go towards a shelter. I'd rather get my staff and whoever I need to working on putting a plan together so that whoever if if one of these two bidders are awarded these funds to operate a shelter that we don't waste any time.
No, that wasn't my statement, Todd. My statement was like a six-month budget, 12-month budget. If it comes next week.
I'm sorry.
Or three weeks from now. I wasn't saying come back in six months. I was just saying, be prepared, come back with options so we can look at that to, you know, as a board. So I wasn't saying delay on it. We need it. We need it now. So that was my comment. I just want to make that very clear to you.
No, thank you. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I'm all over it.
All right. And in doing so, I just would really like to see a lot more reporting mechanisms and oversight of how the money's spent and it's spent on the community that needs the most. Sometimes the vagueness isn't really helpful, so I just would appreciate that. I know from my standpoint, I'm pretty sure the board feels that way too, but I'll let them. them speak for themselves. But I just want to highlight that. And if there's any contract revisions that can help with that, it would be very greatly appreciated as well.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other comments from the board?
No, just that our budget hearings are coming up, and I think that's an appropriate place to have, continue this conversation.
All right. All right, so at this time, it looks like I will open it up to the public. If there's anybody that would like to speak on this item, please come to the microphone or raise your hand in Zoom, and we'll give you three minutes to speak.
Joey Lewis, Kelseyville, this is the longest public meeting I've been in in 10 years. Thank you for the entertainment. Anyway, thank you Supervisor Spatia for bringing this. I don't know, I will make the public aware, I was the assistant manager of this shelter for the first eight months of operation. And then it quickly and roughly ended when Elijah House took over. We wouldn't be having this conversation if Elijah House had met their obligations that they promised this community in the first place. They were going to come in and be this great nonprofit with these resources to help transition it from an emergency shelter to a self-sustaining, you know, finding other funding, all these big promises. And they did none of it. And then they continued the lie. That letter you received, okay, I was in every single board meeting with the initial organization, going over the weekly budget, going over how much money it costs to run the shelter. $75,000 is a lie. Where's the money going? Where is it going? So before you guys can even move forward, and I agree, it is a good use for that facility. It is a great facility. You know, the idea is awesome, but let's not put criminals in charge of it again. And let's find out how much of this money should be coming back. They said they're looking for six months of reimbursement, ridiculous. So account for the cost of what they've done because it doesn't add up. Also, we never went, at the Record B building, we never went over 40K a month in expenses and a lot of things are donated, most of it is staffing, of course. And that was including the rent on the building, a facility that wasn't made for housing people, that's very inefficient in the energy costs, and we were still able to make it work. So where is this money going? They're not paying rent. It's a more efficient building made for housing people. I just don't get it, and I wish this board and this county would look into that. Also, the management is posting up how they're running around in limousines and flying in company jets or planes and cars and, and a few of those things have been taken off social media all of a sudden, probably right after that Record B article came out this week. So let's look into that. Why, why did we let them lie about Lasern? I told them at the Lasern Town Hall not to trust this organization. And what did they do? They put a different use in the building. Apparently it's tied to their at-work program. Another thing to be concerned about is I had on my radio show Saturday, somebody who was on that program that's saying that some of the things they were doing did not meet state law in, as far as labor laws. Look into that. And finally, one last thing, I know my time's up. I did tell Tina Scott about all these concerns. She was my supervisor at the time, representing me. I was, I'm not going to beat her up that much, she's not here anymore, but she was aware of all this two years ago. And instead of doing the right thing and moving this board to look into this organization, she gets her kid a job there instead. We need a lot of answers before you can have a sustainable program again. Let's not make the same mistakes again like we did allowing this lying corrupt organization in to run and to feed, basically prey on our homeless. So thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Are there any other comments? And I'm looking on Zoom, I'm not seeing any hands up.
My name is David Santos, former president of Adventist Health Clinic, presently working with tribal health. I'm not here representing either of those organizations. I was actually here to present the next item on the agenda, but I have to respond to what I just heard. It's very important when you speak publicly that you speak with facts and that you speak with accuracy and not personal vendettas or personal sour relationships that went south. And so you have to look at this entire topic very carefully, with balance, objectivity. And I think you have to look at this organization's track record. I for one had a family member twice as a resident with this organization. I can speak very highly of this organization, did wonders for my son. So for every story that goes south, there's a story that goes north. And I for one know many families that have benefited from this organization. I cannot speak for what happened in Lakeport, and neither do I want to try. I just want it to be clear and on the record that this organization has experienced lots of success in addressing, I don't know about necessarily homelessness, but certainly those who suffer from mental health and substance abuse. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the public? And I'm looking online as well, I don't see any hands up. All right, so I'll close public input and bring it back to the board. I think this is discussed and direct staff. And I think Todd, does it look like you have the direction you need?
Yes, I've, I've been writing it down.
All right. So did you get?
I'll just say that in putting this agenda item, it was in my mind of moving forward, not looking in the past. I think that we have, we have information that obviously we're going to be looking into exactly what happened and, and kind of better understand. But I know that Supervisor Scott was not the only one you reached out to. You forgot to mention that you also reached out to me. I did look over their financials and I was not able to find anything to say that there was something out of the ordinary from what I can understand when I looked through it. And so I'm hopeful that we will be transparent and that as we move forward, we learn in being better at being transparent to make sure that everything is aware for the public to see and for us to understand exactly what's happening. I think it's important for all of our contracts to be held accountable for what we expect from them and that there's transparency that allows for the public trust to be there. So I think that's always important for us to move towards that. But yes, I believe that we have the direction that I was hoping that we would get, and I appreciate the conversation and the support to want to continue programs like this in our community as it's still absolutely needed.
All right. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and close this item.
Can we take a break?
Yeah, we can take a short break if you'd like. And we will take a five-minute break. Sound good?
That's a big question.
Not kidding. All right, we'll take a five-minute break, we'll be back at 3:20. All right, welcome back, it's 3:20. We'll go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda, which is 7.3 consideration of presentation, discussion, and direction regarding behavioral health treatment facility for youth and grant opportunity. This is brought to us by Supervisor Spatia.
Unfortunately, Mr. Santos stepped out. There he is. If you could please come to the podium, I'm going to introduce you and introduce the subject. If you, the podium should be good, the podium right on the other side.
Oh, here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so I got a phone call about, I want to say three weeks ago, from Mr. Santos, who already introduced himself in the previous public comment. And he was very passionate about bringing some new facility needs here, understanding the gaps that exist within our healthcare system. And specifically, he was talking about substance abuse facilities for age group zero to 25, young families, and so on. We know that during the pandemic, we've seen from what Director Metcalf has told us, an increase of 300 to 400% in the need and request for substance abuse services. We also know that in Lake County, there is a lack of resources when it comes to substance abuse resources. Along with Mr. Santos, there was Bob Gardner, Dr. Bob Gardner, that was involved in the conversation, Lori Runyon, I think I'm saying the right name, last name? So Hilltop Facilities was highly involved in the conversation. They were looking around Lake County, where are some properties that we can build a facility and actually create what's needed in this county, that fill in the gap of the healthcare system when it comes to substance abuse disorders? And so we've been in conversation, reviewing certain properties. I've had conversations with community development to try and narrow down what those properties could be. I was in communication with Supervisor Crandall, but what comes out is that it might not even be, we're not even looking right now in District Two or in District Three. There may be some opportunities in the other districts, so I apologize to those supervisors. But at the same time, we have a deadline of August 31st to submit for a grant. And that grant is the Behavioral Health Treatment Facility, no, I said it wrong. It's the Behavioral Health Continuum of Infrastructure Program, and it's round four. And round four, we've already utilized round one, two, and three with behavioral health. Round four allows for the construction of a facility, allows for the planning, the construction, and the development. And all of those funds that can be obtained from the state could be utilized for every single one of those steps. And so the opportunity is here. There was a question of, so right now, Mr. Santos is in the works of getting the nonprofit Hope Health approved by both the Secretary of State in the state of California and at the IRS level for the federal government. That has not been accomplished 100% yet. And in speaking with those that released the grant funding at the state level, they offered that join with the county and see if it's possible for them to help you out. There is some percentage that can be going to administrative fees. So if we say yes to being the fiscal agent, we would be compensated in being able to utilize some of those fees for whatever services we're putting in. But the idea is in the long run, once the nonprofit is, is complete, to pass it on back to the nonprofit and help them with the, not help them with the project, but support the project in ways to make sure that it comes to fruition and be a partner in making sure that this project happens. Right now, the only ask is to support the project and the grant opportunity. There's two possible options. One is to say yes, we can be the fiscal agent and move forward with that. Or number two is just writing a letter of support. And if we only do number two, they would have to go to Plan B, which is really difficult to do with only eight days left before the deadline of the grant, which is to find another nonprofit or another government group to be able to support this. I don't see this as a loss. I know that there is absolute support coming from behavioral health. And I've spoken and sat down also with our CAO, CAO Parker, who sees this project as a very possible and very positive project as well. We want to reduce the liability on the county as much as possible, but at the same time, I cannot have this project brought to me as an idea and then just walk away from it. I think it is an opportunity and I'd love for it to happen. So without having stolen too much of your thunder, I'd love to pass it on for Mr. Santos to present to you his dream, his vision, and what this project entails.
Thank you Supervisor Spatia. I know you're Bruno, but that's okay, it's all good. I, I think you did a wonderful job of introducing this concept and this plan. It really is not about me or my dream. It's something that really was brought to me by a grant writer that was looking at different grants in Lake County and has written grants, many grants like this for Lake County. And it really caught my attention. As I spoke earlier, both personal and professional perspective, I, I'm passionate about this. I have been for quite some time. In my previous job and role, we were all about really trying to figure out how to transform the health status of Lake County. This was one big missing piece. Really breaking the cycle of poverty and poor health really starts even before the child is born. This grant addresses the zero to 24 age category. And what's so exciting about it is, is that there's such a great need in Lake County that a facility, say a 70-bed facility, that's really addressing, say, ages 13 to 17, the minors, and then there's the 18 to 24, another part of a 50-acre plus piece of property that's really first-class and provides these comprehensive, integrated services that truly give hope, thus the title of our, of our budding 501(c)(3) Hope Health California. It's really about starting this in Lake County and doing this in a manner that truly provides the kind of wraparound services and the very specific behavioral health services that are complemented with by, by substance abuse recovery activities and programs, all contained in, you know, this residential program is, is what this grant is all about. And so we have secured a $1 million gift from the potential sellers. We actually have two properties. Both sellers have made this offer. The primary property that we're looking at today and ready to submit as part of the grant is this, is a parcel of property, four miles outside of, of Lower Lake on Morgan Valley Road. And it's the two parcels together that are adjacent are 50 acres. A beautiful 3,000-square-foot home sits on this property with a swimming pool, a big cement deck for these, these residents to enjoy. It's a commercial kitchen. So, so that, that little piece of the property is, is already intact. And then there's this very large structure that's well-built and it's really perfect for, for training, whether it be wine making or, or, you know, welding or auto mechanics, what, you know, woodworking. There's, there's lots of opportunity in this property to build out additional structures, including mini dormitories. So the matching dollars between the gift by the potential seller and Red Bud Health District has made a sizable gift, can, can, you know, together, combined, represents $16 million of potential state funding. 1.6 translates tenfold into 16 million. And we have a request out that's pending, and we expect to hear in the next 48 hours from a health plan that is looking at a sizable donation also, that could get us upwards of $20 million of state funding for this project. So I'm going to pause there. There's lots more to talk about. I believe you have a PowerPoint that was already submitted to you prior to this, this meeting today, to this board meeting, and it's, it's very detailed. If you turn to the next, next page, keep going, that's, that's kind of the two title pages. This one, next page.
I'm trying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I give this to you too?
There you go.
I'm too far.
It's okay.
Go back, go back up.
There you go, right there. This is kind of the business map. It's a very business, busy side, so, you know, hopefully your eyes don't get lost from one side to the other. Going from left to right, a listing of key partners, back up to the, you know, top next column, target population. We've talked about some of this already, core activities. Really, it's about prevention, intervention, treatment, recovery. And, and it's not just this residential property and program that we're talking about. We're going to do outpatient services throughout the county. And so as depending upon how the next grant, the next phase, phase five of these six grants go, we look to apply for further funding in the next round, which is really crisis treatment and, and prevention. So we look to, to add to what we're already submitting this round. Campus facility, I told you about the two possibilities in Project Start. Campus facility, I told you about the two possibilities in project startup phases. We're talking about three phases over three years. And as you can see, community wellness and prevention is phase one, outpatient services is phase two, and residential services is phase three. I don't believe it's going to take three years to get there. I truly believe we can, we can open our doors in less than half that time. And as the health plan that's considering a gift to us yesterday told me, they anticipate this facility opening up full the day it opens, based upon the need in Lake County. So I'm going to stop there and ask if there's any questions, because the rest of the slides basically drill down deeper into each segment, each element of this slide.
And you mentioned two sites. You only described one. Do you want to describe the second site?
Sure. If, if we need to go to the second option, it's a 330-acre site that previously housed a similar residential program in Cobb Mountain.
Thank you.
That, that site burned down during, you know, the 16 fires, valley fire, whatever the, which one?
Are you talking about Holberts?
No.
Or you know, a different one?
No.
In 2015.
In 2015. So, yes. I don't know that, it was Hilltop. And they moved to, they moved to the north.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Clear Lake Oaks.
Yeah, moved to Clear Lake Oaks.
That was a 300-person facility?
300-acre.
Oh, 300-acre, alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I was like.
Kind of in-between the cooling tower.
Because I know it housed quite a few folks on that, in that rehab there. We had a good.
They had up to 70 residents at one time.
So the nonprofit's Hope Health California, is that going to be operating outside of Lake County?
It's going to what?
The nonprofit, is that going to operate outside of Lake County?
No. Well, you know, I, I can't predict years down the road, but 501(c)(3) Hope Health Northern California, serving Lake County, at this point in time, that's the only plan.
Okay. Just like one other little thing, when you were talking about one of the campuses that you were going to do winemaking?
No.
That's for addicts?
So, so there's vineyards on the property.
Okay.
And I, so that's a good question, right? But it's, it's, it's not distributing wine. It's a trade, right? Winemaking is a trade, just like anything else is. We're not serving wine. We're not advocating wine. If that were to happen at some point, maybe it's only for the 18- to 23-year-olds, right? Or 24-year-olds. I, I don't know. It's just one of the options. That, let's not that be a roadblock in any way, shape, or form. I don't drink wine myself. I'm not, you know, an advocate of, in any way, shape, or form, you know, promoting alcohol to, to our residents.
So where's the liability for the county if we take this on fiscally?
So I believe that in the beginnings, it would be the reporting factor for any grant and the administrative burden of dealing with the grant. And so I think that CAO Parker, or she's waving for Stephen Carter to.
Relax that there.
To respond. But I, I think that those would be the general burdens or liabilities that would come into that. I, I would assume that the process to become a nonprofit would be complete prior to maybe receiving the funds of the grant, or at least prior to any major action being taken. But that's, I don't know the timeline right now. I know that CAO Parker did look at round four and that it was approved at one point, and that it was another four, five, six months later that they were still working on getting some of those funds. So it, it may take a while. But that, during that time process, the Hope Health nonprofit is going through its motions. And with our name attached to the grant, it would provide the leverage maybe needed to obtain the grant so that we can bring this into the county.
So, and then what is the, the administrative burden that we're looking at in the?
If we could look to the last slide, that will share the, the request.
Page 18 pages? I mean, page 19?
Uh, right there. So partner as the applicant entity for the grant. So your name will be on the application as the entity, because we're 501(c)(3) applicant pending. And then provide site control, guaranteeing and ensuring that basically this property is used for the intended purposes, right? Administer grant funds to the project as needed. I, as Bruno indicated, I don't know if that's going to be necessary outside of probably taking the funds and paying the seller of the property. And then there's going to be maybe some additional costs early on. But once that 501(c)(3) status is approved, we believe that everything could be shifted over to the 501(c)(3) for operating purposes, as well as funding soup oversight. And then assist with planning, zoning, and licensing. I mean, as, as needed, if we have some questions, our contractors or engineers have questions, whether zoning issues maybe come up, maybe public hearing is, is requested. I, I don't know to what extent you would, you know, get involved with that.
And as far as that goes, I, I don't believe that that would be any different than any other developers coming in with the project when.
And then finally, consider local funding alignment for the project. That's just asking you to consider if there's roadwork or some other project that might aid this, this project in coming to fruition. But we have nothing specific in mind right now at this point.
Stephen?
Well, my main concerns are related to the liability for the county. I, I definitely understand that we would be the main applicant at this point, which means we would be on the hook for anything that went wrong with the project. So if we purchased the property, that's a pretty simple one. But if they did any kind of upgrades to the property and didn't go through the proper purchasing procedures, et cetera, it can be taken back, and it would become back from us, not from the 501(c)(3)(3). Now, if it is possible to transfer it to them from the county, then that would release us of the liability, but I'm not sure if that is something that can be done or not. I'd have to look into it.
And so my hope is today to direct staff to continue working with David Santos in order to ensure that we reduce that liability and not lose out on this opportunity in order to try to create something that obviously we, we don't, do not have.
And I do want to say, it, it sounds like an awesome project for the county.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, obviously, talking about youth treatment facility, I think is very important. But, you know, we're always presented with big ideas a, as we're trying to bring something into the county. Me, I always try and look at it a practical, step-by-step operation. I think the biggest hurdle right now is, this is due August 30th, the application, the grant deadline, right? Or you guys have already submitted it, and you're waiting for your 501(c)(3) status to be approved. And I'm not saying it, it's not going to happen, but there's no guarantees that that is going to happen. You know, and I don't think you could stand here and guarantee that's going to happen because you don't approve that, and we don't approve that. So I'm going to complicate even things even more here. Always like if we're going to get into something, or if the county's going to take on some liability, it's something that we know we have in hand. We just had a huge conversation about using the old juvenile hall as a homeless shelter. So that funding is up in the air. We're not 100% sure that's going to happen. We want it to. We, I, I completely agree with that. Me, I, I think the only way I could say by August 30th that I would be willing to vote, why wouldn't we use that facility to be the first youth center? Go after the grant money there, get something started, get it going in the county, and then go from there. Now, I know we were just talking about it being a homeless shelter, but I like having something in hand. You're talking about the donation of this property owner. It looks like the property's 3.6, am I wrong on that? Like worth 3 million something? Or, or am I wrong?
No.
Because I was looking through here.
The fir, the first property is, property Oak Haven is 1.9 million.
1.9 million, okay. And they're going to donate like half of it, is what you're saying, a million dollars. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's a tough one, because I like the juvenile hall.
Yeah.
Being something we own, that we could say, here's our skin in the game state. We want to take these first steps. I think the bigger plan and the bigger idea, I, I agree with it there, but, you know, if, if the 501(c)(3) was set up and you were just looking for a support letter, I think it'd be a little bit easier. So I, I don't want to complicate anything a whole bunch more. I just, you know, have concerns the way we're asking to, to move this through right now, because, man, it's going to take on another liability. And I know we have another, I'm not intermingling things, but we have another big dream project that has, is green, right? The, the flash program that we're trying to move forward with, that we have a liability now if we don't go forward with it eventually, if we're found in the right. So this kind of takes me down that same path, and that's what I'm struggling with. So I know I hate to confuse things, but I say we own that juvenile hall facility, and I don't know how many beds could be in there, but it was a youth facility before. And if you could take baby steps to get into these things, I think that's an opportunity. So anyway, I don't want to, I'm complicating it all, but I don't care. I already said it. So it is what it is. So those are my thoughts. Those are my concerns. I already have stuff in the back of my mind. I, I see your vision. I do see that. But by August 30th, man, I wish we'd had some more stuff laid out from behavioral health, you know, some more conversations happening on what we're doing. And maybe those conversations had, we're just not hearing, I haven't heard it yet today on how we move forward. But the youth treatment facility, very important. Like I said, on the tribal side, we fought for 30 years to get a place. We finally got one built for all of California tribal youth in Calusa County or Yolo County, right over by DQ University. That is up and operating now, but it took us. The vision started 22, 23 years ago, and it got built last year. So those are my concerns. And I know this is different, but I just, youth treatment is real important. Sorry to complicate it, but I did. That was a, it was juvenile facility before. So that's my, my vision with it. Sorry to throw my vision on top of yours.
No, it's okay. You can have your vision, your supervisor. I just, I just want to add a couple of things, right? You know, I don't have a big dog in this hunt, right? I, I want this for Lake County. I want this for those who, who I know could benefit from this in Lake County. And I know we're not a 501(c)(3) today. This grant opportunity came to us just two months ago. So we've been working through the steps of completing all of the nuances. There's still some additional documentation needs to be completed by next Tuesday, and the county would have to help us with that piece. But I can tell you, it's not that much. I mean, we have done all the legwork. There's that one piece that's going to represent the applicant entity for the grant. That is the, an administrative, administrative grant of the, you know, the administrator of the grant. So those are two issues. If you can't see your way through past those two issues because of liability, you know, there's nothing more that we can do. But I can assure you that this 501(c)(3), c)(3), to my, you know, to my clear, my line of sight, I don't see how it cannot be approved. I was part of an integral piece and part of the Hope Rising process. So I understand the 501(c)(3) process. This is, you know, this very small chance this fails. The state is very much excited about this project for Lake County, and so are many of the supporters that you see on, on our list of stakeholders, including Department of Behavioral Health for Lake County.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Well, related to the property, you do need the, the 10% match correct to go forward for these funds?
Yes.
So that's where utilizing the 1 million match from the other property.
I, I need to be, I need to be clear about what you, you asked, because when I answered your question, you, you then clarified, and I didn't want to interrupt you. But the property actually is, is a million dollars more than 1 point, uh, we're selling it, we're buying it for 2.8, and a million dollars is coming back. So he gets 1.8, but the property will sell for 2.8. So if the total 2, 20 million, say we get 20 million, the owner gets 2.8.
Yeah, I saw the million-dollar donation of the property value. That's why I thought it was the, the 3.6.
There's another property. I don't know which property you're looking at, but there's another.
Well, it's, it's in your proposal here. So I, I did see the 1 million dollar donation of the property owner. So I saw that being an in-kind donation and in those types of things. I'm not sure what our juvenile hall.
Yes. So what you're looking there is the property, that's the, that's the other property, 3.9.
I would suspect so.
About 3.
So I, I put it out there, and like I said, I'm not saying i, it won't be approved one way or the other. These are the hurdles that I would have. It says discuss and direct staff, you know. I know we're, we put another meeting on the agenda next week, and we're trying not to fill it up. So I, I'm open, but I'm just putting it out there right now that makes it hard for me to move forward with this decision, you know, of, yeah, you, you heard me say, I, I, this is needed in Lake County, but how do we get there? We don't want to convolute it or make the trail harder than it needs to be for us to get there. So my thought would be, we heard it again on the 30th, I, I'm, I'm open, but these are hurdles that I have in looking how we move forward with this. Right off the bat, I'm letting you know.
Who was first? Supervisor Sabatier, then Supervisor.
I'll go first.
Go for it.
Okay. Well, I, I do, this is an important need that we have. You know, I have family members also impacted, and, you know, we have to get here at some point. And I want to make sure that staff has the time to figure out how to get comfortable with this. I just kind of dropped in our lap here at the last minute, and there's obviously concerns. And if we can take this next week to get to a place where everybody's more comfortable in it, then I think like I can move forward. But I, I, right now, I think there's still a few more things to be researched and fleshed out and figured out.
Brett, Supervisor.
And I, I appreciate being open to the suggestion or the idea, because obviously I don't think any of us are looking at this as, no, we don't need this. It's a matter of what is the best way to move forward so that there's the least potential impact to the county when it comes to staff and our finances. And that was exactly my conversation with CAO Parker, sitting down and trying to figure out, how do we minimize this? How do we get it completely gone? And just a quick question for you, David. Is it possible to hold off and not purchase anything and just put our name on the grant so that it gives you time to get your nonprofit, and then we just hand it over? And then you can go through the purchasing of the properties and everything else that you need? And at that point, we, we touched no money other than being an intermediary, where we're just helping put a name on the grant, where within the grant, it speaks specifically about transferring it over to Hope Health, once Hope Health is a bona fide nonprofit.
So as I understand the grant requirements, we have four and a half years to spend all the money. So if we have four and a half years, if, if 501(c)(3) application approval takes four and a half years, we're all in trouble, right? So I, I would suspect that, you know, with, maybe within six months, we could, we could be ready to purchase that property. And I don't think the owners would have a problem with that.
And at that point, we may not even have the grant funds, depending on what the kind of timeline the state of California has.
No, I'm, I'm willing to say yes to that, that question.
I think if we do it that way, it reduces it just about 90-plus, 95-plus percent of what is the burden that we're asking our staff. And I know that there's the possibility of asking our administrative office to help us out with that, or I know that Director Metcalf has offered to also help out with that. I know that everybody is stretched thin, but if that's a possibility, and we see that as an absolute reduction in what kind of liability and what kind of burden that might be, it still allows us to try for this opportunity. And I, I, I don't disagree with the idea of juvenile hall. You're right. It used to be a place for young people in the first place.
The difference, though, if I could just add, between juvenile hall and this piece of property is like summer and winter. You just really can't compare the two. And if you're looking for outdoors and you're looking for land. And if you're looking for outdoors and you're looking for land, horseback riding, hiking. I'm not going to add anything else like archery, cause I don't want to, you know, get myself in trouble here. But you know, you, you, you understand what I'm saying here. It's just, it's outdoors, it's, it's nature and it's the environment where healing can take place.
And I'm wondering if, uh, Mr. Carter, I see you making some, uh, shaking of your head, wondering if you can express that verbally. On the change in liability with that, uh, consideration.
If, yes, I would not think there's a lot of liability on our side if we wait to expend at least most of the funds after we transfer. Go ahead, Susan.
Well, I was going to wait till you, you were done. So I have, uh, something that I would like your board to consider. Um, given the fact that the desire, this has, uh, could address a great need in our county. Um, I recommend that we work with Mr. Santos. We need to see the actual, uh, standard agreement that goes along with the grant application. We need to see the grant application. We also need to, um, talk to the state about even if transferring is an option. We want to make sure that before we go much further. And I think it also needs to be legal reviewed by, um, our county council before the board, uh, makes this type of decision. And probably with the auditor controller's office too. And then we can place it on the 30th.
Supervisor Simon.
And that's just another concern. It's, it's a big project to pick up between now and next Tuesday. I mean, you know, how do we, how do we get to that point? So, um. Well, let's see if, for me to give that direction, you guys said you did a lot of the heavy lifting. You gotta do all the lifting if we're going to get there in coordination with our admin office and, and, you know, everybody. It's, uh, you know, that's, that's the real challenge I think I have right now with, well, you guys have the challenge, you know? To get us to that point where we could make a decision or NIDA could say, all right, the liability you guys have asked to be taken off the table has at least been rectified to a reasonable point and, um.
So I, I'm assuming.
A lot of, a lot of work to be, a lot of work to be done. So like I said, I'm open to the 30th, but man, um, I don't, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I would just like to say that I believe my grant writers listening on this, she's probably emailing the state as we speak. To see if that transfer can take place. We will do all the lifting that we can and we will start communicating with you tomorrow morning. If this board approves us to go forward in trying to bring this to fruition. So that you can consider it next Tuesday. I mean, obviously if we can't bring it to fruition by next Tuesday, there's nothing to be considered, right? But if we can, then we at least won't miss the deadline because we've been working on it since, between now and then.
Supervisor Pyska.
So we're looking at the capacity with admin and county council. We have not heard from Director Metcalf yet and I'm wondering if he's online and can, um, help us by weighing in on this.
Thank you Supervisor Pyska. There's really not much more I can add. I mean, I did already, uh, submit a letter of support for this project. And what was mentioned earlier as far as trying to help with maybe an administrative lift. My department could only do so if these funds could be used to perhaps hire someone, um, to do the work. That's, that's kind of what I meant by, um, supporting it at an administrative level. But as long as there's money behind it, we could probably, probably do it. But, um, obviously I can't, I can't say anything that hasn't already been said. This is a much needed project and, um, please include me in any meetings about how we could possibly move this forward.
All right. Any other comments?
Is Todd referring to, sorry, is Todd referring to the next week? Or you're talking about beyond that, Todd? You do need, you need funding for the next week to get, help us and that's not even a possibility?
No, I'm, no, I'm talking if, if awarded these funds, um, moving the thing forward, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Anyone?
All right. Go ahead Supervisor Sabatia.
I, um. I would love to see, uh, I think there's some simple questions of first, can it be transferred? If the answer is no, obviously there's no need to spend any more time. Then all the other questions, um, can go along after that to slowly, okay? This is not a, a possibility to continue. Uh, it doesn't have to be a full, uh, workload all the way till the next agenda is posted. There's very specific questions that can stop the process before you have to go through the entirety of the process. And hopefully it's easier to get to that final conclusion than it may be.
Ms. Grant.
Yes, there are some threshold questions that can be answered, but a thorough overview of the documents still has to be undertaken. And that's possible by the 30th. I'm, I'm not going to suggest it's not. We can, in my office, we can do it. I'm sure admin can do it, um, but we do have to review the documents. And then we'll be able to give your board some specific advice on the 30th and you can make your decision then.
So I, I would like to go in that direction and I know it makes it tight for everybody from, uh, finishing up the grant application to getting everything ready for us before the 30th. But I, again, it's one of those things where I wanted to bring this to the board. Just because I'd rather bring it and not have it happen than not bring it, have, not bring it at all and never know if it could have happened. At least we're going through the paces.
I just have one question. Why didn't we find out about this sooner?
So I've been in conversations with state leaders, uh, county leaders over the last month plus. But this was the date that we decided we would bring it here based upon a number of factors. We would have liked to bring it sooner, but we weren't able to, to get here on the agenda.
And there was a feeling of certain things needed to be accomplished, uh, prior to bringing it, such as dwindling it down to what properties were eligible? Cause for the grant and everything, you wanted to at least have a, a more, um, concrete.
Yeah.
Vision rather than a very vague and blank vision.
And, and there is one more reason. We were not planning on coming to the county. We thought we would have another, um, fiscal agent to lean on and to count on. But we ultimately felt that, that the state would much, would look much more kindly upon this. Uh, this grant proposal, if the county was supportive of it and ask actually, you know, fulfilling those functions that we identified.
Is that fiscal partner, would that be available if it's not going to work for us?
I can't say no, but, um, it, we just think that the probability of getting this grant through is just, you know, in the 98th percentile if, if the county supports it in the ways that we're asking.
Okay.
And I think that if today there was a straight no, then plan B would be to ask if that, uh, other partner, uh, was eligible to make that happen. Uh, by August 30th, at that point, I think that would be too late.
Supervisor Simon.
I, I just think you need to be working on dual paths, so.
Yep.
Uh, because it could be a no on the 30th from us. So I, I would just suggest you don't have to, uh, but just take, be working on a dual path. Uh, because it might be as simple as, well, it didn't work out for us, but we'll gladly do a support letter saying we, we are highly supportive of this. We need it. We just don't have the bandwidth at this point to, to, to put ourselves out there to do that. So I, I think you should be working both. That's, that's what I would say. That, that's only my opinion though.
Well, after listening to you today, I'm certainly going to do that.
And another phone call on your status for 501(c)(3). Uh, I don't know who you can call or have your consulting call or whoever, you know, hey, I had a conversation at the board with the county. I know for me, that's a, that's a big sticking point, so it never hurts to kind of keep poking and see if something can move along.
All right, any other comments?
Okay.
I have one, uh, just briefly that, uh, now I agree if we can look, look into this, uh, further. I was, I was, uh, approached, but I was, uh, contacted by Dr. Gardner about, uh, supporting this. And I think it's a great idea, I do. I just know that there's a lot to it, uh, especially with Stephen, with your insight and, um, a lot of the concerns from my colleagues here. But at the same time, I, I know how needed it is. And so, um, I would be willing to look at it and see where we can go from there without being so much of a, uh, not burden, but so much of a liability, if you will, so, but I, I am in support.
So what I'm hearing is if we can clear some of these hurdles with administration and legal? That this is coming back on the 30th and there would be a vote? Okay.
And I would say hit the ground running tomorrow with, uh, Mary Ann contacting the admin office.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Well, and briefly, I'm going to have to open it up to public input in case there's someone that is online that wants to comment on this. You don't see anyone? Neither do I. So I'll bring it back to the board. Um, I think it's, uh, direction, right? So with that, uh, is there anything else to discuss on this? I think we're, we're good. All right. Thank you. Uh, and, uh, we'll be bringing this back next week, right? Did you need anything else? Uh, anything else for us to specify or, okay? All right. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Mr. Santos. All right. Um, last but not least calendars and, uh. I'll start with Supervisor Simon.
So we'll get done whenever we get done today. And, and, uh, tomorrow I do, um, I did have something in the afternoon, the class and comp, uh, committee. Um, but, but I am going to be traveling out of town, uh, starting tomorrow for a few days. I'll be back, I'll be here on Tuesday, uh, for the meeting. Uh, but I'm going to take advantage of, uh, taking a little bit of a trip with family. So I'm going to do that, um, the rest of this week. So, uh, I'll probably be, uh, unavailable, uh, at that point. I'm still available by phone and other things, um, before I leave tomorrow. So my calendar is pretty clear until the 30th, so I'll be back here on the 30th.
All right, Supervisor Sabatia.
All right. Uh, looking forward to dinner with, uh, my colleagues tonight.
Just follow up on that, just for a notification. I apologize Supervisor Sabatia.
No worries.
But I did, I did let the chair know that I'd be out of town if something goes on and, you know, they need to respond in, in my, I asked Supervisor Crandall just to step in there if something, hopefully nothing happens, but it seems to be every day right now. So anyway.
And I get to watch it from my watchtower.
Yeah, yeah.
And unfortunately, um, so on Wednesday, I have a first five commission. Then I have a bunch of stuff that. Uh, Lake County Fire Protection, uh, has a, um, board meeting that I'll be attending. I'm meeting with, uh, constituent later on. I don't even know where that came from. And then, um, meeting with Latinos United of Lake County later on that evening. And then finishing that off with a board meeting over at KUSD, uh, just to keep track of the changes of what's going on at our school district. Starting Thursday off with Judges Breakfast, Hope Rising up next. I have the RCRC Legislative Call-In Session where we have the rapid fire, uh, uh, bills that are brought to us and which ones we need to pay attention, uh, pay attention to. Uh, looks like Blue Zone has invited me as well to, uh, activity later on that evening. I'm not a hundred percent sure if I'll be able to make that. But then I have a, um, housing continuum for, uh, Continuum of Care. Uh, dealing also with the 100-day challenge of getting people housed, uh, later on that afternoon. And it looks like the 29th is, uh, completely blank, other than interim CAO meeting as I prepare for a meeting for Tuesday. That's all I got.
Okay. Go ahead, Chair.
Um, I just have a couple of things to report out on. Supervisor Simon and I got to see the new helopods that were brought to, um, South Lake County Fire Protection District, purchased by, um, the fire sirens. They're $35,000 each, so they spent about, uh, $70,000. They hold, um, 3,800 gallons of water, which, um, our fire hawk at high capacity, it has a thousand gallon tank on it. But usually will stack up about 800 gallons. So there's a significant amount of water for several dips in those, uh, pods. But they are going to be hooked up to a water source. So there's one in District One and there's one that's going to be installed, uh, in the Cobb area. With drought, we don't have as many water sources as we used to have. It's really important for those helicopters to have a quick access to water. So a huge thank you to, um, the fire sirens for getting that project together. And for our South Lake Fire Chiefs are always incredibly innovative. They're always forward thinking and this was a, another great example of that. So Supervisor Simons has already been installed. I think mine's going to be installed soon. We're looking forward to that. We did have the point fire incident this weekend and it, um. We can't thank our fire crews and our law enforcement enough for showing up and, and doing everything that they do to keep these from, um, being destructive. And we didn't lose any structures. It was a massive effort and I just continue to thank them for everything that they do. And, um, I'll leave that there. Oh, one last thing that I need to talk to the three of you about is that, um. PG&E informed me offline in a very private meeting, not in a public meeting in our tree mortality task force, that they are no longer going to be, um, hauling logs off with their vegetation management plan. This is a big fight that we got into last winter when we started to wrap our heads around the tree mortality problem. And, um, they're telling me that the program doesn't have the funds anymore to do log hauls. And in the Cobb area, they've hauled off about 3,600 trees. Those are 3,600 trees that are not laying on the ground in our community. So I, uh, want to talk with you about this, bringing them in front of this board, uh, next month. Probably when you're back, I'm guessing you want to be here for that. So I think you're gone the 13th?
Yeah, that's it.
Which one is September? Okay, so maybe we can plan for the 20th, so I'll reach out to them and see if they can be with us.
That's budgets.
Oh, that's budgets, right. Okay, so maybe it does.
I thought budgets was 21st and 22nd.
Is it?
It is.
Okay.
Okay, so it's a regular meeting on the 20th? Yes. How's the schedule looking for that day?
Can't be as bad as this one.
I, I think it's urgent that we have this discussion. It's during fire season, it's during our drought and, um, and I don't want to put it off too much. So does that work for you?
I am perfectly fine with that, but I would suggest, and, and I know that I made the decision to leave, uh, for the NACO Economic Mobility Network. But please don't stop the progress that needs to happen because I'm not here.
Does the 13th look like a better day? Okay, then let's plan for the 13th then. I just want to give you the opportunity.
I appreciate that.
I think it's time for us to have that discussion here. Uh, so that's for my updates and I'll be reaching out to PG&E and letting them know if they didn't hear. So finally, I have a little bit of, um, time in my schedule. Now, let's see, I have a gender review tomorrow, but I also have this meeting. That RCRC set up. About fast stripping, um, but they sent us two meeting invites.
They did send us two.
But I can't, I thought I accepted both of them, but I can't find the other one. Did that happen to you too?
Uh, I got the one for tomorrow, but I'm not going to make that. So I don't remember what the other day was off the, if I can find it, I'll let you know.
Okay. So there was a, a meeting that Supervisor Simon and I had yesterday morning with, um, the RCRC reps about, um, the PG&E outages. And so they've invited us to this, um, next conversation. And apparently there's another one somewhere on my calendar. I don't know where it is. And, um. Thursday, we have our home hardening meeting. And the Thursday, then at 6 o'clock is the Side Street Market in Calceville. Friday, um, I have my weekly, I'm sorry, the 25th, the heart, the home hardening project. I think we're actually going to postpone that because that is going to be during, um, the planning commission. And that was our meeting with, um, CDD. So I think that one might be rescheduled anyway. Okay, so Friday morning, um, weekly planning meeting for home hardening, weekly staff meeting, um, about, um, the tree, weekly staff tree meeting. meeting about the tree, weekly staff tree meeting. And then I'm going to be volunteering the entire weekend for the Blackberry Cobbler Festival. I hope everyone comes. It's going to be really fun. And there's all kinds of things going on Friday evening after I'm going to be setting up in the afternoon. There's a harvest dinner, which I think the tickets have at least gotten close to selling out. That's going to be at Whispering Pines, first annual event for that. Saturday, all day Cobbler Festival at Mountain Meadow Venue. Then at 5 o'clock, going through the evening until 10:00 PM, is the Cobbler Fest After Party at Mundala Springs. I mean, this is a weekend all about being in the blackberry and celebrating blackberry. So this is really exciting because this is the first big music event that's happening, and Mundala Springs used to always, they have a big outdoor stage, and, you know, in the past, there was really big music events there. And so this is kind of the first big one, coming back with local bands, three bands. So that's going to go through the evening. There's going to be food and beverages for sale there. And then Sunday morning is a guided hike through bogs with friends of bogs, again, blackberry-themed, everything, mountain high, coffee shop is selling everything blackberry. Think Adam Springs is selling everything blackberry. Whole blackberry weekend. If you guys want to come up, I'm going to be wearing my volunteer shirt, run around the entire weekend.
It's not white, is it?
No, it's, I think it's purple. And then maybe a nap on Sunday. So again, the whole reason that we decided to do this years ago was to remind people that Cobb is still there after the Valley Fire, and that was the original intent around the 50th anniversary of the Valley Fire. But now, this is to support all the businesses and, you know, bring, bring visitors, bring those visiting dollars into our community, and remind people around Lake County that this is still a really fun, great place to visit. So I might be cross-eyed on Monday, but I'm going to have my call with CAO Parker in the morning regardless, and go from there.
All right. So I have a couple of things to report to. I did, I sent, I sent those RCRC staff members to you and Moke, because a lot of what they were asking me, I says they cover this, I know, in risk reduction, because I used to be on it, but I can't give you some of that, so I figured I'd get them to reach out to you, because they really want just knowledge. They're going before a committee or to talk about a bill and funding opportunities, things like that. So they like, they wanted to have some first, firsthand knowledge of some of that. So that's why.
We give them a lot more than I think they wanted, but, yeah, I think we did our job.
But that's what they need. And as you know, in the ad hoc meeting that we attended, yeah, so they're used to that. So, so that was, that was after the RCRC meeting. I stayed a little bit after for a minute and talked with them. But before that, so when I got there initially, Patty Pop, Hoppy Pop, P-O-P-P-E, Chief Executive Officer for PG&E was there. They did, she did like a soft, like welcoming at 8:30 before the meeting, so I didn't get the chance to call in for the, for a gender review because I was trying to vie for my time there, which I was emphasizing some of the things we're talking about, especially knowing that there was other people just really chomping at the bit to talk to her. One of the things I did say is, I didn't even expect to talk about it during the meeting when she was talking. However, another supervisor brought it up, so I did. But I brought up the Potter Valley Project and the dam, and so I was like, we really want to talk to you about it because what you're told is basically slated in one direction. It's not from, we don't ever get a chance to, you know, tell you our perspective, and there's a lot of things that are told that aren't all the way, somewhat omission is happening, in my opinion, but we'll talk more about it at that time. And then Rex came in and he had to talk to her. So I just said, okay, I'll talk more to you later. We need to have a meeting, though. Us as a board of supervisors, we'd really like to have you with us and talk so that we can get some of, not just that, but then even what you're talking about. I'm not sure if he can come as soon as September 13th, but we could try.
Oh, we, we talked about that.
Okay.
And he said, my whole day just changed.
So, so with that, we got into the meeting, and Fiona Ma ended up sitting next to me. So I was like, oh, wow. So we had two people there. So her, her report basically was telling us of some new funding and some new initiatives, Cal Savers, Cal Able, Go Green Financing, sales tax exemptions, basically all, you know, basically covering, you know, green, go green type of initiatives, things like that. And so Cal Savers is for small businesses, legal or fiscal liability, things of that nature. She referred us to the website to look into it, so I still have yet to do that, but I know that they were, they were there. She left her some number to look into some of these things. You know, I'm like, okay, well, we'll see how that goes. But I just, I just thought I'd mention it because she was there. Then Patty went into discussion, and she really listened to everybody there, and that was, that was great. I think she did the same in other, in other areas as well. But Glenn McGordy from Endocino County brought up Potter Valley. I didn't really want to because I know there was other supervisors there. I just wanted to talk to her offsite. But when he brought it up, he gave his perspective, and I just basically said, well, in a Venn diagram, we somewhat agree with some of what they're saying, but we, he stated one thing that I had to make comment of, and it was, Lake County hasn't been at the table. And I'm like, no, Lake County has not, not been at the table. We haven't been, been given a chance to be at the table. We've done everything that they've asked us to do to sit at the table, but it never happened. So, and I went into a little bit of depth of that and some other things, and so I won't go, I won't burden you with that if you can ask me afterwards. But I did give our perspective so that his perspective and whoever, no one else really commented about it, just kind of when she says, well, I'm really going to look into it now because this is the third time I've heard about it. So today, you know, that day. So, so that basically, that was, that was some discussion in there. I also, let's see, there was a lot of more discussion about, what do I got here? Different, different bills, different Senate bills that are in effect right now, one being one that I think is called 1313, I think, and it's, it's by Cecilia Agaral-Curry. A lot of people are opposed to it, but nobody's really coming out and saying that they want to oppose to it. It involves prevailing wage, and so I know that that's a concern with a lot of rural counties. But anyhow, so that, that was a, I feel it was a productive meeting, and I'm hoping that we can get them at the table to talk about some of these things as well. So, yeah, it was 1313. I said it right for once. So, so, yeah, there was other reports given, and I can go into depth about those at a later time. So, let's see, calendar-wise, I wrote it down right here. Okay. Nope, wrong one. So today, we'll finish today if we do. And, let's see, board of supervisors, there we go. And so, so I got Wednesday, gender review, Lake County LATA discussion afterwards. Thursday, some Upper Lake citizens are coming to the county to discuss some, some things that we're, working on like a workshop for the Middle Creek Flood Project and talking about some different ways to get the word out about that. There's a RCRC Legislative Call at 3:00. Friday, I will be meeting with some constituents out in Clear Lake Oaks about a couple of things. And then Monday morning, CAO meeting, and I think that should, I think that's, I'll be back here Tuesday. I think I have something else, but I can't think of it at the moment. But that's it for calendars. And so with that, we will go into closed session. Closed session consists of 8.1 Public Employee Appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, interview of Community Development Director, appointment of Community Development Director, and 8.2 Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956, 0.91 Center for Biological Diversity at All versus Lake County. With that, we'll go into closed session, and thank you for, for joining us today. We'll go from there.